I'd like to call to order a special meeting of the Frankfurt Plant Board. It's Wednesday, June 5th, 2024, at 10 o'clock in the community room at the Frankfurt Plant Board Administration Building. This is, we've got two topics on the agenda today. The main object, the main issue is reviewing the fiscal year '24, '25 budget, which will be reviewed today, discussed, and adopted with whatever changes come out of today at the regular June board meeting. So with that, Madam Secretary, you call the roll.
Member Delong?
He's en route. He should be here in about 45 minutes.
Member Keben?
Here.
Member Mason?
Here.
Member Snyder?
Here.
Member Dutton Mitchell?
Here.
We have a quorum. First item is consider approval of the minutes for the May 20th, 2024 special board meeting. You should have had those to review prior to the meeting. Do we have any changes or corrections? Motion for approval? We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item, that item 2.1, as you know, we thought we were going to lose Wave TV Channel 3 on May 31st. Harvey Couch has continued to work on it with them. And with that, Harvey, do you want to come up?
Yes.
Oh, that's right, they're downstairs.
Harvey's the best. I think Harvey's the best.
And cable 10's live on TV. I passed by the studios when I walked in.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
They asked me to briefly present.
Just like you noted, back in, back in March, we had an agreement with Gray, who owns WKYT. Gray owns both KYT and Wave. Like you say, Harvey did a good job negotiating with Wave and concluded an agreement. It's a standard NCT agreement with the side letter for Wave. The Cable Advisory Committee took a look at it. They recommend approval. And Harvey and staff recommend approval as well, so ask for a motion.
And I think, I know we can't publicly release, but the terms and conditions, I think, were favorable.
Yes, sir.
To where we wanted to be on the.
Yes, sir. Standard NCTC, so it's, it's kind of that group that we work with, so, so it's a favorable terms.
So I guess the question is, all those in favor of retaining Wave TV 3 per Harvey's deal say, do we have a motion?
Actually, I do have one question. And this will not require any, any increase in the cable rates.
No, sir. No, sir. Harvey notes that it won't, it won't require to adjust to 2024 retrans search.
Okay, good. If that, if that's the case, if there are no other questions, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between the NCTC agreement with Gray Television for Wave.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Wave TVs retained. Now, for the main event that everybody's very excited about, item 2.2, review and discuss proposed fiscal year '25 budget and financial plan through fiscal year 2029. And everybody obviously had the budget for several weeks to look at. Staff has provided everybody a lot of supplemental, supplemental information that we'll be looking at, at different times throughout the day. And for those watching or for those in attendance, our goal is in the morning, between now and about 12, 12:30, to cover a general overview of the budget, discuss all the administrative departments, and then we'll break for lunch, then come back hopefully around about 1:00, and then we'll do electric, water, and telecom. So that's kind of the general format. So with that, Gary, David, y'all want to make some opening remarks?
I'd probably take 30 seconds.
You can take 45.
First, I appreciate David and his staff and all the management supervisor to work very hard to prepare a budget for you. And I do want to mention that is that we take that very seriously. The reason is, as you know, every line item, we are going to do the project or the expense, every penny dollar is in here. We're not going to go beyond what you prove. That's number one. Number two is we take it very seriously because our fundamental, the reason we are in the business, we want to provide a service to our citizen, which is like own this business, like long-term, not just today, reliable, affordable, and sustainable. That's always our goal primarily. So we see that's our goal, but how do we make it? That's go through the budget, go through the planning. It's, that's why I'm just wanting you to know, is we take this very, very seriously. It's so important to us. Beyond that, I probably turn to David. David, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Gary. Good morning, everyone, members of the board. Thank you. I want to thank you for the opportunity today to present this to you. And I know I speak for all the division and department managers in the room and 200 employees at the Frankfurt Plant Board. When we say it is truly a privilege to be able to, to work for a municipal utility, to be able to provide service, essential services, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, it's a big responsibility, and we don't take it lightly. And so to be able to provide services that allow our community to run their business and to run their households and support their family, friends, and neighbors is, is a, is a big deal. So thank you very much for allowing us to go through this today. I'd like to start, we're going to be walking through the budget we provided to the board on, at the, at the May 20th board meeting. So we're going to be using that as our primary document that we're looking at. We've got some slides that we'll be presenting and that you have paper copies of if you need to see something bigger, that are going to kind of just walk us through a story and allow us to kind of stay moving through the budget. It's very detailed, as you know, when you look at the, the individual numbers on the, on the packet itself. So we're trying to kind of cut through some of the numbers and be able to talk about a story. I'm going to go through a very high-level discussion of what this budget summary looks like, and then we'll be kind of reinforcing those points throughout the day with division and department manager individual presentations. So I'm going to give some introductory comments and kind of set the table, and then we will be having our divisional department managers come up and specifically go through their budgets line by line. And at any given time, please feel free to jump in and provide, and ask questions or comments. This is a, a back and forth throughout, throughout the whole day. So I guess we can go ahead and jump in and get started. Looking at the next slide here, I like to start every year with the mission statement. I think it's really important to think about what are we trying to accomplish every year? What is this company trying to accomplish? And as we sit and develop these budgets each year, we're thinking about these things, this statement, and are what we're proposing to you all meeting that mission. So the Frankfurt Plant Board's mission is to enhance our community and benefit customers by safely, reliably, and economically providing service while maintaining a responsive, well-managed, environmentally sensitive, and sound organization grounded in integrity. And as we walk through today, we'll be talking about initiatives and capital needs to make things more safe, to make things more reliable, to provide services to us economically, and making sure we're doing that in a way that's serving as a fiduciary for our customer owner's funds. Looking at financial reporting requirements, I think it's important for, to point out and for our community to understand what different requirements are on us financially and during this time of year. So the Plant Board is an independent entity that is formed under Kentucky Revised Statutes 96, 172 through 96, 188. There are a lot of notable things in those statutes, but looking at financial reporting, they do require that we have an annual external audit by a certified public accountant. And it's worth noting that historically, we have received clean audits and other, also called unqualified audit reports. So that's important to note, that we've got third-party review of these, of our financials each year, and that we are abiding by governmently accepted accounting principles and have good financial controls around our process. FPB is considered a special purpose governmental entity, an SPGE, per KRS 65A. And I'm going to walk through just some of the requirements that we have, an additional that we must meet on top of that. So every year, FPB registers with the Department of Local Government website that runs the SPGE program. We report our board directors and pay a fee each year to, to be able to do this, and that's due by July 15th of each year. As an SPGE, we must, the board must have approved budget prior to the start of the fiscal year, so that's prior to July 1 of each year. So that's one of the reasons why we're here this time, is to be able to get a budget approved before July 1 of '24. The budget must be posted on the Kentucky Department of Local Government website by July 16th. So any of our customers or anyone across the, in the world that wants to go to the Kentucky DLG website and search any SPGE, including Frankfurt Plant Board, you can do that and see our past audits, past financials and budgets. We must present budget amendments and post those to the DLG website by the end of the fiscal year, or end of fiscal year is June 30 of each year. And our annual audits are also posted on the DLG website, must be within 12 months of the fiscal year. We also put those out on our website and are available to anyone that asks us for a copy. Another, another kind of a prominent reporting requirement we have, that's a publicly searchable document. Part of our bond, electric and water revenue bond issuance process, we're required to submit continuing financial disclosure information through the Electronic Municipal Market Access, or EMA, website, and that's operated by the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. We currently do not have any outstanding electric and water revenue bonds. If you'll recall, in December of '23, we paid off our final electric and water revenue bond series 2013. That was made just in December of '23 during this current fiscal year. So we don't have any current outstanding revenue bonds, but we do have all those past filings out there for anybody who wants to go to that EMA website. Talking about financial stability, one of the big parts of this budget, the whole reason is to make sure that we are being financially responsible and are able to make sure we meet our obligations to operate the utility. So some notable things about the Frankfurt Plant Board is we currently have an A-stable financial bond rating from the Standard and Poor's Global Ratings. Fitch Rating did give our wholesale power supplier, the Kentucky Municipal Energy Agency, an A-rating, and that rating was really predicated on the credit quality of the Frankfurt Plant Board as the biggest member of the agency. So in a way, the strength of the Frankfurt Plant Board significantly contributed to that A-rating for Fitch. Some of the benefits of having financial strength, and we'll talk about these many different times over the next few hours and this month, contributing directly to the mission of the Frankfurt Plant Board, you know, we talk about in that mission statement, economically reliable service that contributes to the success of the community. You know, we're not able to provide the important infrastructure to provide service, and we're certainly not able to provide it economically if we don't have our financial house in order. So that's very important. And whenever we do want to go out to the capital markets to borrow funds, it's very important that we have a strong financial foundation that we can present to creditors to make sure we can get the best rates in the market. So we are actually looking to go out and solicit third-party loans for our next-gen fiber projects. So this comes into play very big this year in fiscal year '25 as we move forward with that. I want to talk about the FPB rate competition. I think this is a very important item for us. If, if we get nothing straight from the front, from those watching and for those here today, what really goes in to how we make rates and how, the rates that you pay for electric, water, and telecom service, what must they cover? We talk about these four main pillars, and I'll be referring back to these four pillars throughout the presentation today. The first one is operation and maintenance expense. We have to have our rates set sufficiently to cover operations and maintenance expense. These are expenses that allow us and must be provided and covered to provide service on a day-to-day basis. So this is wholesale power cost is our number one. That's 44% of our entire budget, I think, company-wide budget, 80% of the complete electric division budget. This is the men and women that help run this company. When you put wholesale power and the cost of human resources, that's payroll and benefits, you're at 68% of all operating expenses. So it's important, we cannot provide day-to-day service 365 without covering O and M, operating and maintenance first. It's not just enough to meet that. That is essentially what you look at at the bottom of our statement of revenues, expenses, and change in net position. After you have that operation and maintenance covered, we have to have a capital or cash available to be able to invest back in our infrastructure. So it's very capital-intensive business to run electric, water, and telecom company. 62% of our total assets are in property, plant, and equipment. So a lot of our funds are going right back in to updating and making sure we have the equipment needed to provide reliable service. Something, it's a, it's a very large part of the this year's budget and the five-year plan when we talk about infrastructure. We are projecting in this budget $90 million, that's a nine-zero, $90 million in capital investment between fiscal year '25 and '29. We'll be walking through that a little bit more in depth on what those projects are, but we got, we really need to have funds left over to invest back in that on our own. If we're unable to support a large capital project with funds that we generate internally, then we have to go out and borrow the funds. And we're going to talk about that this year. We need to go out and borrow approximately $18 million for our next-gen project. So after you've covered O and M, your operations, expenses, infrastructure investment, you need to be able to cover debt service on loans you've taken out for infrastructure. That's your principal and interest payments. Currently, we only have one third-party outstanding loan. That's our first lien lease for the telecom division. It has a $4.3 million balance, and that's due to be paid off in December of '29, which would be here before you know it. So currently, we, our annual debt service is around $867,000, so that's less than 1%, 0.76% of total revenue. And we are proposing additional $18 million this year borrowed by telecom, which would put debt service coverage, or I should say, it would be around 2% of total revenue. And after you've covered all three of those things, at the end, you have to make sure you have enough cash on hand to keep that financial stability that we talked about. So once again, we need that for a, for a A or a acceptable bond rating. The typical range is 90 to 100 days cash on hand, and really to get some of the best ratings in the market, you need to be 150-plus to be able to cover those. And it's very important as well to have this cash reserve on hand to cover unanticipated cost contingencies. We've all have experienced significant and severe weather that has infected us and our system. We need to be able to cover that. If there is a large natural event and it takes out a lot of our infrastructure, we need to have cash on hand to go in immediately and get that fixed to get everyone up and running. We don't have time to reach out to a third party and ask for a loan to be able to operate. So that's very important. I never thought I would live through a pandemic, but we saw sure how nice it was to have sufficient cash. Whenever we were told, you know, you can, you cannot disconnect customers, but yet we were in a financially uncertain time, we did rack up quite a large accounts receivable balance that we were able to get through because we did have those reserves. So those are the four pillars, the four main points. When we have rates set, we're looking to make sure we can cover each four of those. Part of setting the table for this, the coming discussions is sort of the key takeaways I want you to think about. When we look at the Frankfurt Plant Board and our existing service, we're really projecting low to no growth in our electric, water, and telecommunications revenue. A couple of things, reasons for this, you know, we have energy-efficient appliances that impact electric and water revenue. People are more conscious of their usage, so, so as people look to conserve energy and, and water, those are part of the reason. And another is, you know, economic growth within our service territory. As you have more customers, naturally more usage, that allows us to be able to have a little more relief and take some pressure off potential future rate increases. So we're looking at low to no growth. We're looking at steadily raising or rising operating costs. So when you look at low growth, steadily rising operating costs, you start to see margins that are thin. Those margins are what are used for those, those last three pillars. Infrastructure investment, debt service, and maintain that cash reserve. So as those margins grow thin, that starts putting pressure on the need for rate adjustments. Another part of this takeaway of this year is the large amount of infrastructure investment in this five-year outlook. I mentioned $90 million. This is a historic number. I believe I looked back over the last 20 years. We usually spend, invest around $10 million a year, and we're looking to invest, just this year alone, I think around $28 million. So it's, it's, it's large, and we'll go through the reason why. And the last one, number four, when you look at low to no growth, rising costs, a large, ambitious infrastructure plan, what, what's something we can do internally? And I want to get the point across and through our individual department presentations today that we are looking to leverage technology to be able to provide a better customer service experience, to be able to provide more information to our customer. And we hope that will allow us to bend the rate of increase of our cost curve. So really what we're talking about is using technology to do more with less. Just to be really direct about it, it's very expensive to have employees, but you can't run a business without it. But what we're looking to do is leverage technology to be able to do more with less and let technology, more self-service to the customer, and maybe over time, at least try to bend that curve downward a little bit and help us with future rates. I'd like to jump right into kind of some of the, the meat of the summary. This is a lot of information on the page, but what I wanted to present for you all, and you'll have it to take home, we have in front of you the FPB revenue trends in that top box and the expense trends in the bottom box. This is total revenue. So when we talk about revenue, you can see, we jump back and forth between two different pieces. One is operating revenue, and that's the electric and water telecom. When we set rates for service, those are the operating revenue. Other revenue is miscellaneous types of revenue for capital contributions for customers owing new service, miscellaneous fees that we have to cover cost of operations and interest income, for example. So this is total revenue. The main thing I'll focus on is that last line in the revenue trend, company-wide. Looking between company-wide in revenue and, and company-wide in expense, the idea is we have a revenue line moving up, we have an expense line below, and we're keeping this constant flow together to be able to have sufficient margin to cover all, all four of those pillars we talked about. In most of these years, you'll notice that the percentage of revenue change is lower than the percentage change in the expense. So we have expense that started to encroach on that revenue line, squeezing margins. There is an exception to this, and this year we had good news to report as we walk through the year, talking about where we are. If you look at that next-to-last one-year change in revenue and expense, we had, we did have some rate changes in July, you'll remember, in electric and water. So those did help contribute to a little better-than-expected revenue, and we did see some usage patterns increase in our electric and water service that did help contribute to a higher-than-expected revenue. And we actually had a few things this year that helped us be below expenses. So that has been a very good trend that we'll talk more about. Whenever we have a better-than-expected year, that allows us to possibly defer or possibly defer rate adjustments. So that's a very important thing, and we'll talk more about that because that's taking some pressure off our, our need to adjust electric rates this year. You'll see in that last column, this is budget to budget, but you can see over the next five years, the average rate of change company-wide is just under a 1%, 0.6% growth, and we are expecting, this is budgeted expenses, to move at about 1.27. So this was just kind of to show the trend and how we need to keep those, we need to keep, if you were a for-profit and had returned shareholders' value, you would definitely need that revenue to be above the expense trends. But let's look at the next slide here. This is kind of a high-level summary of the five years. If you lay out expense, total revenue, total expenses, we have total revenue in blue, the total expense in orange there. Something I wanted to point out is that we have something unusual in the other income lines. It's been some time since we've had a significant grant revenue. So in fiscal year '25 and '26, we are budgeting $7.9 million in grant revenue for multiple projects. So that has elevated that revenue line in those first two years, and then you'll notice in year three, as we get to fiscal year '27, our expense and revenue lines start to meet. That's whenever you automatically think, we're going to have to have some type of rate adjustment if we do not, if we don't have better-than-expected results. And that last part, where the expense goes over the revenue, one of the, the notes here you see is rate adjustment, question mark, you know, could, this could be delayed if financial results are better than estimates. So we're kind of at the point where if we have a better-than-expected year, we're talking deferral of rate change. If everything holds to plan, we are going to have pressure and need to talk about rate adjustments. But in this budget, we have some one-off year-to-year expenses, but you'll notice that most of our expense line items are constant throughout. The one thing within our budget, there's two different things that are moving at a steady progression, and that's what's causing this expense line to increase. One of them is we have a board-approved compensation plan that is baked into this budget, and so that is over time moving wages higher. And then we also, based on the amount of investment we have, we have to book depreciation expense. And so when we have such amount of investment, naturally we're having a much larger increase in depreciation. So those are the two things really driving that increase. And once again, better-than-expected results mean it's good for us and it's good for our customer base as well. So that's at a high level. We'll be talking through these things as we go. I talked about the two different parts of revenue, operating and other. This is just a little look at just the pure operating income, operating revenue for electric, water, and telecom. We had a rate adjustment in July on electric and water. Looking directly at electric, we had better-than-expected usage in our general service and large customer class. We had a bump in actual usage that we have, are going to assume is going to continue. Maybe we've hit the bottom of this downward trend and we are stabilizing. So we have a little bit better-than-expected income year-over-year in electric, and same thing with telecom. We are also have some reasons that we believe that revenue could be a little higher. Water, we are basically projecting flat. So when you take those grants out of the picture, this is just a little look at, we're relatively stable in, in that discussion about low to no growth in operating. So looking at the next, this is just a breakdown of our total revenue by division to just give everyone a feel for what we're looking at. Around 59% of our total revenue is electric. We follow that with our telecom, around 28%, followed by 12% of that of our water division. And then we have around 1.3 million in other income that is budgeted to our administrative departments, and that's primarily interest income. And anything that falls in admin is allocated to the other three divisions, but I wanted to break that out separately to show the rest of the general income that's included. Looking at the next slide, this is our '25, fiscal year '25 budgeted expense, just a table breakdown. One thing I wanted to notice, it's doing something interesting on the side there. It doesn't look the same as in your slide. But the main thing I wanted to point out to you is when you look at this, you know, we talk about steadily increasing expenses, and this just kind of helps you see, when you can consider wholesale power, payroll, and benefits, you know, you're at 68% of all expenses. When you throw in, you see the next one in yellow there, that's 9% is our cable TV programming and Channel 10 expenses. They've got you up into 77 expenses. So when you get down to it, there really are only a few line items within our budget that really make a big impact when you're looking at how do you bend that operating curve downward. This year, good news, we're projecting a $500,000 decrease year-over-year in budget. That's about half a percent, and that's primarily due to, last year, our power supplier, KYMEA, had, had projected to us, over the next five years, we were looking at an average of 4% increase in wholesale power. They came back this year and go, you know, the market stabilized, we think we can keep rates relatively flat. Well, for us, that was a big, that's a big deal. We went from expecting a 4% increase on your, on 44% of your total budget, down to flat. That helps a lot. And the other was the change in our, our, KPPA employer contribution rate came down. That was another $1.1 million that affected every division and department and really gave us a little release in our year-over-year budget. So that's half a million dollars below. Looking at the next slide, this is just a general look at our 12-month year-over-year change in the CPE Consumer Price Index, the all items. And this has been a big discussion around the tables for the last couple of years. You'll see this really started in early '21. We kind of hit a peak of around 9% year-over-year change in the summer of '22. And you can see, for the last several months, we stabilized somewhat, hanging around that mid-three-and-a-half, three to three-and-a-half range. So we have for our compensation plan for the cost of living in this budget backed in a 3% to kind of mirror that, that CPI. Just wanted to bring that up because that's, inflation's been a big, a big deal. And if you think about what we just looked back in those trends, you'll notice a 1.7% increase in expenses, we're falling below CPI year-over-year right now. So that's a good thing. One of the pillars, we talked about number two, was capital investment. So this summary before you is a historic chart of investment that we've made in infrastructure since 2001 with our '25 through '29 estimates. And you can see in '25, this is the year they're getting ready to begin, July of '24 through June of '25, I think we have around $28 million invested or planned to be invested. Historical average is around $10 million. I mean, so we're looking at up 187% in '25, and then over the next five years, up 82% historically. So this is, this is really going to be a big conversation piece and part of, of really the operations as we look to accomplish all these things. We have a lot of exciting things, but this, along with this type of investment, brings challenges as well from a, from a cash and a human, human resource perspective. So I talked about some of the things to, the key takeaways, that last one was leveraging technology. And I just wanted to highlight quickly, not to take away any thunder of presentations to come, but this is just a summary of some of the projects and initiatives that the Plant Board is looking to implement that are going to help the customer service experience, provide more information to our customers. provide more information to our customers, allow us to do more with less in human resources, and hopefully bend down that cost, that operational cost curve over time, taking a little pressure off future rate adjustments. So the first one, we have a My F P B web portal, everyone can go out there on their website and get it, most, more, majority of our customers have it today, a source of a lot of information. We're looking to add more and more to that, and will be a conduit for a lot of the changes we make. Payment kiosks, we are very close to launching those, we have them here, tested, currently testing, and are very soon to have those launched. That's going to allow for self-service payments to be processed by customers and also be able to use a debit or credit card in office, which I know will be a change to our customers will appreciate. Mobile apps, been around for a long time, but we now have enough, we have enough bells and whistles to be able to, to put on a mobile app that we think that will be coming to us this fiscal year as well. A M I, advanced metering infrastructure, or smart meters. We are going to really lean into the different types of benefits that can be provided to A M I, to our customers and also to operationally to the, to the plant board. Prepaid billing. We couldn't do prepaid billing or even discuss having a project, a program like this without first having a functional portal, having a self-service payment kiosk, having a mobile app, and especially having A M I. So this has been a planned progression of project implementation to get to the point where we're really going to see a breakthrough in the next year on the amount of information and technology that we can provide to customers. So a prepaid billing program is going to allow our customers to do exactly that, is to prepay their bill ahead of time. There's going to be a lot of benefits that come with that. One of the big benefits is going to be for the customer to be able to have the, enough information to be able to understand what they're using in their home and have the power in the palm of their hand with that information to make personal decisions that could impact their bill in a positive way. It's going to be really good for us operationally as well, for us to be able to, I think, kind of, we have two large days in a month of disconnections that create, that really drive up every number we have in a negative way. If you look at wait times, those two days drive it up. If you look at keeping and retaining CSRs, that, those two days will make you want to think about something else. And it's going to be, do a lot to help us internally. The next one, time of use rates, we talked about this just in the last couple of months, setting rates that incentivize customers to, to adapt their usage and also allow F P B to be able to maybe bend down that demand curve in energy and save money. And the next one is, and this is, in my mind, one of the bigger ones of all, is getting Next Band fiber service to all customers. This is going to be a momentous and gigantic lift, getting everyone connected to Next Band. It is a service that provides a much better signal and service to the customer, that's going to improve their, their service and their satisfaction, and also provides a much less maintenance cost for the, for the technology and using fiber service. So we're going to be talking about these throughout the day as we go. I wanted to, we talked about having better-than-expected year, and I normally don't go into this in this type of meeting, but I think it's important to show, you know, we told the board after the cost-of-service study, sitting here a year ago, that we needed a 3.9% increase in July of '23 and potentially a 3.9% July of '24. But because we've had better-than-expected customer usage in electric, specifically our general service and our industrial customers, we, we are telling you all today, we think we can defer and delay that rate increase. So that is no change in electric rates in the next fiscal year. Water, we did have a rate adjustment in July, and we do have two more that are already approved to kick in July of '25 and '26. We did see bigger usage in our commercial class this year, which helped, and interest, interest income. You know, we had, as Federal Reserve raised rates, borrowing rates increased, and we had most of our investments in CDs parked at above 5%. So we had a really nice year of return on interest income, those helped. And then on expense side, we did have wholesale power, that our projections for customer usage were, were, they were better-than-expected. We did not have as high of wholesale power as we expected. We had payroll and benefit, mainly the pension, were below expectations because we just didn't have a fully-staffed team all of the year. And lower payroll means lower contribution that you have to make for K P P A for pension. So all of that combined gives us good news, we're not going to need to, to adjust electric rates, and also good news that we're going to be able to, we're going to need as, as much internal cash as we can to invest in all of these capital projects. I'm going to move quickly to some of the big topics. Mr. Cubine, this is on our agenda, kind of starting to move in, this is a little summary of some of the benefits we have that we could then, I think, maybe talk a little more. I think the compensation plan is one we want to spend some time on. But first, I thought I'd start with the two ones that probably had the less conversation. First one is healthcare. Frankfurt Plant Board has a self-funded healthcare plan. One of the benefits of having a self-funded plan is, you know, we don't have a motive to, to make a return on this plan. It is basically 20% of the cost is fixed to operate the plan, and the other 80% is claims. So you could have a really good claims year and have, be much more below the expected health expense than you, than you think. So this is showing kind of a trend since 2012. Considering a lot of the other expenses we have in the company, this has been relatively stable, in my mind. We are budgeting $3 million for fiscal year '25 and throughout the next five years. We were just above that, 3.2 last year, but we are tracking significantly below this year. So we think that $3 million number is good. And the next slide is showing that breakdown I just mentioned. 20% of our costs, 21% are fixed plan costs that are going to be there regardless, and then 79% of our $3 million that we have budgeted is going to be health, vision, dental claims. Hopefully everyone's healthy for, for the right reason. We want them healthy, but that also translates into better financial results.
And I think that's a good one, just on the healthcare to point out. I think it goes two ways. Our network and our contracts with providers, and also I think the fact that our employees use it responsibly, our healthcare.
Absolutely.
Because everybody's not having that kind of experience with healthcare, and our employees do a good job of using the benefits but not, not abusing them and using them responsibly. And I think they, they deserve a lot of credit for how they, how they use the health plan.
Absolutely. And this, when I talk, we talk about that $3 million, that is net of employee contribution. So employees are contributing to the plan, and these are costs net to the company afterwards. So you're right, and the plan's been managed well over the years to kind of, as, as new things pop up, to put kind of guardrails in to keep costs contained, so. The next one, I was going to move on to the Kentucky Public Pension Authority employer contribution. So the Frankfurt Plant Board is a member of this, of the K P P A, and as such, we make an employer contribution on every payroll dollar paid to full-time employees. This is one of those parts of having a better-than-expected fiscal year '24. Last year, or in the current year we're in, that will end June 30, '24. Fiscal year '24, our contribution rate was 23.34. Because we did not have a fully-staffed team, we had fewer contributions than expected, so we budgeted 6.7, we came in at 5.8. And then getting really good news that the '25 contribution rate has moved down to 19.71. So that is a $1.1 million reduction in, in operating costs to this company that touches every division, every department, that really helped us to be able to, to take some pressure off, off rates going forward, so. Good news, and I hope to see that eventually, we get, that will continue to drive downward, I hope, with good market performance and actuarial results. The next slide is just a breakdown of the F P B employee base and how they fall into which tier of K P P A's program. You can see that 47% of our customers, or I should say of our employees, are Tier 1. Tier 2 at 11%. You can see now Tier 3 is starting to, to take more and more a piece of the pie, and that will eventually take over everything as, with Tier 3. And then we have those that aren't eligible and those that are, we have retired, re-employed category. But I know this will be coming up as we talk about how to address the reduced benefits of the Tier 3 group and as that becomes really the majority of our workforce. So that's just a breakdown of that. Really, I'm kind of at a summary I was going to give of payroll and things, Mr. Cubine. I'll tell you what, I'll go through that summary and kind of set the table for any discussion you want to have on compensation.
Yeah, because we've got, I think, what, about five items there to
Yes.
Kind of plow through.
Yes, sir. So this, this is just a chart, the main thing I wanted to point out is for 20, you can see in fiscal, that last two bars, '23 and '24, we're looking basically at the exact same payroll number. So even though we had raises and even though we had compensation plan changes, the actual dollars invested in our employees is, remain the same. So that did take some pressure off operating expenses as well. And you can see that head count is that line, we continue, we've continued to march downward on employee count. And this is in no way to, everyone's got the same thought in mind. We want to bend that cost curve downward. We're looking, how can we leverage technology? When we have a retirement coming up or when we have a change in our workforce, it is a question with everyone in their mind, can we, do we need to look at how we manage the department? Can we do more with less? Do we need to rehire this position? If the answer's no, then it's no. But if we can, we are doing that. And part of this bend in the employee count are, some jobs have not been filled on purpose. So I think, I just want to highlight that point. The next slide is just a breakdown of the employee scale to set the table for compensation discussion. Currently, about 55% of our customers are employees, I should say, are above midpoint, which is above market. Those are probably more tenured members of our team. Then you have those that are below midpoint, that's 76 or 38%, and then the rest are either not applicable or in our introductory period. That is kind of a good place, I believe, to stop. Kind of got through what we're going to be talking about the next few hours, and then kind of leading you into that compensation discussion.
Okay. Is Nichelle here?
Yes, Nichelle.
She want to come on up and?
Make her way up.
Yeah, I don't want her to miss this. As you all know, you know, early on the process, on the board, we all kind of took different areas, and Steve and I kind of worked in this area, and I want to compliment David, Gary, Katrina, and Nichelle and that for, we've spent a lot of time and they've provided a bunch of, a lot of data that you all have in front of you. And as I said, we're not voting on anything formally today, but giving staff final direction. And we've kind of got a lot of pieces here that are interchangeable. And let me just run through them real quick, and then we'll kind of go back. First, we need to talk about what kind of COLA we want to give. And Nichelle's accumulated some information, what the state's getting, what, well, we know that city, county, schools are getting. We know inflation still is tracking, I think David in the three-and-a-half percent range. State, I think the final budget, the state's getting three, I think city's getting three-and-a-half. I think schools, aren't they, Nichelle, getting about 4%? We obviously want to recognize for our employees, you know, the cost of living. We also know that for a large part of our business, we compete directly with some private sector employers. We don't know exactly what they're getting, but we know we need to be able to compete with them. We had, the board directed last year that Nichelle gets someone else in here, look at our compensation plan. We had Corn Fairy come in, they gave us some information. Basically, where our current system is, looked like we're about, in terms of the market, not in a bad place, based on their data, that Corn Fairy looked at our current system. We have the option of adopting Corn Fairy, there is going to be additional costs if we want to flip to that system. We currently pay for our current contractor a flat fee plus an hourly rate, so we do pay some money there. Whether we go with Corn Fairy or whether we stay with our current compensation plan, we've not adjusted our salary schedule since, what, 2022, Nichelle?
Correct.
So we don't have to adjust our salary schedule. We can, Nichelle's given you some figures of what a 10% adjustment would be. It could be adjusted anywhere from 0 to 10%. That'd be a board decision. We need to, like you said, we've got the COLA. We've got, basically, do we want, for those employees, if we give a COLA who are at their maximum salary right now, do we want to waive that maximum cap? Do we want to continue or go to what the board previously had was, what we used to call two and two? And I think maybe the thinking now would be, if inflation is three or three-and-a-half, then if you go two and two for those people below the midpoint, the first six months, they are actually below where they ought to be. So we do, we want to go with like a COLA plus a one or a two at six months, or not do it, that's a board decision. Then what David mentioned earlier is we have this issue with what we, what we call our 401A match, which is for our Tier 3 employees that are in, that that plan is not as, as strong as what Tier 1 employees. And do we want to go with that? Do we want to increase that match? Do we want to put money in the 401A without additional employee match? Gary and Nichelle and David have accumulated what O M U's looking at doing with some of the co-ops, Bowling Green, so forth, and that varies. And then the question is, is, I think we just need to have a good discussion, does it make any difference? For a lot of our younger employees, some things we're hearing is, if they're coming into the company, they're Tier 3, they, you know, a supplemental retirement plan is nice, but they'd really like to have money to make a house payment and make a car payment and buy groceries. And as far as recruitment retention, is the 401A necessary, or is the money better to be put in salaries? So that generally is where we are, so I think we can wrap up, can't we? So first, open it up, in terms of inflation, you've got the schedule there, what, and you've got the cost on Schedule B that was in your H R folder, on what a 3%, three-and-a-half, and 4% COLA cost. Because each of these things will kind of build on each other. So as we, and what's in the budget right now is 3%, which David would be the $434,000. That's, in the document, you have the spiral document, that number's in there. So if you go to three-and-a-half, you're basically adding an additional, what, $72,000, and then another roughly $72,000 if you go to 4%. Is that fair, David?
Yes, sir, you're correct, on page 16 there, that breakdown, you're correct.
So the first one is, what's the board's thinking in terms of what type of inflation COLA adjustment? And like I said, you've got the data there, what, what state, city, what, what Nichelle's been able to accumulate what other people are getting? Any thoughts, sir?
Let me answer this question, just for clarification. Cost of them, it just goes to, to the people above mid, it goes to everybody?
Everybody.
Okay, okay.
And when Corn Fairy did their numbers for us, they already put the numbers projected a little bit in advance, correct? Like, would it be like January of 20?
They trimmed it forward to January 2025 for their salary schedule adjustment, didn't they?
Yeah.
I tend to spit the baby here, do the three-and-a-half.
Yeah, you know, I tend to, I tend to agree, and that, that three-and-a-half probably closely mirrors the CPI more than any other number, so, you know, to me, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think CPI right now is being driven, David, correct me. Housing, grocery is what's really, and fuel costs, but it's all over the place.
Fuel costs have actually gone down. We're going to drop, we're going to drop two and a half cents off the fuel taxes here, because the price has gone down during the year, so.
So kind of tentative, kind of placeholder, right now, we're assuming two and a half?
Three and a half.
Three and a half, sorry, three and a half. Which then takes us to the Corn Fairy. I guess Nichelle don't want to put you on the spot, but of course we will. You've seen both systems. The thing I like most about the Corn Fairy is it does recognize, what we've always talked about informally, is the core versus the field. That the field is, kind of recognizes, that's the world we're competing with outside of Franklin County to attract, retain, electric, water, I T., and so forth.
Correct.
But if we go with Corn Fairy, the additional admin costs, depending on how much technical assistance we need during the year, is going to be at least about $24,000 extra, right?
Twenty-five to 35, yes.
And the top end, yeah, the minimum is the 24 at the top, and then we're paying right now about, what, $5,000 base to Johansson plus an hourly rate?
Yes. And
So the question, I'm still going.
I saw that about the Johansson, but what do we, what was the total we paid Johansson? What did we pay them total today?
Today, it's just on consult, as needed.
No, today, how much?
For this year, for this, for this fiscal year. But how many hours do we have to call them during the year, roughly? Just try to get a comparison between the two systems.
So for this past fiscal year, I haven't, just paid for the software.
Okay.
I would have to look for previous years.
I mean, all these checks run together, but I, I, you know, that's one of the people I sign a check, not every week, but I, I do know I sign, I sign multiple checks to them over the year. I just choose as to how much they're total.
I would have to look and get that figure for you.
And I, John, I've got another question about this as well, that I didn't sit in on these particular meetings. What do we get from Johansson that's different than what we're going to, what we're getting, what we got from Corn Fairy, and what we're going to continue maybe to get from Corn Fairy? and what we're going to continue maybe to get from Corn Ferry?
I mean, I know from just talking to you, something Nichelle can correct me is, you, we pay a base amount and then Johansson gives us some base information. Then if you have questions on classification or salary adjustment or whatever, then they'll do some analysis and do some work.
Correct.
And with Corn Ferry, if we pay that fee, we would get their updates included in that cost, is that correct?
I believe so. There's a couple, they gave a couple of different options. But with, let's see, support, that ten to twenty is where you want additional and training for staff. So I, I believe it's included where it'll fall under the support. So yes, but that's five to ten issues.
Right.
The, the train, the additional training, my understanding was that there was already training that was done, correct?
Not yet, because we haven't trained on anything, because I, we haven't adopted their system. They have some online training, but that's it. That was part of this first process.
Okay.
It, go ahead.
Yeah, I just thought, because you all took on some of the work for the study.
Yes.
And I thought that entailed some training on, on, you know, their procedures and all that.
Right.
But, so there's, what you're saying is there's additional training that's going to be needed if we go with the Corn Ferry.
Yes, ma'am, because as of right now, so with our current compensation plans, there are other moving parts such as promotions, how to manage the salary scale structure, job description changes. And so as of right now, I haven't been privileged to know how that functions under Corn Ferry, because we haven't adopted, or we haven't chosen to select them. So going forward, if we make that, if the board makes that decision, then they'll work with me on the proper way to do promotions. Their scale is different. Our current scale, we hire in at the minimum. That isn't Corn Ferry's process. So he'll work with me on where we make job offers, the appropriate amount to hire individuals in.
And would, so would that be a one-time cost for training? Like it wouldn't need to be a continual training over the years?
Right, no, no.
And then if we went with the Corn Ferry schedule, there were what, based on the presentation, there was what, twenty-seven employees?
Yes.
That required some adjustment?
Yes, they would fall below the minimum of their new structure grade.
So let me ask you this, continuing the unfair line of questioning that we're doing. If you had your drugs, day-to-day basis, working with it, working with the systems, not just transition, but an ongoing basis, for us, which do you think works better for F P B?
That's a, that's an unfair question.
Because I, well.
We stayed with, you know, if he asked it one way and then we stayed with.
Yeah, but I mean, she was going to deal with them every day. I mean, and you're going to be talking with them, I mean, you've, you've dealt with them some, you've interacted. You've seen how responsive they are, you know how responsive our current contractor is. Working with the system, we're always seen to be struggling, especially in some areas like lineman, mechanics, telecom, others, you know, water, in terms of recruitment, retention, how we're competing. Which one positions us better from your perspective? I mean, you're the one that's every day, you know, looking at applications, trying to hire people. You're interviewing people when they leave, I mean, what do you think works?
So to be fair, again, as far as Corn Ferry is one of those things where I don't know what I don't know. Because I haven't really studied or been trained on their system. I can say that both our current system and Corn Ferry both have tools, you know, for scale movement and keeping the salaries at a market rate for retention. So both of them have those tools, but as a company, we just need to be consistent on implementing those. So I feel like both works, work. Our current system, it does, it has some issues, but those have arisen over the years. We've had it since twenty fourteen. Though I feel like those issues can be addressed or fixed. Again, with Corn Ferry, the two structures, that immediately, that's something that our current structure issue that we have, that can be fixed with Corn Ferry. But then what are the other things, you know? So both systems have tools that would help us with retention, recruitment, retaining.
Right.
So my honest opinion, if we could fix some of the issues with our current structure, because that's the structure that I know, I would feel more comfortable with that. But I'm open to whatever, I'll support whatever the board decides.
Steve?
First off, that was an A-plus answer. I guess for me, the, the question, one of the basic questions for me is, what is the total? And I, you may not know this answer right, what's the total cost for Corn Ferry if we started with them July first through June thirty? Because I think how he placed this, this answer, there could be more costs here that we just don't see. And then what we paid Johansson, and that's why I asked the question, what do we pay Johansson over the entire year? And since this year is almost over, we can just use the current year. I mean, if they're doing generally the same kinds of things, then obviously the first question would be, which one costs the less?
So currently with Johansson, because I only need them for support when, say, if I'm looking at changing a job grade. And, go ahead.
No, go on, I'm, I'm just getting my answer by.
And I need market data or something, or I'll ask my rep to review. That's when I reach out to him. But there's a software that assists me with making changes. It's only when we, and I can do my own market study and I just get him for confirmation to say, okay, I'm getting this grade, however, the market says this, can you use your database to confirm, should it be this grade? So that's a as-needed basis.
So what, what does, what do you see Corn Ferry offers you differently than Johansson? What's added, if you see anything added that Corn Ferry would give you that Johansson doesn't give you, I can't give you?
As of right now, they have presented the two structures that address some of the field positions should be at a higher market rate than some of our admin positions. But I'm sure if we were to reach out, that can be addressed with our current. But that right now, that's what I see.
They basically do the same things.
Yes, yes, sir.
So if we didn't go with Corn Ferry, the money we spent with them doing this study and consulting, you think we can take that information and still use it to fix what we need to fix? I mean, I, I have a concern about, we were very careful about who we hired. We, you know, we hired consultant and expert, I hate hiring experts and then ignoring them. But, you know, I also don't want us to ever feel like we're like, we're, we're stuck, we got to go with it. But we went, we hired a consultant for a reason and a different one, because we, something, it wasn't easy to figure out how to fix what was going on. And losing employees or not getting good employees costs us money. And I thought that was one of the driving factors behind looking for a Corn Ferry. My understanding is they are the gold standard. Their, their product, their, their tool is the gold standard. So I just think we need to keep that in mind, unless you're saying we could take everything they told you and then get, basically do it on our own. But that's not the feeling I'm getting.
No.
Okay.
John?
I, I want to just echo absolutely everything Catherine just said. I'm a little bit confused here that we're not even, we're even considering. I mean, I thought we made the decision to go with Corn Ferry. And I, I got to be honest with you. The, I, I think what they brought to us in terms of the field versus the administrative, I, I think it cut through a systemic problem we have with our personnel system. And to be honest with you, the fact that, you know, we've had these other folks talk to us about this, had that ever been proposed by anybody else? I mean, is that, I mean, it seems to be something that solves a problem and, and I'm as concerned as Catherine is. You know, I think they have laid us, I think Corn Ferry has laid to me a groundwork that makes sense. And, you know, now we're all of a sudden just going to say, well, we can try to do this our own, go with Johansson. I, I kind of feel like we've set ourselves on a course here. And like I said, I don't necessarily want to become beholden to them. But I think, in my view, it's almost as if Corn Ferry deserves a chance to follow up on what they've proposed. I, I don't know if I'm, I don't know if everybody understands what I'm saying or not, but that, you know, and, and whether or not we need, even need Johansson with what we're getting from Corn Ferry, I think it's probably another question we need to, need to explore. Do we need to have both of those expenses or is Corn Ferry sufficient? And then, you know, after we worked with Corn Ferry for a while, it's like the auditor question. Do we switch up auditors every five years, you know, in order to, you know, get a new look at things? I don't know. I mean, I know we want to be as consistent as possible, but I, I, I don't think there's all that much different than what we can do here. I think there's just different ways of looking at things.
Well, I, I didn't bring up that because I favored one or the other. It just seemed like that was the obvious place we were going, is what you were saying about what Johansson group did. I really don't care which one, either one, because I quite frankly, as you probably already know, I don't particularly think we should have either one of them. But, so I'm only, I only laid it out because that was the logical place to go when you said that Johansson was doing a lot of the things that Corn Ferry.
Right.
But I will say this, John, because we spend money with Corn Ferry, doesn't mean I need to keep putting money down that, that, whatever you want to call it.
Understand, understand.
So I don't feel compelled to be with Corn Ferry because we spent thirty or whatever it was.
Right.
But I'm still wondering what Corn Ferry's cost is. Because how he laid it out here, twenty-five to thirty-five, or twenty-four to thirty-five, and then the various layers of it and using how many instances when you might use them, that's a lot of leeway in what it might cost.
Exactly.
And, 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 and for me, I need to see a, a better, more specific cost figure from there.
Well, and on, and following back to something else Catherine talked about was my, I was under the impression that during this, during the time we've just passed was Corn Ferry was going to work with our folks to try to train them to how to do some of the, do some of this work ourselves using kind of the Corn Ferry model.
And that was my skepticism, because during the train, during the initial talk with Corn Ferry, they put a component out of training, I think is what you were talking about. I don't see it, maybe we didn't ask for it this time, but.
Well, I think what happened is, if I'm honest, first we wanted, we wanted a second look, because we had questions about our current system and we wanted a second look, which we, we put it out in our P P N I P. And then Corn Ferry came in with a real big price.
Correct.
And we said, no, we don't want to pay that much. We want, we want a high-level look at, look at our current system, tell us where it is. But we don't want to spend that big price tag. We want to know kind of where we're at. And they did, and I happen to have my handy dandy Corn Ferry study. They came in, the two things I think they did, they did the market analysis for us, which was helpful. Where do we stand in the market, where's our system standing overall? And they did bring to the table, like you mentioned, John, the idea that you all really need to have two salary schedules, the core and the field.
Correct.
Now, that can't be unique to them, that's just a matter of, they looked at some positions, looked at the market and came up with it. But the question is to me going forward, we know Corn Ferry is going to, we don't know what it would cost to ask Johansson to flip our current system to this two-tiered salary schedule. But obviously they could do it and they charge us, we don't know. But going forward is we have our two options on the table. We've looked at the market, we have, we've had two independent groups that we can pick from. And going forward, is Corn Ferry a better option for us in terms of keeping our salary schedules updated, doing the market analysis, and, and are they a more expensive option? Or can Johansson do that same work for us at the same or lower cost?
But my question though to the training, John, wasn't that, I know we took it off the table during our, during the negotiations. But at the time we talked about with them, train, the training component was a big part of success with their product. I don't, and so if we go forward with that product, given that they said training was a big part of it, I don't see a training cost here. I'm not saying, you know, I know we took it off then, but they said it was a big part of their success, people's success was that. And it's not in this number that he has given us. And maybe it's not important, but I, again, training was one of those components we talked about.
Okay. So I can, I understand what you're saying. And then I also want to go back to Mr. Mitchell. I think the first part of the training was me watching videos, understanding their methodology, but not actually training on the product, because again, we haven't purchased the product. So I, I hope that clarifies things. So in order for me to work with them and getting them the information, seeing how the information, the data was processed, there were videos and steps and things for me to do for that.
Okay.
Okay. And then, Mr. Mason, I can go back and request, which I know that doesn't help you guys today, but I can go back and request and make sure that part of, if there is additional training fees to be included as well.
And if it's really needed under what they're giving us, it may not even be needed. So I'm just posing a question.
We can, I mean, on that one, how do y'all want to handle that? If you want to, I mean, we obviously don't have to decide today, we can swing back around, I guess.
And, and the reason why is there would be a lot of legwork.
Oh, yeah, I'm just talking about, if, not to necessarily make a decision today, but make it before the June meeting.
Okay.
We would not, but now let me ask this, no matter which option we go with, we do need to deal with the salary schedule, right?
Um, yes, yes.
Both of them, both, if we don't go with Corn Ferry, then we probably, we still need to address the salaries. We don't have to, but we are, we are encountering some problems and we're having to. Now, Corn Ferry took a different approach in terms of some positions would actually be hard in range, right?
Yes, no.
Where basically Johansson, we've got the current salary schedule, but nothing prevents you and Gary now from dealing with in-range appointments if you need to, correct?
Correct.
So do we want to slide the salary schedule? And you and Katrina and David came up with the cost for ten percent, but there's nothing magic about that.
Right, that was just the recommendation.
It could be five percent, two and a half, twelve, it could be whatever number.
Yes.
Right.
The ten percent was a recommendation from Corn Ferry, just in looking at our current scale and, and that it hasn't been adjusted since twenty twenty-two.
Right.
Okay.
But probably if they're recommended, probably if you talk to Johansson, they come up the same or similar answer, right?
Yes.
So that's the next one, and there's a cost to that, and that does move the midpoint.
Yes. Yes.
Which then plays into the next discussion. But what's y'all's feeling on the salary schedule? I know Steve loves a good salary schedule discussion.
This is the worst, this is the worst board meeting in my town.
And we're just starting.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I do have a question. We, on, on, on handout B, we've got, and I, I need some clarification here. We've got K F versus the current compensation plan. Current comp plan, salary scale is ten percent, hundred and eight, hundred and eight thousand dollars. You flip to the next page, Corn Ferry comp plan, salary schedule, new ninety-five thousand dollars. Is that new, is that the field schedule?
No, that's both there's.
That's, that's what Corn Ferry's plan would bump it instead of if we just take ten percent on our current, our current schedule.
Okay, so for the second page on handout B.
Right.
Corn Ferry, the new is the, both their structure. So there would be twenty-seven employees in both the core and the field structure that would fall below the minimum of the, of their grade.
Right.
So there's no adjustment, they're giving us their salary structure already where it should. So there's no adjustment. They're giving us their salary structure already where it should be in like.
These are two separate options, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Yes. Would you like me to kind of walk through each slide? I can do that.
I would.
Okay. So, um, like I mentioned, if you look at, um, handout B, the very first page is our current compensation plan. And so the recommendation where it says salary scale, if we were to change our salary scale by ten percent, that, that would be the cost and it would affect forty, forty employees. So forty employees were far below the midpoint, I'm sorry, the minimum of our grade, um, of the new, um, salary structure.
So these, these are employees that were not below the midpoint before.
Minimum, minimum.
Or at the minimum, I'm sorry, but will be under the minimum now.
Yes.
And they would get some raise ranging from.
At least up to the, at least up to the minimum.
Up to the minimum, yes. Okay. Yes.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'll ask you later.
Okay. Wait, so, okay. So if it's a ten percent change, I, I'm just not understanding that, that forty employees, so only forty employees would, everybody would get a ten percent?
No, no.
Just forty?
Yeah, so that would be.
Those folks, when you adjust the scale, all of a sudden the, you know, I'm making thirty-three, the new minimum is thirty-five. They're gonna bump me up to thirty-five.
So if I'm a grade twelve and now go, and it moves down ten percent, if I'm ten percent or more into my range already, I'll get nothing.
Yeah.
If I'm less than ten, if I'm really new.
Yes.
And I'm only one year or something, you know, and I got my raise last year, but I'm not ten percent into the range. When I move, I will be below the new minimum in the new, the new number.
Let me ask this question. If I'm, if I'm a person that could get on this real nice wave that I see, that you raised the, the salary scales ten percent.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm below and let's say that I'm good and I get a ten percent out of that, you know? This, I mean, it's gotta be the perfect employee to be.
You're brand, you're brand, you're a brand new, brand new and high.
Hard in the last couple of months or whatever.
I get a ten percent. So then, because I'm below the midpoint.
The minimum.
No, I know that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
He's, he's getting ready to ask another question.
Okay, okay.
So then because I'm below the midpoint, I get the two percent?
If we don't that.
Well, we, I, I get that, John, I know.
Okay, I'm sorry.
The two percent plus the, perhaps the three percent COLA? I'm just using the first line of, of the next two.
So let me start from, current policy is employees below the midpoint of the grade will receive a two percent. And employees above the midpoint will receive the cost of living. But because the cost of living is, has been in the previous years more than the two percent, the board has chosen to give everyone across the board the cost of living. So it's at your discretion. So if you say, if, if you, if the board decides to say, everyone, all eligible employees receive the cost of living, then in this example, someone at the minimum of the grade, then we move it ten percent, will move up to the new minimum. So they will get that ten percent. And then if the board has said, all employees receive the cost of living at three point five, then that same individual will receive another three point five. Because one thing is the salary, go, go ahead.
No, but what about the midpoint section over here?
So the, um, oh, so then in Jan, in January.
We do, we okay with all of that.
In January, if the board decides that they want to continue with another two percent, then yes, that individual will receive another two percent because they are at the, below their midpoint. Because the goal is to keep them moving to get to their midpoint of their grade. So the salary, um, adjustment that they receive is because just based on market right now, our salary scale is below market. The cost of living that they receive is.
I get it. So technically, some theoretically, somebody could get a, a fifteen percent compounded actually raise out of, out of this act, if we did this action right here. Plus, how would it, how would it impact compression on somebody who, who was just above those people? But when, when they did, when they went to the ten percent, they did not get any pay raise from the ten percent because doing the same jobs. You know, they didn't get any pay raise because they were still, when the scale moved, they still above where they are. Where, where, where the new minimum is. Now, they get to three percent and they probably might get, probably will get the midpoint. So they will be getting a five percent compounded. In other words, that, that's a lot of difficulty when you start doing these, doing those. And fifteen percent pay raise is a big pay raise.
It, is it accurate to say that based on these two slides, us just doing a ten percent change versus Corn Ferry's proposal? The Corn Ferry one is, is, um, to me looks more targeted. It is looking at, cause we're, we're above market for some employees and then below market for some employees. But it's a target of approach to fixing the problem. With, as they said, you know, we're, this is about being able to hire and retain quality employees. And then also have equity within the company, you know?
Yes.
Um, salary equity. So that's why it's actually costs less to, to more target, in a more targeted manner, adjust salaries.
Because we're trying to, with our current scale, so Corn Ferry, um, is coming in with their scale. And they have it set. And with our current scale, we're going back trying to catch up for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty, you know, and twenty-four. So that's why it's that big jump. Cause when they did the study, because of the two and two, our current employees, they were moving. And so that's why, um, the, our current salaries were on target for market. But our salary scale wasn't. Our salary scale isn't moving. So that's the component that hinders, uh, recruitment, um, attraction. Because we're, we can't compete because our salary scale is, I don't want to say so low, but it's, it's a reflection of twenty twenty-two.
But the Corn Ferry proposal, um, which is at the ninety-five thousand dollar cost. Is to target, to, in a targeted way, fix twenty-seven, um, current employees' salaries.
Yes.
Which they did not find in line with the tool that they utilize.
Yes.
And then to keep up, that, the, um, as far as what other companies do, it's that range from whatever, zero to ten percent salary increase a year. Is that correct? I mean, what's, what's that? I know they talked about, we've talked about, do we choose five percent, ten percent? That is just to keep up with the market.
Yes. And then the other, um, decision is how quickly would you like for employees to move to their midpoint? Six years, seven years, eight years? That's another component that they did provide, but that is not in the slide.
And I think on that one, I know when Steve and I met with you and Katrina, David and Gary, I think one of the concerns we had that we wanted to bring to the board is not necessarily to commit to that six or eight year. Cause that in fact means that we're tied in the hands of, of future boards in terms of what they have to do. That that's obligating them to, on a policy that they may, like David discovered, as revenues and expenses collide, that's future boards who are gonna have to make that call to adopt that timeframe. That that each year you've got to make that COLA decision and, and what money you have.
But for budgeting purposes, I don't, I.
We, we got a twenty to twenty-nine year plan, but we're only budget one year at a time. And that's all we can obligate revenues and expenses. Because we do have the option on salary schedule to not move it at all. And that just puts more pressure on you and Gary to look at in-range appointments, right?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
We have not adjusted our salary schedule. It's been two years since we adjusted our salary schedule.
Correct.
Okay. This ten percent, is it because of the, how much of, how much of this ten percent is the historically high inflation we had at the tail end of, you know, twenty-two into twenty-three that's now kind of tapering off?
I'm not for sure. I would have to ask.
Any idea, David, any thought about how much of that might be there?
No, the only component that I think has happened since the pandemic is the shift to competing on a national scale on certain jobs. And, and I'm thinking IT and a few others that remote work has been around a long time. So that's the other component I would bring in is, uh, the workforce has changed in the last three years.
I, I, I guess from, from my perspective and, and correct me if I'm wrong, another thing about the Corn Ferry, and I remember this as a Corn Ferry suggestion, of course, I don't have my copy with me right now. They were of the mind that we needed to adjust our salary schedule on an annual basis, correct?
Correct, yes.
So if, if we did this on a more, on a more consistent, it would be a much more incremental change. And, you know, whether or not that's in line with CPI, whether we just, you know, bump everything up, our salary schedules up with CPI or whatever. Steve, that's gonna solve some of the, some of the issues you've talked about where we don't make these changes and then, you know.
But it presents another one.
It does.
And the other one is that what she just described, what they just show right here, the ten percent, the three percent, it's basically been the practice, not the ten percent, uh, but the increase in salaries, in the, in the, uh, salary scale over the la, at least in my tenure here. And I told y'all last, the average pay raise here in three years was thirty percent. I don't know how you do, I don't, how you sustain that. And that fifteen percent that we just talked about right now perpetuated going forward like that, you can't sustain that. The company can't sustain that. And that's my point. You gotta look at the fiscal impact somewhat to end result before you start going down a path of planning, how to use this, that. You gotta see what the fiscal impact of these plans are before you can make a decision on what to do.
I was just trying to look at what average salaries trend is, twenty-two to twenty-four, but it's, I keep getting a bunch of charts. And what's y'all's preference in terms of kind of generally, uh, like you said, we can do zero, we can do two and a half, five, ten, or we can leave it as is? Michelle, do you want?
No.
Oh, I thought you were.
No. My recommendation is you leave it as is, but I know where I'm at, so, you know, that's on my order.
Wish then we'd bring in the next question, cause all this kind of builds is, you know, whether we want to keep. I, I think two plus two is kind of a, a bad discussion, misnomer. I mean, I think probably realistically I'll be more like whatever COLA is plus some percent. Cause I don't, I think if inflation, if we're given a total above two percent, we're disadvantaging employees below the midpoint in July of every year, cause they're not getting a full amount of inflation. And then the question is if, if we'd agree to that and we want to do something in, uh, January, and I assume we adopted January just to cut the cost in half every year? Cause otherwise, I mean, technically for everybody below midpoint, you could do COLA plus percent on July first. It just splits the cost in half by taking it to January. Is that why it was adopted?
Well, the, the plan, the plan is really for the below midpoint.
Right, definitely.
It's, it's July and January.
But there's nothing major about January.
But no, it's, it's, yeah.
It's like John somebody phasing in something, it just.
Yeah.
It just doesn't cost you as much year one, but year two, you got the full cost.
No, I think that was just a board decision at the time and it's, it's not the big hit up front. It, two sounds better than four.
Yeah, yeah. So what y'all was thinking about that?
Well, I think, I think everybody should get the COLA.
Yeah.
I personally am more in favor of the Corn Ferry Compensation Plan to target it, let's fix it. Everybody should get COLA. And, um, and if I get fuzzy where then on top of it is this two and two, the, the midpoint, bringing people to, how quickly do you want to bring people to midpoint issue? That's what the two and two achieves. And this, you need to keep with the market. So you need to sort of adopt, um, a increase. And once you fix your, your plan, ad- adopt keeping up and either, you know, like around a five or a ten percent. I clearly am looking more at like a five percent.
Yeah.
So am I covering all the things to do? So it, in my head, it would be this, the Corn Ferry Compensation Plan, adopting a COLA of like a three and a half percent. And can it be either or, like, we're going to a, adopt like a five percent growth in salaries or a two and two? It's not both of them, right?
Right. Um, the two and two isn't, um, presented by Corn Ferry. That's our current. But we still do need to make a decision. Well, like you said, you, you had mentioned that going forward, that doesn't have to be in the policy.
Right.
Okay.
And I, and I, and I think the other, and I think the, I'm, I'm sorry, Michelle, I did not mean to interrupt you. Go ahead and finish your.
No, that, I'm, you're good. Go ahead.
Um, the, the other thing about the Corn Ferry is, you know, I think this, you know, two and two came about a long time ago when, when this, when whatever board was sitting here got a number they couldn't afford. So two and two was their stopgap measure to fix this. And I think in many ways it's created the thing where we roll the boulder up the hill like Sisyphus and then it rolls back down because it's a never-ending goal we're never gonna reach. What I like about the Corn Ferry is not only does it, not only like, like Catherine said, is it more targeted? It, that, that it defers field folks versus administrative folks because they do live in two different universes in terms of pay and benefits. The other thing that it does is their encouragement on not necessarily hiring people in at just the minimum. If we have to get people and go above the minimum, then that's fine. And if we get more people in, you know, somewhat above the minimum, that has two effects. Number one, it's when we have to adjust our salary schedule, we're not saddled with a whole bunch of people that are suddenly now gonna be below the minimum. And two, those people start out closer to the midpoint. So I, you know, I think it's, I think it's there. And Steve, I understand a lot of the concerns you've got with a lot of this. But I think in the day and age we're in, and I'll, I'll go back to this, when tier one was no longer tier one and tier two, which was a defined, you know, a, 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 a much less nice version of tier one, which was around for a few years, when those went away and it became a tier three, these jobs, state jobs, city jobs, county jobs, uh, SPGE jobs, they all became a money game. You know, you talked about the 401K, they don't want us to put an extra six percent in the 401K. They want six percent so they can afford to downpay them all the time. So, you know, and, and it, and at the end of the day, unfortunately, public entities, when it becomes a money game, it's a more losing proposition for us. Now, I don't know how to get out of that, but that's just the way it is. So, uh, those are just my thoughts on it. But I, I would prefer, much like Catherine said, I would prefer we just go with the Corn Ferry plan. I, I think it makes a lot of sense on a lot of levels.
The question.
Yeah.
Now I forgot, do we know what positions are, are, are those twenty-seven, twenty-seven? I know we know, but I don't remember, and I don't really want to say them here.
Yeah.
But, uh, do you know, remember who they, what positions they are?
I don't remember specifically what position.
I remember the type of patient, I don't remember.
This is a hyper, uh, theoretical question.
Right.
You're adopting a plan without knowing where, where, where it's happening.
Well, we did, I mean, when we met individually with Corn Ferry, you know.
Yeah, we did, but we just.
We did. I mean, I remember, I mean, I know who that outlier is. I mean, I, I know who these are.
But the other part of the question though is, again, the mid, the scale keeps moving. You can never catch it. And that's the part, that's the part where the pay raises come, the, beyond the COLA, beyond whatever. That's where the pay raise comes. And it's been proven here. That's where the pay raise is.
And what the two and two is, and like you said, I know all of us have fooled this for a long time. You know, the midpoint has always been.
You know, the midpoint has always been in government, a hypothetical of, a number that midpoint is where you say the market will be, that's what you say the market is. You can't afford to hire everybody at midpoint. So you adopt a policy that says, we want to get people to midpoint as quick as we can, because truly that's where we want to get them. And then we want to get them there fast, and then people will be on to midpoint, which we recognize as people with tenure, that we're going to slow them down, so not going to give them the extra raise. So we're going to try to get you as fast as we can to midpoint and then slow you down after that. I mean, that's basically what, but midpoint is just a number that says, like, let's pick the mechanic's job. When we say this is the midpoint for the mechanic's job, we're saying that's what that job ought to pay right now in the market, right?
With experience.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
But we, we're not hiring people at that because you get into grade compression, you get all kinds of things. But our goal is to hire you at what we can get you to come for. If we have to go in range or whatever, and then try to get you to that midpoint as quick as we can, which is COLA plus something else.
Right, based on, yeah, with experience, yes.
But if you've been with us for 20 years and that salary is based on six years, we're obviously saying you're worth a lot more to us if you've got 20 years' experience. So we're, you're getting close to maximum, which then brings up that other policy, that if we're going to give you a COLA and you're already at the max, or you're within 2%, we're going to waive the max if the board decides. So you get your full COLA, because inflation doesn't stop just because you're making the max.
And would the COLA kick in July 1?
Yes.
Okay. But then this, the other, like, keeping up and this either, whatever, something to 10%, like a 5%. Since the corn fairy numbers were based on a January projection, and if we get, you know, aligned with that, would that 5% not need to happen until January?
And when you say 5%?
For the salary, again, if, we're going to work, if, once a decision is made, I'm going to work with him on the policy of how to maintain. So it would be at their recommendation. It could be, and we can set it for July 1st, not for any, because normally you wouldn't change the salary structure in the middle
Of a year.
of the fiscal year. So it can be projected out that, again, salary structure is done annually July 1st, so forth and so on, so.
Okay.
Okay.
So we wouldn't adopt for this budget a 5 or 10% or whatever salary adjustment?
We'd adopt what they projected from Jan- they projected this to January 1st to 25, correct?
Okay, so as far as actual numbers that, we would be looking at this, if this is the route we went, the 95,000 to just 27 employees.
Yes.
Pay, and then an additional 547 to give our current employees a COLA. Correct, if we.
Yeah, the 95 plus the 3.5% is the total that.
So 95,000 plus.
The 506.
547, why is there a cost and total cost?
That's the, that's the pension and, I'm assuming that's the pension and benefit and other costs associated with the salary increase?
The 95 is just to bring the 27 to midpoint.
I get that, but what's the red?
The red is the total, you add the, bring the minimum and then the cost of living together. You add the, bring the employees, the 95 to the 506.
Oh.
Sorry.
It's not adding that.
Okay, you're correct.
But in terms of, let's just.
We gotta figure out this number.
We didn't get an answer to that question. The five, the, the difference between the 506 and the 547, I, I suggested that it was, you know, the, the 506 is the straight salary cost, the 547 is, what does, what does that cost the, our, us as an employer in taxes and benefits and pension costs? Is that, is that, is that, is that correct, or is it, is that a different number?
These are my numbers, I'm sorry, so.
Oh, okay.
There, there may be a mistake in these numbers. I'll have to look.
Okay.
So it's either 95,000 plus the 506,000, or 95,000 and the 547,000. So it's, it's one of those two, but it's going to be that top box plus something from that bottom box.
Correct.
And that would take us through this year.
Yes.
And then next year, what we would probably look at again is, what's COLA for next year? And now.
How do we address the salary schedule?
How do we bump up our overall, our
Salary structure.
Salary structure to keep up with the market. You know, and that's where we decide, hopefully, you know, based on obviously corn fairy's recommendation. What are other companies doing? Is it more like a 5% or 10% kind of thing?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So, I mean, that just helps me to know, like, what are we talking this year in additional salary costs?
Yeah, yes.
Let me run through two scenarios to make sure I'm understanding, anybody watching what we're talking about.
Okay.
If everybody got a 3.5% COLA July 1, and we adopted the new corn fairy schedule.
Yes.
27 employees, we'd get something between $1 and 10% depending on how long they've been with us. If they've been with us a year, a year and a half, it wouldn't be, they wouldn't be getting much if they just got hired within the last couple of months and they're at the new, and they're at the minimum still, then the grade move, they might get 10%, but that would affect very few, correct?
I'm not for sure the percentages because.
No, but I'm just saying in here, yeah. Generally, only a brand-new employee would get the 10% if we moved the salary schedule 10%.
Oh, under corn fairy?
Yes.
No.
That's not under corn fairy.
That's not under corn fairy.
No, under corn fairy, you adopt a new salary schedule and you adopt new minimums.
Right.
Yeah, but that's, but, but, but corn fairy is not a straight 10%.
No, that's what I mean, they wouldn't get 10.
Yeah.
Only, the only one, if, if my grade moved 10%, and I was at the minimum, I'd been hired here a month, then I'd get that on the new grade, right? But if I'd been here a year and a half, I may not get anything or more, right?
Under corn fairy.
Right.
There's no 10%.
No, I'm talking about, no, that's what I mean, the salary schedule moving 10% doesn't give employees a 10% rate.
Right, yeah, no, no, no.
But that wouldn't happen until next.
In terms of raises, anybody who would get any raises on the new salary schedule would only be those 27, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Correct.
Then everybody gets the 3.5%.
Yes. So with the, in the 27 that corn fairy identified, that isn't necessarily new employees, that's just where they sit there.
Right, anywhere in the schedule, right.
Yes.
It could be new, it could be whatever.
Well, would it be, it would all be existing because they wouldn't know what the new would be.
Right, but new, I'm talking about somebody recently hired just within the last few months.
And it wouldn't be in his number.
If they're currently hired, yeah.
If they're currently hired, it would be.
It's, I mean, it's related to that.
Yeah.
Right?
That's a scatter chart.
It's fixing these people hanging out down here and getting them up to at least there.
And then if, if the board's pleasure was to waive the maximum for the COLA only, for tenured people who the 3.5 would put them beyond the maximum in their current grade, that would be a recommendation also, right?
Yes.
Which brings us to, do we want to do anything on the midpoint issue? Either at any, at any point in this process, do we, if we're changing the schedule, doing the 27, doing the 3.5%, waiving the maximum, do we need to do anything on the midpoint issue?
So you say waive the maximum, with someone that at, at the top in the 3.5?
If, if the 3.5 puts you beyond the maximum in your current grade.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm for waiving the maximum, yeah.
Yes, I'm within 2% of the max, the 3.5 would take me beyond it. And that, that would not waive the max for promotions or other things, it would only waive it for the COLA. So that brings us to the the midpoint issue. I think the midpoint issue is, under, if we adopt corn fairy, I think the midpoint issue, at least for this year, is not. I, I think, I think part of what corn fairy is doing is a more, a, a less board-involved way to start getting people to the midpoint. That's my, is, is that a, is that a proper, you know, is that more of an administrative way to try to get him, get employees through to the midpoint?
Yes, because like you have mentioned, if we're, if we make a decision and we're hiring people in, not just at the minimum, and if the scale is moving based on their recommendation of every year, yeah, the, the midpoint isn't.
It's not going to be as much of an issue.
Yeah.
So I would, I'd, I'd let that go at least for this year and then maybe see where we are next year.
And, I mean, I, I'd kind of like to put the, this bug in everybody's ear as far as if this gets adopted like this, that the next year, you know, doing an increase overall, but to also leave room for, based on merit. I think that's important. Yeah.
So you, would you like that to be considered in the policy or just a discussion that is brought up every year?
We, we have, there is options for merit pay right now, isn't there? Then I said leave, leave it like it is.
Okay.
But historically, we've not asked Gary or authorized him or suggested, recommended, implied, or otherwise suggested that he do merit type thing. I guess the question is, do we want him? Because right now, is the policy wide open right now, is he limited to a certain percent or a number, or does he have total discretion?
It's at the board's discretion whether to do merit or not.
So the board, does the board have to approve him or can Gary approve?
Have we been giving merit?
No.
Okay, so that's nothing, it's nothing we've done, I'm just saying that I think it's something important to utilize in the future.
So I guess the question is, do we want to, when we adopt all this, to give Gary some direction?
Well, I don't know what the current policy says, to be honest.
Have you got it there, Michelle?
Yes. Merit awards will be limited to the merit funds included in the annual budget approved by board.
Right. So we have no funds budgeted, so.
Right, but I mean, I'm thinking about, I mean, maybe not necessarily this budget, but the next year.
Next year budget. And during that time, Gary can bring his proposal on whether you want to do a flat amount, add it to the base, not add it to the base, so forth. There's different ways you can do it, you can do like one time, you know, it just only applies one year, but it doesn't go in the base going forward, or it goes in the base, or you can do flat dollar amounts for everybody, or do an amount of percent of pay, or. So you want Gary to come with a proposal for the next budget?
Yeah, I don't think it's something to throw on him right now.
Okay. So, tentative, 3.5, adopt corn fairy, takes care of the 27, waive the maximum, no midpoint issues. Then if you go to Schedule C, we got four recommendations that Michelle has identified on Schedule C to be included.
All of these will be addressed at the June 18th board meeting, so no decision is needed.
But we're adopting a budget now in terms of, do we want to include these funds?
Right.
Yes.
Right. So the first one is the customer service director. We've had it in our budget previously, and just in some of the review with corn fairy, they noticed how other departments were structured, and so it was just a question.
And we had two supervisors now, now we only have one.
Yes, yes.
So we wouldn't have any supervisors and we'd just have a director?
No, the plan is to still have supervisors as well, but just to add an additional layer. With the day-to-day and the additional projects coming that they have, it just looks as if it's needed to have a director to spearhead these projects. And then the supervisors can supervise, I guess, will be, and deal with the day-to-day.
I can talk about that.
Okay, David said he'll assist me with this.
I'd like to give you just a little background, try to be brief. We've got a summary of how this department management's been over the years, and it's about a page long over the last 20 years. In looking at where we are as far as what we're functioning today and then what we're going to be asking this department to do in the future, the direction of that department needs to be, they need to, there needs to be a leader at the top that's focused on what we're trying to accomplish as far as these leveraging technology issues that we talked about, how to implement those, because you can come up with the idea, it sounds great. We've got to get the technology, we've got to get the process, we've got to get the people trained, and we've got to get them projecting that to the customer on a daily basis. That's someone trying to get this off the ground, running in a project. Then you have the day-to-day, what I call the day-to-day tornado of activity that you have to, that you have to be in. Today, we bring this customer service report to you each month, and it's between 8,500 and 10,000 individual customer contacts that we're doing on a day-to-day basis. So you come in with a list of things to do, and every day, there's things popping up. The fact, the amazing amount of things that pop up that you all don't hear about because we handle it is substantial. When we're looking at where we're going in, in the future, today, we have two supervisors. You'll notice when you look at the other admin departments, there's a director, and then typically a upper-level employee that is either a, considered a senior or an assistant, someone that is a buffer between the day-to-day, the, the implementation team, a buffer between, in this case, the customer contact. Today, we've got with one supervisor, that supervisor gets elevated problems to them on a daily basis, and it really throws off the game of moving forward and improving. So you're getting sucked into the day-to-day tornado activity. We need a layer above the CSR and cashier group that is getting elevated problems, fixing those problems, plus all the administrative needed to keep the book straight, the billing straight, the customer contact and communication straight. And when we're talking about implementing all these new technologies with an app, prepaid billing, leaning into AMI, all these other things, we need someone at the top, in my opinion, that is focused on truly moving this department forward. And this is also a part of, I think something Mr. Mason, you brought up in your concern, and I'll echo your concern about sustainability of where we're going. I don't, I think there's a lot of discussions within management team, and I'm not going to get too far ahead or out above the issues. But I don't know if Frankfurt Plant Board is structured today as far as our compensation and our employees. I don't know if that looks the same always. Today, it's working for us. As technology changes and as we need to bend that cost curve down to be competitive on retail rates to our customers, to make us still a valid utility, I can see that we're going to need to change maybe some structure of how we work. Now, that's way beyond this year, next year. But my point is, if we're not leaning into ways to improve processes to minimize human resources needed, to use technology that is, that doesn't require healthcare or a pension, we're going to have to push more to self-service. So that's all to sum up, is that I know it's adding a layer and it's more cost, but we need a director, in my opinion, one to two supervisors that are handling escalations and keeping that 10,000 transactions moving in a, in a way that you don't hear about the problems. And also, we're going to be asking them over the next five years to connect every customer to next band. That's going to be a rolling node to node, in any given time, we're going to have 10 to 15 nodes that are moving at some communication plan. We're moving to time of use rates, that's a, everything we're doing has a major customer communication component to it. So we want to throw it out there as a request, because we, and, and that's kind of where we're at.
Is, is this?
Next one is the.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? That last position you were talking about, is that what was discussed when I was meeting with telecom on their budget? And that was brought up. I mean, there were a couple of positions where if we spend the money now, it's going to make us more money. It's that person that, on, on connecting our customers better, that that person can actually concentrate on it. I think the other one was the easement procurement person.
Yes, I've not, I wasn't here during the FSN transition, but I know in my 12 years, I've not seen a project that's going to require, other than, sorry, the lead service, align inventory, all that, that's really touchy too. But we're going to be out, at some point, we're going to have to knock on doors. And at some point, we might have to be working past the 4:30, we might have to be working weekends to hit this target of connecting 26,000 homes or businesses. To hit this target of connecting twenty-six thousand homes or businesses in the next five years, it's going to be a level of activity that, that hasn't been seen in some time. So, it is getting the right people in the right place, and to get this, we might have to invest a little more in certain positions, uh, maybe ones we don't have. Like who's going to go out and knock on the doors and say, "We're here to sign you up, we're in your neighborhood." To get past some of these large projects, we might have to do some things we've just not done in a while. So I guess the answer is yes to your, to your comment.
Okay.
There's the safety field assistant, the easement procurement specialist, and eliminate the inventory control coordinator and add a warehouse one.
Yes.
And those are requested to be?
So the first two, just the, um, those are already included in the budget, the customer service and the safety field assistant. And then the easement procurement specialist and, um, the eliminate the inventory control coordinator. It's just to add another body, so it's, it's to eliminate that position, but add additional, um, e- employee for the warehouse.
David, in the budget we've got in front of us, are these already in there?
The, the first.
Just the one?
The first two, customer service and safety field assistant.
Are in the budget, we, in the draft we've got?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
But the, and the fourth one, we don't need additional revenue, it's just changing.
Yes, so.
Titles.
It, not necessarily changing title, you're going to eliminate one title, but, and add a body to another position, so, yes.
But that, it's a kind of a flat thing.
Yes.
So, what's the cost on the easement?
I'm sorry, what's the cost on which one?
For the, adding the easement procure, procurement specialist part-time position, which I'm, I'm in favor of just having met with telecom and heard about it.
It's part-time, but we're looking at roughly seventy K maybe. We're still working on the job description and everything.
That is, that would only be utilized during the project, and then the project which I would go with, if it's funded in a project.
That's right, that's right. But, so, because it's funded that way, do we have to put it in the budget, or?
It's technically, I guess we want to put the body in the budget as a all-around position.
Okay.
As a record, sure, but as far as the funding, it would actually come out of the grants.
Okay, and that's just going to help make sure we hit that target date, because the easement issue is a problem.
What's the cost of the other positions? The director, the safety assistant position?
The director we would bring, we need to re, if, if you all are supportive, at least from a nod today, we would like to, we, what we did before, we put a lot of director position duties that should be focused on high-level tasks of strategy and implementing strategy, and brought that down to supervisor level, increasing that supervisor pay. We would break out some duties from the supervisor, put them in the director, add more director duties. That's going to, so to answer your question, we don't have the director position graded to give you that number, and we know the supervisor, when we retool, will shift downward.
So what, what about?
You're looking around eighty thousand dollars for a person that's setting trajectory to make sure we can do more with less. I think some of these technologies are going to allow us to do, to not have as many employees on staff.
But you said it's already in the budget, we're, on what line?
If you go to the customer service budget, so we're going to be going back to the, the fourth tab of your bounded budget copy, and I think it's around page forty-nine.
In the administrative overhead section?
Forty-nine, if you look at fifty on a lot item detail, it's embedded in the employee payroll. So it's a, we've rolled it all up, we don't have it at a employee level, which we can, we have all that data to give to you, but it's at the, um.
Page forty-nine of the administrative overhead section?
Yes, page forty-nine is the customer service budget, so on line five.
But it doesn't say customer service budget. I mean, on the tab, does it say administrative overhead?
Uh, the fourth, the last tab says administrative overhead, and then the actual page number is page forty-nine.
Okay.
And at the very top, you'll see customer service. Line five is where we have payroll.
Does your site line doesn't say customer service?
So page forty-nine should be just a summary that has, that, that has just the.
Uh, I'm, maybe, you might be working off a different version.
Think it's fifty?
Fifty.
Okay. So, so page.
Got you, got you, sorry.
I've got last year's. I'm doing my best. So yes, I had last year's, I was like, that doesn't make sense, that mine's a page off than everybody else's. Which does show you how much we stay the same. So, yes, page fifty, line five is when we roll up everyone into payroll. And then, when you go to the detail on fifty-two, is where, you know, we have the, payroll is still just one single line item that ha, and plus the service award and overtime listed in there. But, at any of these levels, we can give you a breakdown of every department and by every position.
So what about the safety field assistant position? About what is, is it going to cost?
Forty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty-two, so forty-seven thousand. Because we currently already have that position, again, we're adding an additional body.
Okay, that's a new, that's a new, and then is any added cost or less cost changing the inventory control coordinator to, uh, additional warehouse person?
Um, no, because adding the warehouse is a lower grade, so it wouldn't be an additional cost. It shouldn't be an additional cost.
And this process including today is asking, or at least getting, uh, a head nod to keep the money in the budget, and then we would come back to the board with a detailed budget or a detailed agenda item in, in some board meeting to talk about the grade, what the task is, how much it costs, and get true approval to then move forward in hiring that position. So, this is just about getting money slotted, and you will have another opportunity to approve or deny.
Was one of these, um, I don't have my notes in front of me, was one of these already in last year's budget that we just didn't fill it?
No.
There was something in last year's budget that we didn't fill, telecom-related, I thought.
That was the, I'm sorry, that was the administrative assistant position. That we were working on, we were in our budget meeting, we had a discussion about whether or not we were trying to see if we could have that, and then a discussion about the number of projects that we talked about at that time.
Yes.
That's what you were talking about earlier.
Okay, is that position in this budget now?
It should be.
Okay.
It was funded last year in this project, or under.
Right. Right. But we're looking toward going ahead and filling it, because again, it's one of those things where if we spend money, we're going to make more money because they can.
Some of the responsibility to be, some of those selling features and, or maybe some works, we could free up some people in the office, catch some walking traffic in this area.
Okay, great, thank you.
I'm just going to have you stay up here, because, um, if you don't have any more questions about those, the next on, um, Section D was title changes. There's no monetary impact, but just if you had any questions, um, he's just making some.
Does it have grade impact?
Grade? No, so Mason's working, maybe can I touch on, in the cable, five years, basically everybody in our supervisor role and above every time. So, as we move to the next band and kind of transition with conventional people to DVD and things like that picture, we're looking across the company to see what we can enhance now. As some jobs, you know, fall off, they won't have as much to do, because we're not sending them to many boxes now.
So what we're looking to do is possibly, and it's not going to be overnight, but trying to look in the future about bringing some of these positions together that have a common goal, that have a, you know, that work with customers directly. So some of those support features is what we're working on. And, you know, a couple of years ago, I'd made a decision, we started taking on more of the IT function in telecom. I'd made some assumptions, and they were wrong, and so now I'm trying to regroup, and it's not in the budget, I've talked to Michelle about it, but, you know, probably this year too, we'll bring some more title changes, and maybe they'll be budget neutral, but actually change some positions that I don't think that we need anymore, but change those roles as they open up. So, I have a couple of open positions now, I have some retirements. It's kind of dynamic, because I'm just trying to see, get through the next band to see actually where we need to be. It kind of goes back to, you know, we used to have twelve installers, right now we're running about seven. And so I'm trying to think, do we never, do we need to expand to those full seven, or those, that full twelve, or can we stay at seven, what that number is? So, there's some dynamics in there that will be coming back to the board, even outside of budget.
Any questions?
Well, just to kind of update everybody where we're at, uh, you know, like we said, Kenny's going out to order food, they're delivered here, we can work through lunch. And just for the record, we're not spending any FPV money, you know, we're just throwing into a pot and, and covering it, so there won't be any, no ratepayer money when we spend to eat, so, and then, we've got one more topic on the personnel stuff, the four oh one A, and then we'll go through the administrative departments, and then whenever the food gets here, we'll just break for a few minutes, regroup, and then get started again, if that's okay. Okay, last, uh, personnel-related issue is the four oh one A. This was a discussion that came up when Steve and I were meeting, I'm sorry.
What about, did you say E?
Oh, the on-call pay, yes.
Okay.
Uh, this came up, do you want, you want, we want Travis to come up real quick? That would be, uh, that would be attachment E.
Do you want me to do a summary, or did you want?
You could just.
Okay, yeah, just really quickly, um, so we had a request from the, uh, the electric supervisors, uh, to look at their, their on-call pay. So this is not necessarily overtime hours that they work, but to be on standby, so essentially, be within town if an emergency happens, if the supervisor gets called in.
And the current policy has been in effect for how long?
Do you remember the revision? Several years.
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's, it's been in, in the policy for some time, is, um, it's, it's twenty dollars a day through the week, and then forty each weekend day. So, essentially, you're giving up all your free time for a hundred and eighty dollars a week, and, and that was kind of a pain point for the supervisors. So they asked to be moved, uh, to, to a structure that would be based on their, their hourly rate. Um, so they, they have asked to move from that fixed twenty dollars a day. What the request would be, um, would be ten hours per week at time and a half, is, is what they're asking for, for their.
So the current policy is, if you're the on-call and you get what, one week a month?
Yeah, is that how it works out?
You don't leave.
Right.
You, you have to be off hours, weekends, wherever, you don't leave Franklin County, right?
Right, you have to be, if you're called, you have to respond, so you have to be available, yes.
And if you get, if you get called in, your wages kick in, but this is basically that you can't plan anything, you have to sit at home in case you get a call.
Right, yeah, so for, you take just the weekend, you're, you're giving up your weekend for, for forty bucks.
And every night.
And every night, every weeknight for, for twenty a night. So, yeah, it, it's, it's a big pain point for them. Um, from my perspective, it's, it's a recruitment and retention issue, um, not only a fairness, but we want to keep our best, you know, kind of up-and-coming lineman motivated to keep making those steps at the next position. We've had some of those linemen, you know, at least mentioned kind of in passing that there's not a lot of incentive to move up to the supervisor. It's a tougher job, more headaches, uh, they're losing a lot of their overtime pay, and then the on-call pay just kind of added on top of that, is not really an incentive to, to take that next step. So, that's a request. It would impact both electric and water, uh, we're asking to, to kind of keep both divisions on that same, same structure. I don't know that we had telecom really in that conversation or not, but.
Yes, telecom should be added as well. They don't, not all of their employees or supervisors, um, do standby pay, but there are a couple positions that are on-call, or on standby, I'm sorry.
So this would apply to electric, water, and telecom for all employees who are supervisors in that situation?
Yes, so it wouldn't just only, it'll be a complete policy change across the company, so. So for any employees that, um, which is usually just water, telecom, and electric, um, handle standby.
Sean? I have a question. Going back to the current policy under trouble-call pay, there's a number one here that talks about non-exempt employees on-call, and then it flips to two, which we want to, which propose in the mending, that talks about electric and water, and I guess it's going to include telecom. Why is, how's the difference in one there versus what's in two? Who does, who does one apply to? What, what, what employees does number one apply to?
So there's a rotation where, um, trouble-call is there, is it two hours, they're usually working, they're going out. So, um, my best example is cable, um, they have extra, um, jobs or, um, what do you call it? Thank you, Adam. They have extra.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're fine.
No, basically, what she referred to is like, the cable installation, there's always somebody that has an issue with our service.
And so typically, when they're on-call, they're working at plus.
Right.
So they're only working three hours a night.
Okay. But this, this establishes a minimum for them, and two is, two is for supervisory folks.
Right, so you're, you're just, in, in the event you have to show up to.
I got you.
An event, you're standing by, you're.
I got you.
Yeah, okay.
I got you, yeah. No, that's good. No. Is everybody?
So no decision needs to be made, just.
Again, this is for budget purposes, we're just.
Right, uh, uh, actual board agenda item will be, um, presented at, um, June eighth meeting.
But this is not in the budget that we've got in front of us right now, right, David?
No.
My understanding is no, we've got just the first two that were there, and then that, we baked in cost for that telecom.
And Travis, you all talked to the supervisor, they know about this, and this is, maybe not what they want, but it's better than.
Sure, yeah, yeah, it, it's much improved, I think it's, um, you know, of course, more is always better, like everything else. But I, I feel like it was well-received and felt like a, you know, a good balance.
You okay with?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay, because, um, um, standby is a lot more, means you not only have like a family and you cannot go, you have to, because they require them to drive a company vehicle, commercial license, keep them. So, you never know, you got to call or not, but if, when you do, you cannot say, "I have, I just had a drink." That's not even acceptable. So it's, it's hold a much higher standard for emergency operation. Just be fair, because when you treat other employee, which is not a supervisor call, we do pay them the policy.
Right.
Like we described it. But once you become supervisor, then suddenly, you're going to be treated differently. That's what we talk about recruiting, means you're going to have people who sometimes hesitate, say, "Oh, do I want to move to supervisor? I'm going to lose our benefit. I'm still on-call, but I'm not going to have that." Just to be fair, not necessarily, I'm saying it's right or wrong, I mean, I was in the different policy when I was in Texas. I'm not saying that's right, but that's in Kentucky, currently we all pay standby, not just us. Every company has an old municipal, pay standby. But Texas, they don't pay. It's unfair, it's not necessary, yes.
So that was just in your job description, you had to be on standby so much a month, but, and you didn't get paid unless you got called in?
Yes, it's not every supervisor got all the pay all time. You have a few supervisors, they rotated, but every week, you have someone as standby. Yes.
And in addition, with their request, it was also to add, um, the foreman, um, to the, the take-home vehicle list, because at the time, they're not currently on the list. And there's also a request to add the water treatment, um, assistant superintendent to the take-home vehicle, um, list, so.
Your right. Okay. The last issue on the personnel is, and Katrina's done a lot of work on this, uh, and Gary's done some research. We currently have a four oh one A plan for employees, which is supplemental four oh one K-type plans, four oh one A under IRS, for tier-three employees. And Katrina, you want to explain real quick what we have now and kind of what we've talked about?
Yeah, currently, um, it's only tier-three people are eligible, um, and that's seventy-three people currently eligible. And we match two percent, basically the maximum match is two percent. So if, if they put in four percent, we're going to match two, if they put in six, we're still going to match two. There of the seventy-three eligible, we currently have sixty-five participating, so we do have a good participation rate. And the average deferral, um, excluding Gary, is four and a half percent. There of the seventy-three eligible, we currently have sixty-five participating, so we do have a good participation rate, and the average deferral, um, excluding Gary, is four and a half percent. So we, we do have most people deferring enough to get the full match currently.
And so the question on it is, because obviously we're moving, every new employee is going to be in the tier-three. Tier-one shuts off at what, about two thousand eight, tier-three, tier-two shuts off about two thousand twelve or thirteen?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
So, I was looking at when it was passed, uh, the, so the question is, do we want for recruitment and retention to increase that two percent? If we do want to increase the two percent, do we want to require a match to get it, or just put it in period, as, just put in an extra one or two percent? To give an incentive for employees to either come or stay, or do we need to do it, is it good for recruitment and retention? Or, given the nature that by and large it's younger employees, and they're maybe not as focused on retiring in thirty years as others? Is it money we need to spend? And I know, uh, we looked at what OMU, Bowling Green, co-ops, different people are doing, it's kind of a mixed bag, I don't think it's, there are a lot of people looking at it, but not doing a lot. Do we want to do anything here? The CERS rate, like David said, when we started, has gone from twenty-three percent employer match to about nineteen. In theory, it's gonna keep going, someday it will get down to six percent, a long time from now, but it does, it is moving that direction. Uh, do we want to do anything with that, does it make a difference, does it help? And like you said, there'd be two questions there, if it makes a difference, if it helps, do we want to increase the match number? And if we do, does it require, does it require an employee match to get it, or we just say, if you're participating and you're putting in, then we're gonna put in four percent for you, whatever you put in, or do we want to just leave it the way it is? Is that a fair, on the options? And Gary, I mean, what's your feeling, does it, in terms of, does it make a difference, do we need to do it, or just leave it?
I certainly hope so, particularly if employee choose tier-three, young linemen, or we spend a lot of time training them, then we don't want to become a training ground for the IOU or co-op. I do want you to know, the co-op, most of them still have the pension, like every year service, you have a two percent. So, majority of them, I believe they have it, when they put a thirty-year or twenty-five-year, they can have the half of their salary when they retire, or sixty percent. Which is rare, but they are nationwide, co-op majority still have it. And, uh, then, then the part we talk about tier-three, I'm worried about, you know, long-term. Currently, majority still tier-one, two, but long-term, all become tier-three. And the tier-three, uh, it's a good benefit, I do want you to know that, John definitely know better than all you, than me. But I'm calculate myself, if I am tier-three, when I retire, even I work all the way to seventy, I will never really eligible for tier-three benefit, because you literally need to take a twenty-five, thirty-year, I forgot exactly, even benefit for that. That benefit monthly is a very small number. It's a better, I mean, it's a subsized than the, the social security, but some of the number run for me, they said, they maybe, you maybe have a thousand, twelve-hundred, or some number, a monthly. What I don't like to say is employee work for us for thirty-year, when they retired, all you have is social security, or the tier-three, you have a thousand dollars. That's what I really hope is, we put a little bit, they put something there, then they can last longer, whatever the amount, um, the, the 401K. I know we cannot change, I wish we have some kind of a pension, but that's my imagination, I know that, never we can get there, so.
And the co-ops aren't under CERS, right?
No.
They're on their own private, and you're still.
They are only their own, yes, it's a national co-op association, offer the pension. I believe majority co-op enroll up program, as I know the co-op around us, they do. The short-term, if you look at the salary they bring home, not much difference, but we all know people going to be retiring in their fifty or something, particularly when you do physical work, after thirty-year, it's really hard for your body to keep going. So you have to retire someday, and when you retired, nothing left, that's really make me heartburn, that's why I'm asking you, yes.
So, to raise it, say, to four percent, Katrina, what was the additional cost for tier-three? If we wanted to change our match to two percent, an additional two percent for all, all tier-three employees, regardless of what they, as long as they were putting in something, what would that additional cost be?
Well, the current cost is around seventy thousand, um, that's based on a annual salary of four-point-three for the eligible people, so if you were to just, gosh, I'm not used to this laptop. It's point oh-four, so four percent would be about a hundred and seventy-three thousand, so it'd be about a hundred thousand dollars more. If you did it for every, you know, everybody, because the seventy thousand, you know, there's like six, whatever I said, eight people not participating, if you matched on that, those people as well.
And we don't, we don't automatically enroll them in any kind of thing like, yeah, I know the state automatically rolls new employees into deferred comp, and then they would have to opt out of it. And we, we don't do that with 401A or anything, okay?
This would be though, if we changed it, would be if you come to, if you're either a current employer, when you come to work for us in tier-three, then we'd automatically be putting four percent in your.
I, I, I still think it has to be based on those people participating, I mean, you know, if, if, unless you want to enroll them in new, but, I mean, you know, the vast majority of the folks are gonna do it.
Right.
I, I would, I would be okay with moving it to four percent, but they would have, they would have to participate in the program in my view, I don't know what anybody else thinks.
Steve, I know you were interested in.
Yeah, I, I, I was thinking about, uh, till you get to five years, I think we should put, yeah, I think we should definitely put the four percent in for anybody, even if they're participating now for five, because you can always get their money back if, if they choose to leave.
Okay.
I think, the, the hundred thousand is the cost for everybody, for, it gets, it gets harder, you get, it gets, you know, it's more, so I'm kind of hesitant to go for the life of yourself, for your life of your career at four percent, because it could become, you know, twenty-year employee could become a really big price. So, if we could put a time limit on our participation per se, if they're, if they're not, well, I mean.
I mean, someday all two hundred employees would be in tier-three.
Yeah, well, and, no, but, but as, as an option to that, as you mentioned earlier, hopefully, the employer rate for CERS is gonna continue to go down, and that's gonna be, you know, and I think that's gonna go down, you know, the, the, what we've got now, the, 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 the drop we have now, based on what we had versus what, is way more than the increase we're gonna have in moving this up to four percent, so.
Well, I was planning on the, on the anticipated savings, because that would be another expense, I feel, you've got to look at it in a financial way.
I know, I, I look at it in financial, but I think over the, over the course of, of this, I, I think you're gonna see this, I think you're gonna see that rate.
Yeah, it's going, it's going down.
Will go down, and, and that number right now dwarfs this number, now, like I said, that number's gonna catch up as more and more people come in under tier-three. You know, I, I don't know how a, I don't know how time limiting that would look, I guess is the quality question I have.
Well, the whole 401A is discretionary on this, every budget cycle is what to put in, what to not to put in.
Okay.
Right now, the shift, I just did some quick math, our payroll is about fifteen million, so going from a twenty-three percent employer contribution to a nineteen percent employer contribution on CERS is worth, what, about six hundred thousand dollars? It's what that savings was worth, and like I said, in theory, the CERS rate ought to keep trending down, it's gonna be slow. But, I mean, it will keep going down, as they're, they're currently in the mid-fifty percent funded, so as they get higher funded, the employer rate will keep going down. And then I think the question, one question Katrina had is, if we put a five-year requirement in for the match, for the employees currently participating, define your question, Katrina, for the employees currently in there.
So currently, um, employees are a hundred percent vested on day one, and it was, recus- suggested, or, you know, a consideration is to increase that to a five-year vesting schedule. Well, if you do that, I've talked to Nationwide and Kentucky Deferred Comp, you can't have like, half your balance be on the old schedule and half your, but, you know, you can't like cut it, say July first, you can't say, okay, whatever my balance was on July first, it's gonna be, I'm gonna be a hundred percent vested in that, but any future contributions, I'm gonna be on this vesting schedule. You can't do that, so you either have to say, okay, everybody is now on a five-year vesting schedule, which sort of takes away a benefit from people that are already here. Or, you can say, anyone hired after we make this change would be on a five-year vesting schedule, so those are kind of the two options that Nationwide and Kentucky Deferred Comp said.
Well, I mean, if that's a definitive answer from then, then I, then I would say from here forward, but I'm in favor of a five-year. I mean, that's one thing to keep people here, especially if we're gonna do an automatic, whether they put in or not, so they can use their salary for their, you know, living expenses. They know they've got this, and then there's an incentive, you know, with future employees to stay around, you know, um, at least for five years. With that, my, my thought is to, it maybe not be four percent, but it increase, after five years, we kick in, you know, maybe three percent. And then after, you know, at year whatever, eleven, we kick in four percent, to keep an incentive to stay longer and longer, I don't know if that makes sense.
Makes sense.
Jason, your thoughts?
Just listening.
Okay, so generally, your, your draft proposal, not for vote, but for the big giant budget roll-up is what, Catherine? Or Steve, whichever one you got?
Well, let me take it back on what Catherine said, I'd like to know, I would like to know what it would cost, if you get the five, if we did the four, and then we started reducing it by maybe, until maybe they got to the tenth year, three, you know, four, three, two, one, whatever. But I guess the question on that for me would be, what, what would we, what would the employees right now think about that? You know, the ones already on the tier-three, and, and doing the deferred comp, but I like that idea, what you're saying, I just don't know.
I think what you said was the opposite of what I was saying.
Yeah, wasn't, okay, I'm sorry.
She wants to go one number now, then as you stay, increase the number.
Oh, you want to go to five, six, seven, eight, okay, I'm sorry.
Do two percent now, whether you kick in or not, up to five years, and then if you stay beyond five years, then it's like, we're gonna kick in three percent, and then at, at year, the next increment of years would be up at year eleven.
So like, it might be like three percent right now, up to year five, at year ten, you get four, five percent, then year fifteen, even a higher.
Yeah, I mean, we might cap it, but, yeah.
I'm hesitant of going up, because as, as that percent goes up, that salaries are going up.
Sure.
And the impact on cost goes up with that.
You could tie, just throw this out, to make it very complicated, which is always our goal, is, you could say, that in future years, if the CERS rate continues to go down, then we reinvest some of that employer savings in that, so you only put it in as we get savings on the CERS side.
I go back to what we said earlier, we can't obligate another.
Right, I'm just saying as a.
So, that decision will be.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess you can tackle it year, every year.
Based on budget.
But, when you're hiring employees, they kind of like to know, if they're trying to compare apples to apples with another organization, um.
We could just do the straight four percent, and then future boards can deal with what they want to do, I mean.
I mean, I, I don't know, I don't, I'm not currently, I'm solo practice, so I don't know, but I, you know, traditionally worked for nonprofits, and, um, it always required a kick-in, there was always a vestment period, you always had to kick in, and four percent was, um, I won't say crazy high, but it was high.
One thing I put in, you know, I shouldn't think about that way, one, I like the idea for five-year, particularly the new employee. Then that's somehow we hold them, training them, hopefully stay. The second part is, I do somehow like people put this matching somehow. The, the goal really is not to spend on today, is a keep lot for you, for the future. I know this is hard for me to say that, um, but we currently majority do matching, and we put a two to one, you, you have to put a four percent for match too. So, uh, I don't know how to work out on that, I know I don't want to make complicated, but I really like the idea of five-year, um, for the new employee, because this is a tool really, it's not only benefit, a whole benefit company tool.
You could put in to get the full four percent match, you could just say, you gotta put in at least, to get the full four percent match for new employees, you have to put in like, at least maybe twenty-five dollars of pay.
You could just match dollar for dollar up to a certain percentage, that makes it simple.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, but if a new employee doesn't have the money to put the full amount in, if you say you want them to have something in the game, you can say you need to put in something. I mean, obviously, the incentive is there to put more in, because the tax advantages, but if you're also trying to, you know, you know, pay for kids and everything else, they might say, yeah, I don't have it, but not denying the four percent, like Steve said, we're not losing anything, because if they leave us before five years, they're not getting any of the four percent. But at least you say to get it, you gotta put something in a pay period. And what we can do is, if we want to, say we want to budget the money, the four, the money for a four percent, then you could always bring us back to plan details later in terms of matching and everything, because all we're doing today is not really doing plan design, we're just saying, do we want you all to budget the money for four percent for employees for, going forward, right? We're just putting in a budget plug, we're not saying this is what the plan's gonna look like, that can come back to us in two or three weeks.
Yeah, because I, I would like to, to really be mindful about developing this plan, and make it work for us for, for multiple reasons. But if we kind of know the max is gonna be four percent, but we, maybe we, there's gonna be some tinkering in.
Sure, does that work, David?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, personnel-wise, is there anything else you need, Michelle, please say no.
No.
No, good answer, uh, so, David, you want to start with, and as soon as the food gets here, we'll break, uh.
Sure.
You want to start with?
Yes, sir, let's, uh, we're kind of moving admin up to the front today, we've, we've not publicly done them in a couple of years, and just give everybody their time to talk about what they're planning to do and their, and their initiatives, and on top of the, and budgeted numbers. If we could, there's a, get back to the slide, so, when you look at, uh, admin department expenses first, I'll just start with the, uh, the first one is general admin, so let me go ahead and, I'll start referring back, make sure I've got the correct year budget in front of me. Page forty-two is the beginning of the administrative department's budgets, so page forty-two of your current budget is the, we're just called general. And when you look at that, um, three expenses make up eighty-five percent of that budget. The first is corporate insurance or liability insurance falls into this group, the depreciation at approximately forty percent, and this is where we also have the contribution to the city, uh, you, some years ago, we agreed to a use of city assets fee.
And how much is that every year that we pay the city?
So this is gonna be on page forty-two, uh, for us, it's gonna be the next sheet, I'm looking for this admin. Every five years, it escalates, um, I can't remember the exact amount.
Hundred and nine, hundred and nineteen?
It went from a hundred and nineteen-nine this year, and we'll jump, I think it's every five years, it jumps up five percent, ten, ten percent, something like.
One thirty-two for this year.
So, this is on line ninety, uh, is that contribution to the city, uh, line forty-five is that corporate insurance, and, uh, that corporate insurance runs from February to February, we bring it to you each year in January. And then depreciation that you see of a million dollars is primarily depreciation on the, this admin building. Something I kind of jumped in before explaining, just for those watching, our administrative departments are those departments that are assisting in providing services to the electric, water, and telecom divisions, so we're assisting them in services that all three need. Uh, we take the admin department expenses and have a different allocation factor for, uh, for each department. So we're allocating to electric, water, and telecom, uh, based on allocation factors, and so all of these departments we're getting ready to discuss are eventually rolled up into the full, uh, cost of providing electric, water, and telecom services. I would be glad to go into anything on that general, but it's pretty straightforward, and I, I don't have anything else to add, really. Um, if you go on, uh, of course, there's a lot of detail for each of these, but, um, the one thing we do have in this admin department. the one thing we do have in this admin department, uh, if you look at page forty-three, we have the clubhouse renovations is included in this section. I don't know if you want to talk about it now, or, or wait till later.
Well, I guess the question is, on the clubhouse renovation, we've, we've got the RFP out for the general contractor? Or where, is that?
We did.
Okay, so we don't have that final bid in yet?
No.
Do we have a budget plug in? If we don't have that awarded by the time we adopt the budget, do we have a, oh, well, here she is.
Hello, um, the RFP is out right now, they're due on the seventeenth of this month. The amount we had for, um, for the budget is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but I've spoken to a couple of board members, and we might ought to bump it up to two hundred thousand. Um, the hundred and twenty-five thousand was before the engineer came and assessed the property, so.
I know there were some floor issues and a couple things, right?
There's some drainage issues and.
So what amount, David, do you have plugged?
So on page forty-three, uh, we have a hundred and twenty-five thousand currently in the budget.
Okay. Do we want to increase that amount, or the amount that we think? I mean, wherever the estimate comes in is what it is, if it comes in less, we're not obligated to spend it. But that way, I mean, if the, our next board meeting's what, the eighteenth? So you got bids on seventeen, you're not gonna have time, half had time to probably evaluate and meet with the contractor and everything. Is that?
I, I think we need to bump it up, I mean, it's, I know it's, it looks like a percentage adds a lot, but I take the value of that building for the community and what it would bring to the plant board, I think it's worth it.
And it's been down for a long time.
Yeah.
So, you know, I mean, we need to, you know, we, we've, it's, we, we've had other stuff going on with the reservoir construction and other things, we weren't able to do anything with it, but, you know, it's been a long, it's been a long time coming, I agree. So if that's okay to, okay?
I'm assuming these, I mean, it, it, there's no option. I mean, if we're going to use the building, these costs, there's no option. I mean, it's unfortunate, because, you know, at first we were looking at like sixty-five thousand, and it just keeps rolling, but unfortunately, that's how it goes. I just want people to know, it's minimal, it's just, it's either that or we don't use the building.
Yeah, we can't let people use it, right?
It's not ADA compliant as it is right now, so.
Well, it's, I mean, you know, we either do this, or we tear it down, one of the two, I mean, you know, so. And I think there are a lot of options, and one thing that I hear in the community a lot is, one of the reasons people liked it so much when it was there, and they wanted it back open, is the parking. It was easy to get to, get out of the car, go into something to get back out, I mean, they liked that, so.
Yeah, and it, it's, I, to me, it's family-friendly.
Yeah.
Um, there's event spaces downtown, but you can't just let your kids run around.
Right. And the other options, let Steve go up there and do the repairs.
I'm afraid I'll see that on those reptiles that might be around.
Okay. Lynn, thank you. David?
Okay, moving on to the next, uh, this is, we call it the just administration department, this is, the budget starts on page forty-five, uh, with the line item detail on pages forty-six, forty-seven. Like most budgets, this is primarily, um, seventy-six percent of this is payroll and benefits. When you throw in utilities, you're at eighty-eight percent of the total budget. So, um, the main thing, uh, you know, in these, in this section, you've got, um, our GM salary, you've got things like mine, uh, some other administrative staff that are providing services, not falling into one of these other departments that are spread out and allocated to the top three. Um, of course, decisions made on payroll and these benefits, you know, flow through. Uh, repairs and maintenance that you see, uh, line eighty-five, that's primarily a lot of repairs and maintenance to, to this facility, um, and other maintenance contracts that service other buildings. And then utilities are just general utilities across admin as well on there. So I'd be glad to go into any detail of any expenses you have, but primarily, once again, it's payroll and benefits.
Where's the League of Cities membership piece? Is that in here, David, or?
Yes, sir, if you look at page forty-six, uh, forty-six, this is the line item detail. So we're taking each expense item, and we are breaking it out into its components that we're rolling up onto to the previous page, it's on line one hundred. I say that, I take that back, I'm looking at the wrong, that is a travel, that is a, uh, potential League of Cities conference attendance.
Yeah.
Do you know where that would be? Yeah, we've, we've, when we, we split it out, yes, okay, yes, thank you, it's, uh, a lot of information to keep rolling here.
So the League of Cities, I understand that our current membership with the League is about half the price of what we are paying, KMU, is that Craig Gary?
KMU, we pay around either thirty-three or thirty-five thousand, this is fifteen, as I know. And, um, I do want you to know, League City done very good job, they organized this whole group, already had a more than two meeting. Uh, seemed to me everyone had paid affective, affectness of the League City done, compared what we KMU done before, um, I mean, I know KMU done good job, but, but this is really, um, under the umbrella, uh, KLC, I think it's a lot more benefits to us.
And then the question is, do we want, for the legislative coverage that we have, uh, with the, well, I can't think of the name.
Stephanie.
It's Stephanie and Ellen, but what, their name of their?
Commonwealth Advocate.
Commonwealth Advocate, they want to know if for a thousand dollars a month, from June through December, if we want them to continue covering legislative committees and doing their reports. So that's, do we want to add that in?
I penciled in your changes to the, their proposed agreement, I think Catherine might have that. If Mr. Eban wants to take a look at that, he, I can't.
So we don't have to act on that, but do we want to budget it, and then the, yeah, that's, is that put in?
Yeah, I, I, I think we need to stay close.
This would be for the period, this wouldn't be obligating for the twenty-twenty-five session, this would be June through December. That would be a separate decision come December about the twenty-twenty-five session.
I don't, I don't know.
And the reason this comes up now is they need to know whether we need to register and whether they need to register.
Right, right.
Also, there, there are quite a few, I went through the calendar, I think.
Can you turn our, turn your mic on, Anne?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I, I think there are some, say, you had sent an email about, uh, some committees that were meeting in this interim period. There's a, I, I went through.
About three or four committees that probably need to be covered, state government, state, local government, uh,
I went through.
The one that's, uh, gonna hold the hearing on the energy, on, on renewable energy and.
There's, there's about four, there's, I went through the calendar yesterday, there's about a meeting a month that takes place between now and, uh, now and December, so that might be useful for, for that.
I mean, I've popped up to a committee meeting once, and we had staff there. So how is that decision made? For staff to cover?
Historically, we just have not sent people over and covered legislative meetings. I mean, we could, but it's, we don't have anybody assigned to go, because we've in the past not had to go to cover general assembly committees, I mean.
It's not a routine thing, but I know it happens, because I've been up there and there's been staff.
If I'm mistaken, very seldom have we, has FDB staff covered legislative, general assembly committees ever?
Heard this there on KT.
Not really, uh, so far. Occasionally, we might have a one or two, once, maybe twice, I, I can ask Kathy no better. Twice, only twice, right?
The other committee is covered.
Oh, just one time.
It's covering the broadband.
Well, no, I, I mean, I've been up there when it's been, um, I guess EPA, what was it? I know you were there.
There's a specific request from somebody in management committee to attend, so that's, but that's not a typical.
Right, okay.
Well, I assumed it wasn't typical.
I'm fine with your thought, I mean, I, I know it sounds like a lot of money, but if, if no one's up there, then it, we are in the dark until we're not in the dark. But the point you're making about maybe a staff person from here going, I'd be fine with that too. As opposed to doing the, you know, lobby, the government relations person. It's just, my thought right now is that we, we're in a time where we've become an issue. And, you know, to the extent we need, we, we can stay abreast prior to what's going on, we should. But that can be a staff person from FDB that does that too. Doesn't have to be lobbyists.
Gary, you're laughing, and you never laugh.
That's why, sorry.
So, um, what kind of coverage, like, report from those meetings is put out?
Well, what we got is you, of course, last session, you saw the reports that we got.
Well, that, from our lobbyists, I just mean to the public.
Nothing, I mean, I mean, there's a summary, well, there's not a legislative record published anymore, is there?
Not an interim one, not anymore, no.
Each month, no, during interim, so basically, you wait till the next month, and you could read the minutes. I will say this, what, what LRC has done, LRC has shifted, and they shifted with COVID to a, to a, actually, it's, it's a much more, it's much more open model. Every single, every single meeting can be accessed on YouTube.
Right.
So you do not have to come.
Right.
To any meeting, every single one is done internally on YouTube. The committee should have all the meeting materials on their website, so any handouts or anything are, should be available to the public. So, you know, that's there, and it's not, and, you know, like you said, we used to produce an interim record, which we do not anymore, because it's kind of superfluous, because minutes from previous minutes, meetings are there, et cetera, et cetera. So that's, that's kind of the way the nature of all that has changed. One of the most important things is, is getting yourself, getting folks and people on that agenda recipients list that you're on, that, of, of, so you're notified of what's gonna be on future agendas and what to look out for. And then you either have to watch or go, or then the next meeting, when they meet the next month, you could read the minutes from the previous meeting. Right. And then there's legislative conferences that we wouldn't be attending.
No.
You know, national, uh, associate, you know, the National Association of State Legislators, Southern Legislative Conference, so forth, that your representatives normally go to, and there's workshops held there, there's things, it's just. But, but that's what, in that, in that vein, Kentucky League of Cities is, you know, they, they take part of that, so, yeah, so. So they kind of representing our interest there, so.
I don't know, I just, um, I fear having to spend more money on lobbyists next session.
And this isn't an obligation for next session, this is from June till December.
I'm, I'm really, I'm really with you, I'm not hard at all, I'm really soft on my position. So I can go with you with this, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Would you put it in, or?
I don't know. I mean, uh, we are saving about eighteen grand a year from our previous dues. Um, but I just, I don't know, it's just hard, it's just hard.
Well, with, then I, I'd say we, yeah, I think somebody can watch this, I mean, I watch them all the time on YouTube, when I want to see a committee meeting. Somebody can keep up on the relevant committees here, watch it on YouTube when the meeting comes, and give us some report, or you, some report on whatever transfer at that meeting, so. We, I, I really don't, you know, I don't like to spend money anyway, so this, yeah, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I think.
But there is a difference between watching it and being there, and knowing the other people, and talking to the other people, and know what's going on. There's one thing observing, and there's one thing being in the process. There's as much goes on in the halls as there goes on.
True.
Yeah.
Which, which is also, I mean, maybe I'm thinking of this wrong. It, if there is this, the being seen, the talking, the, that would be, again, our lobbyists, and if, it's, again, like, you lose that if you don't continue to hire them.
But then, and there is two different, I mean, having done it, there's two different levels of commitment, there's covered interim, and there's another whole world of actually being over there during a session, which is unbelievable amount of time consuming, because that's, you know, it's just.
Right.
Things happen fast, and you gotta be there, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
And I mean, I think we learned that i- if there's gonna be a bill that's directly impacting us, we're, we're gonna have to have someone outside advocating for us.
If we didn't do that now, then we would probably definitely to stand up by December.
Yeah.
Prior to the session.
And idea now is if we want to budget it, then to make that December, that decision by December, what's the terrain look like? What do we need to do going forward?
Right, so is this two separate questions, budgeting for next legislative session?
All that this is asking for right now is that do we want, because if we want to do this, we need Donald to put the money in, but then Hans and Gary need to work on that short-term agreement for, uh, seven months.
Okay, so that's something new. So are we saying that, okay, let's piece this out. So there's this thousand bucks a month.
For June through December.
Till December, that's not in the budget yet.
July, July.
Or Ju, well, the interim's already started.
Well, we're in June right now, so.
Yeah, first week, I mean, we, the, the reason is, it's coming up is. Yeah.
Okay, so that would go to December first.
December fifteenth.
So six and a half.
Okay, so that's not in our budget yet, so we're deciding whether we're gonna essentially put it in our budget and have them continue, or have them cover those meetings for us. And then, is it in our budget from December for, for next session?
No.
So that's a second question.
Right, that would have to be a decision made, I mean, we can talk about it now in budget, but I.
I mean, we have to put it in the budget, right?
We, we, we'd have to do a budget amendment at that time, right? Or at least adopt or approve a contract. Kathy, do you?
Actually. I think we should do it right now. That's all I'm saying, it's a thousand dollars a month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that is a steal, rather than barking for somebody to be up there all the time, have the connections they have, and keep us informed along, you can't beat that. It'd be, it would cost us more in time to have somebody go do that and keep up with that, and get your own report. When Stephanie does it, I mean, we got to report every day in session, she would keep us informed. Yeah, yeah. So, that's not too soon.
Yeah.
Technically, technically, six thousand.
Okay, that's my six thousand dollars.
I, I, the, it's the price of doing business, we know the climate right now, we know what's going on. These things start to build up ahead of steam, it'll evolve, but then crash, is when the cycle starts up, so we have to know what's coming up, and what's being whispered around, and what people are saying, so. And obviously, a professional is gonna be, we're gonna be riding around in their backpack, they're having all these other meetings, and if they start to hear something, we'll be right there to kind of give that vote.
Well, given I'm the one that balked, um.
No, but I mean, it's good, we, I have these, that's what we need to be doing, I mean.
Right, well, so, I mean, I, I can change my mind on it, um, and given what we just went through, and what we might, might be coming up, maybe this is the time, it might not be every year, we need to do this.
Yeah.
To be fair, um, they continue, even we are not engaged with them, we don't pay them at all. Their continued reports sent to us, uh, you know, just like, uh, I, I don't know, Miss Cuban, sorry, I don't know, um, it's like some meeting they had, committee, and some of the administration information include the broadband, the information continue being sent to us. I just want to mention that.
You're saying we're in just a kind of broad, you're living our interests down there.
And the reason it's coming up now, um, I think I mentioned to everybody before previously at some point, is we need to either re-register as an employer of a, and they need to register whether they're representing us or not. It's, it's an LRC function.
No, I know, yeah.
And there's a registration fee and all that, that they, you know, they need to know what, what their role is, so.
So, okay.
So just for purposes.
So I'm agreeable to being put in the budget and registering.
And then with the second part, which is next year.
Right.
Do we need to just put the same amount that we used in our spring this year?
That's good.
Is our place over?
I, I wouldn't have any idea what we'd be looking at for next year.
I just want to do a budget to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. David?
Sounds good, I've been focusing on the big, big, on the big expenses, but that, there are usually some of these, um, less impactful that do, do, might want to draw attention. Community, uh, continuing education on admin, that's, that's Gary, Hans, myself, we all have professional licenses, and this chief operation officer, which we don't have hired.
Right.
So, uh, that's mostly that, I think marketing communications also has their training in there. I think we can, like, talk about any item you want to, and then on the other, uh, which Kathy, I don't, you might want to hang around, the public information. Anything we do that impacts the overall organization that's not allocable or pointing to one is budgeted in there for Kathy's, uh, public communication efforts. I just wanted to point those out, and we can cover any of them individually. You would like to.
John, John, what's your?
I have a, I may have be a related question, I don't know, but earlier in your presentation, you talked, you talked about the thing that, that you wanted to do, specifically the prepaid
Yes, sir.
Uh, see, I guess prepaid pay rates. What that money says, let's say someone does it, that money says draws interest, was that the interest income you was referring to as part of?
No, sir. The interest income that is, uh, booked in administration is when we take e- uh, cash reserves and invest them in certificates of deposit, that, um, we park them there trying to earn interest. That is just the interest income from that. The, uh, the prepaid billing is instead of doing what we do today where you get a bill thirty days past or forty days past usage, this would be putting in an amount upfront. Um, and we have now with AMI the ability to get real-time readings, you know, within reason, within hours, of electric and water. So, let's say, uh, one of the benefits of this would be, and we'll come to board with when this program is being launched, with a, a menu of recommendations to, to roll this out. But one of this prepayment thing is lowering, uh, the amount of, uh, or eliminating initial service deposits. When you come in as a new customer, we do calculate a deposit. If we have your money upfront and you're prepaying as we go, we can eliminate those. That's a benefit to the customer on day one. Another is minimizing payments to start and reconnect service. Because with AMI, uh, we are able to, when your balance were to hit zero, for example, you would be aware, we would have informed you. You'd sign a customer prepayment agreement, and you would know that when, and we're communicating daily. This is part of that. We talked about increased communication. You'd be getting, say, a text alert every day of you've used three dollars today. Um, when you get down to zero on your prepaid balance, you would be disconnected. But with, uh, safer electric, we can reconnect at no, manually, uh, I should say automatically with a push-up button. So, this is, instead of today, after the fact, you put up a, a balance that is then burned down as you use it, with the exception of cable telephone.
I, I was in Paducah. We implement that, um, for the prepaid program. Things surprise me is two-part. One is definitely my goal to improve the relationship between us and some of the customer paid behind it. Uh, that's a fundamental change to picture. The second part, I'm surprised, is a young profession also volunteer joined a prepaid, because they want to in control. They want to know, like, we almost do everyday billing anymore. Right now, you do monthly bill, right? Once you do prepaid, you text me, email me. You basically doing everyday billing. The fundamental change, I'm sorry, go back to, give me a twenty seconds, i- is the part, not every customer pay their, you know, expense according monthly. What I find out in Paducah, average prepaid customer, they pay us four times a month. So, it is, instantly, we force them to pay them as a one month. They have a difficulty to manage their finance. It's really improved the relationship, and also, the improvement is every month, we have a twice, right? Two-cycle billing, but today, our employee just, you know, you talk about it, I don't know how many call we got it. People being disconnected, reconnect fee, late fee charge, and, uh, then on the top, we ask a deposit. So, the, the people cannot afford our current bill. Suddenly, it's not only current bill, the bill behind that, just they already use it, plus deposit. So, it's not just say, you have a two hundred dollar you, behind the bill. You suddenly, you want to reconnect, maybe there's a thousand dollar, you have to pay us. The people cannot afford the two hundred. How can we expect them to come to a thousand? That's the really things we want to change, the prepaid. Hopefully, we will definitely have you support. Uh, my goal really, hope is to improve the, sorry to, yes.
First of all, I'm for all prepaid for. I hope we can implement that because it helps, you know, young people. It helps parents who have teenagers that may want to accept a little credit on a prepaid something, you know, that helps that part too. But my question really wasn't about that. My question was about the money that is collected upfront, sort of like you do on the deposit monies. You know, people may have a deposit.
Yes.
That money, I assume, sits somewhere?
Correct.
And that's interest earned on that money, I would assume.
So, yes.
Where's that money go?
Yes, sir. Where we function today, when you come in and make a deposit, we keep that money, uh, in escrow. It, it's a liability on our books. And every January, uh, PSC sends us a interest rate that we must pay on those deposits. That is a, accumulates annually on top of the deposit. When you end service with us, we refund that money back to you.
So, that, so that would, that, now, what hap- what would happen with the prepaid, since that money?
Prepaid, one of the recommendations would be to eliminate deposits. So, we no longer have to hold those and pay, and pay
What happens to the prepaid money that's sitting there in advance of?
Uh, okay, there are options, and we've just discussed internally, you know, one of the things comes, you could pay it out instead of adding it to the liability of the plant board, and you could, say, you, you put that as a credit on their bill every December, whatever pick the month, or their highest usage month of March. We could do that. Today, we're not refunding it ahead of the customer leaving service.
Okay.
Yeah. We, one of the things, we did a SWOT analysis years ago, one of the things came up from customer services, we, what can we do to reward good customers? And that was an idea of you could take some of their deposit, but then you get into, that sounds great until you have an account go south.
Yeah.
So, that, there's pros and cons to that.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Um, if everyone's good with admin, we can move on to board directors.
Mm-hmm.
Be on page forty-eight of your budget, and, uh, this is the cost, uh, for the board. Uh, discussion, usually, one of the things that comes up, we've provided things in the past, um, one of them that's continuing education. We have five thousand budgeted in there, um, for anything the board might want to, uh, any individual board member want to, uh, receive some type of education regarding, regarding one of our services, um, governance, anything of that nature. We'd be happy, anything you want to talk about on, on the board director budget.
I just want to know, who got that six dollars on the twenty-two, twenty-three payroll?
No.
Oh, the six, yes. That's a good question. That's, that, yeah, we might, it's, it's, it's a statute thing there. But, uh,
On the cell phone?
Ask Blue and come here, check that out, Wendy.
So,
Does somebody have a cell phone?
Uh, on the iPads that you have in front of you.
Our iPads.
Yeah, the iPads.
I asked that when you're
Every, I would ask that every year, right?
Because every iPad has a phone number, so it's, yeah.
Okay.
April, if you want to make your way up, we can move on if there's no questions to page fifty. This is customer service. These run through, internally, we have a, um, ten-digit identifier. It's the department, the, the division department, and then the, the general ledger accounts. So, this is Department Fifty-three, customer service. You can see on page fifty is where it begins. Um, as we've talked before, with all of these admin departments, sixty-seven percent of this budget is, uh, payroll and benefits, with one of the larger outside of that line items being our postage and printing, and what that is, you're like, that is what it costs to send out paper bills, uh, printing and postage. One thing we've tried to do over the years, really incentivize people to switch to e-billing, um, reduce paper, reduce cost to us in both postage and printing. And, uh, also today with, when you sign up for Next Band, you get reduced rate with having, uh, e-billing and auto pay, auto bill pay. So, that's the other big one there. That interest, uh, Mr. Mason, on line sixty of that page fifty, that is where that interest expense, uh, for deposits comes in. Uh, and that, uh, we put it in the supplemental information, and I'm just taking right all over everything on a
It's okay. Go ahead.
We had a massive increase from fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-four. You know, we went from paying like point-two percent interest on deposits to, I have it in our notes here, to what we pay today of four, five-point-three-eight percent. So, we've just had an escalation in interest expense due to that PSC calculated rate. April, I know one of the things we want to talk about was some of the things we're doing, so I'll, I'll let you plow into that.
As David said, he's taken on.
Yeah.
He's already talked about most of these things, but I'll just, I'll talk about them a little bit more, too. Does anyone have a question? Someone was saying something?
No.
Okay. All right. So, um, we had a lot of initiatives in, in fiscal year twenty-twenty-four that's kind of moving us into the projects and the initiatives that we have for twenty-twenty-five. Um, we implemented a new phone system in twenty-twenty-four, and in, um, conjunction with that phone system, we also, um, implemented a new payment system. Those kind of went hand in hand. Um, one of the issues that we had with, uh, new phone system was that our previous, um, payment processor, we were having to take card numbers over the phone, and due to PCI compliance, we weren't able to, um, record calls. And so, having the ability now to record calls, to listen to those calls, use that for coaching and training, um, has really been helpful. And we're going to continue to leverage that, um, like David said, you know, leverage that technology to continue to build on, um, the phone system. Of course, with Paymentis, that was our new payment, um, system. That was also a step into moving forward with the kiosks. Um, the kiosks are here. We have tested them. Um, we're waiting on a screen for the, um, the one indoor, and then we'll start, um, utilizing that. Have the CSR's using it, um, customers using it before we go live with the, the ones in the drive-thru. Um, but again, that Paymentis was crucial in being able to offer those kiosks. Um, with the kiosks and the ability to, uh, self-pay at any time, leads us into the prepaid, which we've talked a lot about today. I'm pretty excited about that. Of course, like David said, um, you know, we have customers who come in now who have a hard time paying their deposits. Um, this will allow them to put money down, and they can utilize that money as they move forward with prepaid. Um, let's see. Of course, AMI, AMI has really, we will continue to work with electric and water, about processes, moving through those, um.
Can you give an example? We just haven't talked about it. Uh, just brief, uh, it doesn't have to be a specific customer, but, um, how we've been able to use that on water leak detection? I just think it's a benefit we've not really talked about out loud, of being able to notify and not preempt, uh, proactive and not reactive.
Oh, yeah. So, we are currently, um, the water department is checking any alarms that they have on, um, the AMI water meters. Um, so, an example that I have is, I, I called a customer. You have continuous usage over the last twenty-four hours. Um, they are like, well, I'm not aware of a leak. Typically, a residential customer doesn't have continuous usage. Um, so, talked to the customer through it, like, you know, typically, it was a small amount. That's usually a, a toilet leaking. Um, and the customer was like, oh, yep, you know, I think my son's bathroom, he's got a toilet leak. Um, so, my recommendation, she said, I can't fix it tonight. I said, well, turn the water off. I'll call you in the morning, and I'll look to see if your usage changes, because we do have access, um, to the hourly readings. And I called her the next morning and said, whatever you did worked. And of course, she was over the moon, because at that point, we didn't go thirty to forty-five days. Because we typically do try to contact customers. Um, our water department does a good job of checking for excessive water, um, and notifying us. And so, this allowed this customer to correct that issue prior to getting the bill, or for us to contact them after we've got a thirty-day reading. So, being able to use AMI in that way is, is going to be a game changer, not only for us, because then, you know, we do have a policy where certain water leaks, we can make adjustments. Um, we won't need to make as many adjustments. We can catch these things from the very beginning.
How are you doing on your staffing?
Um, right now, we have two CSR positions. And then, of course, like David discussed before, um, I am the only one in management, and so, um, we could use some help. Um, definitely, but, um, we're managing.
On that topic, though, I mean, it's leveraging the technology, if it, if we got to a point where people have the app on their phone, because that seems very labor-intensive. Uh, I mean, important, you know, um, as far as you had to look, you had to call, you had to follow up. But if, if you could be sent a text, like, you have a continuous usage,
Yes.
that would be, like, something automated.
Right. That's our end goal.
That's where we're going.
Right now, we're, you know, we're trying to get AMI fully implemented and, and start to utilize these things and start to set up those processes. Um, but yes, that's definitely, that's definitely what we want to do, because, yeah, we're making a lot of phone calls or a lot of emails.
How, how much AMI now, what's the percent towards the goal?
Eighty?
Around eighty percent.
Okay.
Uh, with the budget, this budget year, uh, twenty-five should be our last year that we actually invest in.
Well, that, the reason I said it, because the more you have, the harder it's going to be for you to, and people are going to start expecting you to call and to
Right.
you know, follow up and stuff. So, yeah, we need to get the mechanism.
Right. And this is a, there's a, that, you know, getting an automatic, uh, notification is absolutely where we want to be. With that comes setting individual profiles for over sixteen thousand customers, and setting a profile that makes sense and doesn't give false alarms. And then that's getting customer service, working with water department, working with communications, and then add to you with the app to make sure all of that is flowing. Um, and that's where these large, we talk about leveraging technology, but to get to where it's actually doing what we need it to do, it's a lot of humans in the background.
He could have said both. I'm saying, sorry to hold a go detail. You can said, per hourly, this figure, you flow two months in a one hour. Whatever the amount that you want to set, or you want to set a twenty-four hour, how much continue? Or you can choose, like, customer, you set yourself, then I can text you, because each one use a different pattern.
But they amount, it goes to history, I guess, of
Hold a history on that, yes.
Computerized.
The reason we talk a lot, you know that when the customer usually got a bill, when they are six hundred dollar or, or thousand dollar, the water already being used, and how do we deal that? We've been work with a customer, try to cut a cost half, all that. Is everyone suffering that process? So, this can hopefully prevent that some. I think the idea, you talk about automatic, that's a great idea, but they also work on the app right now, you know? Uh, hopefully, I don't know exactly time, this year, we can implement that too. Because, like you mentioned, that there are a lot of younger customer generation, or any, like, use that, because it's real-time information.
This may be a, uh, another form for us old people, you know, who are going to use text phones. You know, sometimes, the doctor's office calls you, leaves a message, say, you're on appointment. Would that be part of, could that be part of the notification? Now, all I'm thinking about is trying to prevent that one person, say, you called them, you called them, I, I didn't find that, you know, the ball out, if you, if you will, of you all.
Yeah, we definitely have that ability with the phone system that we have. I mean, there's currently, uh, before the, we got this phone system, there was, um, a software in place to do that. But yes, we, we definitely intend to utilize that as well, because not, like, not every customer texts or emails, text messages, those kind of things, so. We're trying to meet the customers where they are. Everything we do is trying to meet the customers where they are, the kiosks, um, the prepaid. Like David mentioned, the prepaid is going to be a game changer for a lot of our customers. Um, you know, I, we were just talking about non-pay. Today is non-pay, and before noon, we had, already had five hundred customer contacts just between the phone and, and in the office.
Just don't do like my doctor, text, email, phone call.
We want to make sure, we want to make sure you get all the communication.
I don't want that, man. I get sick of who have them.
You don't show up, buddy, you're not billable.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Um, David brought up, when he was, you know, tromping all over your entire presentation.
I know, right?
Um, the idea of the, the, uh, how many people have gone pay, where are, where do we stand? How many paper bills do we still send out based on the number of customers we still, we have?
So, we have about, um, I want to say each cycle, there's like twenty-five hundred second notices that go out, and like nineteen thousand bills on each cycle, and we have two cycles.
Nineteen, how many, nineteen?
Like, about nineteen thousand on each cycle, yeah.
Paper bills.
Paper bills.
Paper bill.
That's what we get billed for from, from our billing company. And so, like he said, like, the postage, I mean, we're, it's like forty-three thousand dollars a quarter is what we pay.
How many folks do paperless? Do you have any idea?
David?
You know, I, I have got that number, and it is, it's substantial. I mean, we've gone, I would say it's around fifteen thousand. I mean, it's, it's, it's up there.
But it's still less than fifty percent, uh, easily less than, than, you know.
I, I could
We said that nineteen a cycle.
I've got it sitting on a hard drive. I could send you, uh, send that to you tonight, but we've made great strides. We, we still give them up incentive to sign up one time, incentive to sign up. And like I mentioned, another incentive.
I, I, well, I, you know, what we're finding out now is I've got, and, and a coworker of mine mentioned this to me, we, I have a, I happen to have a Wallace credit card that I use for, for various things. They have gone to paperless to where they now charge you, um, those, I'm not saying this, some of which they ever do, but they have gone to the point where if you get a paper statement, they're going to charge you a dollar ninety-nine cents.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, it's the way of the world. world, I think. And, you know, I think we need to do everything we can and encourage folks to do that.
It's just like business now starting to charge a fee for using a credit card.
Yeah. 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 So, all right.
Is there anything else, April, on those initiatives you want to cover?
The other thing, of course, David talked about was promoting and upgrading customers to next band internet and next band stream video. So that's a five-year project that we have going on. And another thing that I just wanted to put out there, and I think it was around March of 2023, marketing had an initiative to really change the perception of how customers look at us. And so I might be stealing someone else's thunder, but we, one of the biggest things was, of course, we've got our surveys. Every customer who comes in the office, they get a link to a survey. New customers that are getting a new service, they get linked to a survey. We also send surveys out during, for like anniversary dates, just so that customers can let us know how we're doing. And then, of course, if there are any issues, myself or one of my staff will reach out to them to try to put a trouble call in, or do any of those things that we need to do to try to improve that perception. But the other thing was, in March of 2023, our Google rating was at 1.6. And so we've worked really hard at talking to our customers, asking those customers who are satisfied to give us a Google rating. And we've been able to improve that in 15 months from 1.6 to 2.9. And looking at other utilities surrounding us, most of them are two below. And there's one that's at a 2.5. So I think that says a lot, not just about, you know, customer service, but the customer service that the electric department, you know, that they provide, that the water department provides, and the work that we do here every day. Like, I couldn't be here and give you all these great numbers without the staff in this room and their staff. So just a kind of a kudos to everyone here that, you know, our customers see us. We've made a lot of improvements, so. As far as the budget, there was, typically, we don't have a lot of anything in the capital budget. But I did want to note that we have been in this building for seven years, and so I am going to purchase chairs with your all's blessing. And so that's in the capital budget, because our chairs are a little worn out. But beyond that, our budget is pretty lean. Like David said, most of our costs are the bill processing and payment processing. And beyond that, the addition of the director in the, in the budget as well for payroll.
Any questions for April?
I think the food's here.
No, thank you. Thank you.
You all want to take, do we need a formal motion? Can we just take a recess for about 30 minutes?
Thirty minutes, yeah.
We'll take a 30-minute recess, and then come back?
Sounds good.
Okay. We're back from a short recess. Mr. Denton, you want to pick up with, I guess, finance?
Yes, sir. Finance department on page 53, and Katrina is here to present.
So this will be the record shortest presentation, because even though every transaction that we're talking about today flows through my department, we all, we don't have any, like, big projects going on.
You don't want new chairs like April? You don't need any new chairs like April Rhodes?
Well, I mean, maybe, but.
Get her to get you one.
Yeah, exactly. Basically, our budget is virtually unchanged. We did increase postage a little bit, because it's been increasing the postage, I think, July 1. And then the other only thing we have is really the audit fees. So that's showing a little bit of an increase. No personnel changes. And we are going to be working on software upgrade for our accounting software over the next year to 18 months. But, for example, for finance department.
Okay. Any questions for Katrina? Good presentation.
We've got Leanne. We would like, Leanne is over the fleet services and support services. So she's just here, she can hit both of those on, starting on page 55.
Actually, I want to start on page 18 with our capital.
Okay.
I want to, we only have a few line items, and I'm just going to go over each one of those. Line 350 on page 18 is security improvements for $29,000. That goes towards additional cameras at our facilities and upgrading our current security systems. Line 355 miscellaneous equipment, we don't have anything specific that we're requesting right now, but something could go down, could break, like material handling equipment, or the garage might need a new lift, or a tire change, or something like that. And then service center storage and lot improvements, we've kind of talked about doing additional racks for the wire and cable reels, and also some blacktops for the back lot. And then our biggest item is generator replacement for service center and telecom. The one that we have now is fairly old and has had some performance issues. Any questions on the capital?
Yeah, is this, Leanne or David, is this where we want to talk about the possibility of doing a renovation there at Myrtle at Hickory on the front of that building? Or where's that at? Or where do you want to talk about that at?
That's fine. I think Travis McCullar was going to.
Is he going to take care of it?
Was kind of leading that effort, but we can do it now if you want.
Whichever works out to me best, I mean.
I tell you what, we can have her finish fleet services, and then we could talk about it.
Okay, fine.
Okay. Fleet service expenses is on page 56, and there's actually no changes this year. So, and then the support services expense budget is page 67, and that also has no changes this year. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions for Leanne?
Thank you.
All right, thank you all.
And then there'd been discussion about changes to the building at the service center that Travis was going to cover.
Okay.
And I'll just, before Travis starts, how all this sort of occurred is Steve and I made an unauthorized visit one day with Gary's permission. We announced to him as we were going down Myrtle that we were on our way. Went down there and went up to where Leanne and them are there in the service center, some other things, met Travis there, walked around, looked at some things, talked to Travis, and bringing it to you all to consider. Travis?
Yep, I think that's basically just.
That's how it happened?
That's how it happened. That's how we got to here today. So one thing to point out from the top, this amount is not in the budget version you have. So we'll need to figure out, you know, if we're on track with appropriate amount and where that needs to be. We had kind of thought that it would make sense to just put in an electric budget. You know, talking to the other divisions, felt like we had the most need for them improvements, so that makes sense there. So what we've discussed is, at the service center on Hickory Drive, about a 1,500 square foot office expansion. We haven't really made any improvements to the space there in several years. You know, there was kind of some discussion, how long would we be there? Looks like we'll probably be on Hickory for a little while longer. So now's a good time to, to address some needs for space. So a 1,500 square foot extension, fixing some parking issues, adding an EV station. We've added one EV charging station to the cable lot. With this improvement, I thought we would go ahead and get one at the service center too, address some lighting and security camera issues as well. The number I came up with was $194,700. And again, it's, that's not in your version of the budget yet, but we'll, we'll make sure.
And how this, just to give everybody the background, when this building, and correct me if I'm wrong, Hans, you'll remember it, before you were here, Gary, there was discussion, as I remember, when this building was constructed, that someday the plan would be, is that the Myrtle Hickory operations will be moved here. That's one of the reasons that facilities were built here, the way they were, size and everything, was someday that would be added. I think there's, I don't think we've got a firm price tag, but I think it could be, what, Gary, 30 million or more?
Yeah, I heard.
By the time we rebuild Myrtle, have to clean up that site, restore it, build it here, given the world we're in, it doesn't look like we will probably be talking about a $30 million project anytime in the foreseeable future. And when Steve and I went down there one day, and let me say for the record, Leanne and that did not complain, it did not come from her at all. But we went upstairs, if you've ever been there, they're upstairs at the service facility, there's one entrance up there. They're perfectly happy, they did not complain at all. But it's not a good setup for them in terms of access and everything. So to get them out of there, make a couple other corrections, what we'll do is basically come across the front at the existing service facility, which is a metal building, and enclose that part, and provide some offices, some other spaces. Like Travis said, the EV charging, maybe take out that island and put some more parking there, and do a few things to upgrade it. But we do need to do something. And like I said, Leanne and that did not complain. She did not bring it up. In fact, she assured Steve and I she was fine. But it's, if you get a chance to go down there, it's, it's a maze for them to get in and out of there. It's not the best situation. So it's, you hate to spend it, but I think we're going to be there for some time. And that's where most of our operation, well, it is where everything is, really. I mean, electric and water there, telecom's across the street. I don't know, I mean, that's kind of how it all came about. Steve?
No, I totally agree with you. And I tell you what, it reminded me, it reminded me of a treehouse. Really a nice place to be, it was comfortable, it was nice, but you had to climb to it. But seriously, the thing for me, it looked like a firehouse. For employee safety, I think that really, that expansion needs to be done. And I'm sure that space up there can be utilized for what is storage that's up there. But it's just not, it would not be a place I'd want to be if there was a fire and you really had to get out of there fast. It would be hard to do that. So I think we need to do that.
And if you haven't had a chance, I think after Steve and I went, I sent out the email. If you ever have a chance to go down there and look at it, I mean, I mean, they've, they've done, the staff have done an incredible job making use of every square inch in that building. I mean, you got what, electric foreman up on another?
They're also on.
I mean.
Yeah, of course, they're, they're not in the office as much, so it's a little less of a need to be addressed immediately. But yeah, they're upstairs too, above a.
And there's a need for what, a little bit of a bathroom facility, I think?
Another bathroom would be a very popular addition, yes. Yeah. Yeah. So that's the plan then, 194,700. We would probably put that in electric budget, I think, that kind of addresses our needs, maybe more so than any others. And electric normally budgets, service center improvements. Most years it's 20,000. So this one year, we would up it to, you know, take care of this project and then.
And as we do expand on EV vehicles, I mean, we do need some more charging down there.
Right, exactly. Yeah. Yeah, we should be getting our first one here before too long. The, the charging station at the cable building should be up and running. So we're, we think we're ready for it. But again, like, you know, planning to kind of continue that transition down the road, we'll just get out ahead of it.
And to ask you real quick, it's off topic, but while you're there, I saw in the paper where the city, I guess, have they taken formal action to start having the charging stations downtown where we put the credit card machine on them, or?
They have. I was going to do it as an informational item on the 18th, if you want to do it then. But yes, they took action. So we'll need to talk about next steps. I don't know that the board needs to take any action, because you already approved a tariff. So, but yeah.
Any questions on? Thanks, Travis.
Okay, next is human resources. Michelle getting to join us again.
She got everything she wanted this morning. What's she coming back for?
Okay, there we go. There's not many changes or really any changes to the HR budget. Once when you guys did give us permission to move forward with corn fairy, so those totals would change as far as the compensation listed, let me see, on line 125, on page 58, line 125. Right now, I have just carried over from last year, but that won't be the total cost.
Right.
But do you have any questions?
Any questions for, are you fully staffed?
Yes.
Okay.
However, we do have a retiree or a retirement coming. She hasn't officially turned her retirement notice, but one of my staff members has been here for 25 years, and she's looking to retire August 1. So.
Wow.
Be back to the drawing board.
Yeah.
I believe Michelle did provide a supplemental, full fringe benefit layout for everyone in your email. So we've all got that in your hand and.
And just for, while we're on this, on all this, Michelle, Katrina, David, what everybody's done, I, I think all the board, I mean, you all have done a great job, not only getting us the main budget, but all the additional supplemental and all the information. It's been really good. So.
Thank you. I'm glad you like it.
Sean, I do have, I do have one question. This is kind of, this is not specific to Michelle's area, but I just noticed something when looking through this differently. The overhead allocation for, David, for each of these, like human resources, the overhead allocation is different than the overhead allocation for like fleet services. And for like, you know, later on, for like IT, each of these is different. What allocation models do you use? I mean, here, is it just the number of employees in each division? You know, and then for IT, it's, what do they use? Is it, is, do you have a model for each of these administrators that's separate and apart?
Yes, sir. You hit right on it. Just trying to find the allocation. What is driving cost with fleet? You know, you've got, we know what vehicles are assigned to each division. So it's for each department, what's driving cost, and doing our best to allocate appropriately.
See, that's not, that's not a standard administrator, among all the administrative departments, based on their usage of each of them.
Yes, sir. Yes.
That makes sense. I just wanted, I thought that was a little, I just wanted to make sure.
And I believe if there's no other HR discussion, then we're ready for, for our IT department. Ryan, Ryan Henry, our IT director.
So I think David provided supplemental that kind of talks a little bit about IT and some of the things. A lot of the topics have been kind of brought up, some of our initiatives that come up for 25. I've briefed you guys in the past a little bit about our cybersecurity. So that's one of our primary initiatives that we kind of have moving into every year. And of course, 25 is going to be no different, maybe even more so. Business continuity, we've, we've reached out, we've received a grant from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security to kind of do a business continuity plan, disaster recovery plan. So that'll be part of 25 as well. Customer portal and the mobile app that we've kind of talked about, the way all these things kind of work, getting this data out there in the customers' hands, and kind of presenting a platform that they can interact with us on, that's what we're going to continue to do. Talked about the phone system last year, this is just kind of those cascading events that we were kind of setting up and working with operations and the rest of admin to kind of implement. And every year, we're going to be bringing more and more things to kind of achieve those goals. Prepayment, we've kind of talked to Ed a lot, that's going to be a big thing for us, kind of helping establish that program, making sure the billing's happening on the backend the way it should. I think it was described kind of as a daily billing mechanism that we're going to do as opposed to the twice-a-month. So those, those things have to be put in place, whether it's for one customer or the entire base. We've got to get all of our stuff in a row, ducks in a row, and kind of get everything figured out. So that's part of our process. And then the time of use billing, that's kind of on the table as well, is a topic that we're, we're kind of working through. So I'd be glad to kind of go through the budget as well. For the capital side, most of those expenses, the dollar, the bottom line didn't change. Some reallocations happened this year, just to kind of shift toward rising costs for hardware and what, you know, so we had to kind of reallocate some funds that way. The bottom line didn't change year over year. Most of these things are on a refresh cycle, so they're predictable. And that's, that's how we kind of maintain that consistency. On the expense side, again, nothing really stands out. This is, these are kind of those fixed costs. We do see some rising costs just for the service delivery and some of the software side. You're starting to see a lot of the inflationary numbers kind of get baked in to those. So as we come up to renewals year over year, we start to see that little bit of a decline. But nothing substantial. No line items really stand out that, you know, I'd be glad to talk about any of them you'd like to. But other than that, staffing wise, we do have a vacancy in the programmer, the software engineer side. It's one of those that we kind of are comprised of a group of folks that have been here for a long time. But then we do have a small contingency of new people that have come in, either from state, county, or the city. And so we are starting to attract some of those people. One of the topics that kind of comes up, you may already know that all the IT staff is already kind of overtime exempt. And so we get into scenarios to where they're, they're doing these maintenance windows after hours, they're handling events. Really, when the knock came back into play, we became a 24-hour support mechanism for them as well. So we've got a, we're kind of working with HR to try to find a solution to how those, those work. Seems like state, city, and local governments kind of go with the comp time to kind of let people bank hours and whatnot. So that's, that's the likely target that we're shooting for. We just got to find out, you know, does that, does that work for us? Is that something that we can do? And we're kind of working with HR and everything to kind of get that, get that working through the system. It wasn't on the agenda today, there's plenty on there. But that's something that you may see if it all works out, that we'd like to kind of present.
I'm not sure what the current number is. I think the current number is what exempt employees, non-merit, can accumulate, I think, what, $200?
I think it's.
They get paid for 240. Well, they, upon separation, but they, they can accumulate 240, and then what, they can, when they hit 240, they can cash in and get a block 50?
Block 50, yes. Yeah. And I, and I think, I don't think we'd get into, like, I think if we did this, it'd probably be something simple, it might be paid upon termination type thing. But I don't think we'd do the block 50s. I think we kind of set up.
You've got to build something in.
I think we'd just cap it, and then you'd stop exceeding, we'd be in a.
The only thing I'd caution, here's what happened, having some experience in this area.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
Is when you get people in that area, they start accumulating. And then you can't allow them to. And then, you can't allow them to take the time off.
I got you.
So then they get to the point that they hit it, and then, whatever under fair labor, once you hit that number, you've got to do something.
Okay.
You've either got to let them take it off, or you gotta pay them for something.
Okay.
Cause the other thing that's happening is, at the same time, they're accumulating vacation time.
Right, that's correct.
So they're gonna say, oh, I wanna take that off.
Right, right.
And I wanna take off my comp time.
Right.
And you say, but I can't let you off, cause we real busy.
Right.
So then.
Right.
You gotta do something when you hit that number, and that's why the state end up paying, having to pay the block fifties.
Okay.
And all that does is for those people, and it happened a lot in IT.
Right, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of circumstances that lead to additional forty, you know, excess of forty.
All the block fifty did was give them some time, buy them some time to let those people take off some time.
Yeah, and just a lot of the preliminary discussions are about, how do we, how do we get this off the ground, right? I mean, it's, it's just new, it's not new to the world, it's just new to us.
Yeah.
And so that's where it kinda became a narrow focus, but if those are the concerns that we have, as we have those discussions, I mean, you know, it makes sense, what you're saying.
Yeah, and you have to pay it on separation, cause it, under wage and R, it is, it's not like a benefit like sick or vacation, it's time, I mean, it's time that has been worked.
Right.
So it has to be paid.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I'd be glad to answer any other questions you might have in the IT department.
Did you all, last time, maybe it was last budget or somewhere along the line, I think Nichelle had been up here, we had talked about the possibility of y'all using state price contract to get some, did we ever have to do that?
No, we never, we never got into that. We did talk to some of those, those folks that, we'll call them head hunters, and you know, however you wanna kinda look at it, but they were more that, that had that, that contract labor. But when we, uh, went to that pool to kinda talk to them, um, the candidates, you know, it really wasn't somebody that wanted to be here. We, we were trying to get people into these positions that are going to kinda be the ten-year, fifteen-year, twenty-year employee. And what we were finding at that point, were a lot of people that were, you know, just here for the moment and kinda looking for another opportunity. And we never really went down that path beyond, you know, having some conversations, so, uh, no, we never, we never had to use that, but.
Last question, and it's a thing that obviously I think haunts everybody, and no one can say they're hack-proof.
Oh, yeah, please don't.
Take last week, Live Nation, take a master, what, eight hundred million accounts?
Yeah, I mean, in, anybody, right?
And you know they've got sophisticated software.
Right, of course, and so a lot of things, you know, without getting into too much of the weeds in a, in a public forum. I mean, basically, our, our focus is to work with our partners that we kinda have, Kentucky Off- Office of Homeland Security and, and other local groups that are immediate resources, the feds and, and whatnot, and kinda work through those channels to make sure that we're, uh, you know, informed as to what's going on out there, and we often have them kind of silently work with us on implementing the controls that we have. So, we have them come in and there's a, they've been in this room actually before, and so we have those dialogues right in here and we walk through the, what we have in place and get kind of the head nods of like, yeah, this makes sense and this, this is what you should be doing, so. Yeah, we're, it's, it's certainly a moving target, and we don't wanna create a sense of like, you're ever gonna get there to where it's just like, okay, we're good, we never have to do anything again, right? It's, it's gonna be this continued, uh, attack that's gonna be there, so yeah, we recognize that and are trying to tool up to kinda get there, so.
Yeah. Any question for?
All right, thank you all.
Next we'll have our safety department. Have Tyler come up to lead us through that. Believe that budget starts on page sixty-two.
Well, good afternoon. All right, uh, we can start with the capital. Uh, six thousand's in there to replace any out-of-service equipment or, and hopefully we can purchase some new fall protection and confined space equipment as well. So, the goal is to get a new harness that's designed just for confined space, which means the D-rings are on the shoulders. So if you go down, it pulls you straight out instead of on your back, and it's bending you. So, new equipment for that. Uh, the other capital, I don't know if it's in the budget on there, but it was fifty thousand for the AFADs.
The flaggers.
Yeah, automated flagger system devices. Yeah, so it doesn't eliminate the qualified flagger.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they still gotta be there on site, but it eliminates them being on the road themselves, and it allows the devices to raise up, raise down, you don't have to be there. You can be pretty far out and operate both if, if you can see both. So it's pretty nifty device.
And I think, just wanted to add, is, as I understood it, transfer, state transportation has been using these for twenty years?
Yeah, a long time.
And, transportation, they, and it impressed me, the instructor from Eastern Kentucky
Mm-hmm.
said over the last, what, fifty years, transportation has lost a hundred employees. Killed because of trucks and that, cars hitting them because of being a flagger. Um, and these, like you said, one person in a truck off to the side could control both of them with a remote.
Exactly, yeah, that's why they're used a lot of the time in Western Kentucky.
Yeah.
It's a lot flatter, so you can see each end of your job site.
Mm-hmm.
Of course, up here it's a little hilly, especially you get over to Eastern Kentucky, it's a little different, but.
But these have an arm that comes down, stops flashing lights, I mean, and so it's not new technology, but the guy at Eastern thought it was a good investment, I think.
Oh, yeah, it's a great investment. I mean, even if it gets struck on a job site, you know, you just saved a life.
Yeah.
I mean, so, it's a great investment.
Yeah.
Uh, and the big thing on our budget, all, all the line items are pretty similar, uh, except for line number forty, which is to, we request to add an additional safety field assistance. Some of the reasons behind that, uh, is to increase some inspections we have, and the idea is to separate the two field safety insistence, okay? So one would focus telecoms, electric. One would focus on water distribution, water treatment. Because at the water treatment plant, I don't know if y'all have been out there, but it's a whole nother animal out there. Lot of moving parts, okay? We need to increase and then continue to improve our lockout-tagout program out there and with the water distribution. So that's why we request now to help with that process, to keep it going forward, instead of going back. And, um, and it would also help bring the standards of regu- like regulations, federal and state, and our own policies to the job sites, so more hands-on training. I mean, we can talk to, we're blowing the face in these safety meetings and doing these trainings, but the key is to get on the job site with them to show them exactly what we're talking about, cause you can mention something, but without physically doing it, you may not stick with them. So that's another reason why, to help with more hands-on training in the field.
And it should have an impact on our insurance premiums, too, shouldn't it?
Should, yes, so. Yeah, uh, let's see here. Another thing is, we're, it would help with the accident investigations, damaged utilities, I mean, there's, I don't wanna get into the full job description, but there's quite a bit, and then we're adding some new stuff coming up soon, so it would just help tremendously and help us with productivity. Uh, let's see here, you have any questions on that? Anything on that?
John, doing the, the, with the, uh, I can't think of what, we took the emergency stuff. Did we talk about the fibrillators more?
Yeah, about additional.
Yeah, the ADs, I heard you guys were mentioning that, I didn't.
Do we need more in terms, I think right now they're on the foreman or supervisor trucks?
I think right now we're pretty good. I mean, if you were, if, if you wanted to add it one to every single vehicle, I think there's like sixty left, you're looking at almost a hundred grand and getting one in every vehicle, so, but we already have I wanna say forty-seven, one on, one on every single electric vehicle. Uh, on-call personnel, water, uh, distribution has five or six, I believe, and then the water treatment has, what, water treatment plant has two. And that's spread out, so the water treatment plant, you got one in the skater room there, where they operate, and then you got one in the vehicle. So if they go around, to, throughout the facilities, there's one near them.
So you think we adequately covered with those, because I mean?
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to add, obviously, I mean, the more you got, the better, but.
Is there any places that, I know we can't do all of a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Or whatever, but are there some areas that, that you think need them, but don't have them now?
Personally.
You know, like ten, ten of them, or?
Well, ten, yeah, ten, we could find a spot for them, but the thing is, so with like electric, there's always somebody, there's always, they're always working together most of the time. Okay, and then you got cable, like, let's say installers. Well, the cable installers are by themselves most of the time. So even if you do have it, it's not gonna be very successful. So, I think what we got right now is sufficient. I mean, we got one on each floor in this building, right there in the middle of each, each floor. And each facility we have has one. So we're pretty well covered on that, and also keep track of the pads and batteries, uh. We don't have, we don't have any pads or batteries expire until twenty twenty-five right now, so we do have, look, there are locations and expiration dates. And also, another third person can help assist with that as well. Any more questions on? That's about all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Tyler. Got Darren with our NOC operations, our Network Operations Center, or NOC. The expenses start there, you can see the summary on page sixty-eight, the capital's on sixty-nine, and then the line-out in detail is there on page seventy.
Good afternoon.
How you doing, sir?
The NOC budget's pretty straightforward. Um, page sixty-eight, I'm sorry, I left my glasses laying back there, so I'm doing this blind. Uh, page sixty-eight is the overall budget, it's pretty much the same as every year. Obviously, most of it's personnel cost. Uh, on the capital budget, on the next page, I only have four items, and three of those are really basic. It's, uh, over the course of the next several years, replacement vehicles for the locators, um, as they meet our policy and, you know, rotate out of service, and then, uh, the replacement of monitoring, monitoring equipment for the same guys, you know, the actual locating equipment as things get end of life. Uh, the only other thing I have on there is the replacement of our radio system, which was actually on here last year. Uh, we didn't do it, we added a little bit more money to it and brought it back to the table because it just, it wasn't gonna be enough, and we really don't know until we bid it.
So it's in this year's budget?
I'm sorry.
It's in this year's budget, it ends June thirty?
It's in the current budget now, yes, and we didn't.
So that money basically is gonna drop to the bottom and then just be re-appropriated plus some extra?
Yes, correct, 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 and the, the current system we have, uh, the life cycle of a typical LMR, Land Mobile Radio System is, I think, seven to ten years, thereabouts. Ours is, uh, twenty-three years old. So we do have problems. Quite often, we have problems, so it's, there's a lot of maintenance involved, so it's time.
Are these handheld or mounted in the vehicle?
Both, both, and, you know, everybody obviously has access to them. The electric department uses them more than anybody, just because it's an accountability and safety thing. I mean, as the crews are at work and they use it all day long. Um, and we just have problems communicating with them and like everything else, it seems, when it storms or when it's bad, when we need it most, is when it works the least.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, uh, it's time, and this new system, we currently have two sites, uh, east side, west side, so it's kinda like a roaming telephone kinda thing, you know? Um, in this new system, in the, in the specs we've put together, we've added a site down to, we really, there's really no coverage down on the, the Wilson Boulevard River Corridor, as you get down in that valley. Um, there's some radio issues, so we have some existing infrastructure, um, on Ballina uphill that I think we can use and cover that area really without much extra expense at all, so that's part of it as well, so.
How you doing on staffing for both your locators and for downstairs?
We have, locators are great, uh, since we've added, the, the last locator we added, we, we're not having turnover. They're all, they're all here, I hope they're here for a while.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we do have one opening in the NOC, and actually, I think we have a new person starting Monday.
Okay.
So, we're good, we're good for now.
Okay.
So, yeah, it's just, just getting them and keeping them.
And I wanted to compliment all the work I know you do with, I don't know what you call that group that meets, with, that you all meet with?
All downtown, yeah, yeah, Public Safety Plowing Group.
Yeah, but I know you all do a good job on that.
Yeah, thank you. That's been, we've been meeting, uh, the mayor appointed me to the chair of that in two thousand and one, for obvious reasons, and we've kept it going every since, so that's, it's important, and the community involvement's what makes it, it happen, but it says something about our community too, that we've, we've kept something going that long, you know, regular meetings, and we always have, you seen the crowd?
Yeah, and I know transportation's on, I mean, everybody's on it, so.
That's right, yeah, yeah, so it's a really good place to, you know, I said a million times, the time to meet people is almost seen as a disaster.
Mm-hmm.
So, getting on a first-name basis with everyone before it happens, and that's what that's about.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's my budget. The only big-ticket items, the replacement of the radio system, and like I said, that's a continuation from this year. So, any questions? Anything I can answer for any of you folks? No?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, I think we're ready to get into the meat of the three large divisions, starting with the electric division. We'll have Travis and Scott come up and start getting into that. As they're talking, we just have some slides that are gonna be presented, just for informational purposes, um. And I kinda hit the meat of the discussion, I think the big and good news is we had a better-than-expected year with a rate adjustment in July, and a better-than-expected usage from our, uh, industrial and general service group, so we were going to delay any, uh, future adjustments at this time, so I'll go ahead and just turn over Travis to get into the details.
All right, thank you. Um, I will start with capital projects on page seventeen. Um, if you look through the electric capital budget, I think you probably noticed, a lot of these projects are uh, large projects that have been underway for some, in some cases, several years, um, starting at the top with the AMI project. We've got three hundred and sixty-six thousand budgeted for that. Um, if everything goes according to plan, we will finally be done with the appointment, uh, of AMI this, this upcoming fiscal year, so that'll be, um, that'd be great to finally have that fully implemented and, and ready to kinda start adding these other bells and whistles. Um, the fast charging station, that's one that's, you know, of course, been on our radar for some time. Um, I've been working with Public Works on trying to get that kinda over the hump, if you will, um, kinda been in the easement issue, so we did go ahead and budget some funds for that to, to get that hopefully wrapped up this fiscal year as well.
And that was in the city's ballpark, right, in terms of where they want that?
Yes, we kinda proposed to them that, you know, we were stuck on easement issue, and we asked them for guidance, if you will. Um, several items for new services, customer-driven projects, uh, line fifty-five replaced T twenty-one, uh, one point one seven million, so that, that's a large power substation transformer we're gonna be replacing. That transformer has been ordered, it'll be delivered next fiscal year, so that one's kind of underway, but yet to really, uh, truly get started. Another, another big project for us will be, uh, making kind of a, a more concerted effort, if you will, uh, to beef up our underground system. There's a few underground projects we're looking at next year. Um, line one hundred, direct buried URD cable, so that's underground cable that's not in conduit, it's an older way of doing it, and quite frankly, not as good a way of doing it. So we wanna hit those areas, get those replaced. Um, we wanna look at converting some of the existing overhead lines to underground where we can. Um, hitting the places that, that best meet our operational needs. Uh, one location we're looking at is, um, at Second Street School. We met with the foreman, um, I posed a question to them, you know, if we're gonna target areas to, to look at converting from overhead to underground, what makes the most sense to you operationally? And their first suggestion was the schools. Um, so that was one, we've known about it for a long time. If you're up by, by Second Street, you can, you can see the issue pretty obviously.
And the big problem, I mean, I remember, it's been several years when the, uh, when Houston Barber was superintendent, and he asked about it, and as I remember, the killer issue was, our cost was one.
Right.
But everything inside, if we went underground, everything inside is attaching up there on the second, that, they've got a huge cost inside, don't they, if they, if we switched?
Correct, they, they would, so if we, if we put a pad mount transformer there, where the transformers are now, um, by, plan board operations, that becomes the, the demarcation point, and they're responsible for everything past that, so there's some question there, how, how that, I mean, it technically would be on them to figure that out, but, um, yeah, it's gonna be difficult kinda for both parties, so. Um, we've had a few kind of preliminary conversations with them about it. Um, our position was, we think we can do it, it makes sense from the plan board's perspective, operationally, to do it, so we'll put it in our budget. Um, if it gets approved, we need to have some conversations with them about what they're gonna be able to do.
With the same thing, I know the city's got the interest, I think I'll let everybody know that the city's got the interest in what it would cost to go underground just on Broadway.
Right.
And would that same problem be there, that if you went underground, that all those businesses, where they're now being connected up at the top, would have to figure out how to connect somewhere?
This is a little different because the high voltage line feeding the school is already underground. It's kind of an oddball type of configuration. We go underground with high voltage cable, come back up to an overhead transformer bank and hit them overhead, so this one's already kind of a little bit a step of ahead.
Okay.
Of some of those others. Um, it's a little more. It's a little more straightforward from our perspective here. It would, kinda low-hanging fruit, if you will, but, um, yeah, you're always gonna have those issues.
Yeah. Are they gonna try to get it? I'm sorry, no, go on.
Didn't we just do that whole street scape and stuff with Tiger Grant?
We did, yes. It did not change their little short feed there. But the overhead, street side is new. And we kinda let the city drive the bus on, on how that was configured. So it, it stayed overhead with a compact cable. That was a decision we worked with the city on, and they, they signed off on that.
Would it be fairly easy with all the new utilities they put in the ground there to go underground with all that new addition and renovation?
Our part to get the school specifically underground is pretty, pretty easy. It's essentially setting a, a transformer. The hard part is gonna be all their overhead conductor going to the school itself. Like I said, when we set a pad mount transformer, all the conductor passes the transformer, becomes the customers. So we need to talk with them about, are they gonna be able to make that transition with this?
Yeah, I can remember that discussion at time, and once the schools heard that number, it was like, they just, it wasn't doable at that time release for them.
Yeah, yeah, so. To be determined, I guess. I think, you know, doing our part and making sure it's, it fits with our, our budget is kinda first step. Line sixty-five, a sixty-nine, sixty-nine to S three line recloser. This is a transmission system improvement, adding reliability to our transmission system. It's kind of a newer technology, but something that we think is, is kinda ready to go. It's been out a few years now, so this would be a good application for it. Again, helps, helps just preventing outage on our, our transmission system. A reconductor project, line one forty-five, reconductor in downtown. There are parts of South Frankfurt that still have old copper conductors. We want to get those replaced with something newer, just for, you know, reliability. And, let's see, other capital items, a couple, couple trucks, a bucket truck and a back truck. Correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, those are both, those are carryovers, correct? They, they have already been ordered. It's just, you know, we've talked about lead times on trucks quite a bit. They've been ordered, just expected to be received this upcoming fiscal year. Another big one, line two fifty on our capital budget, is the community solar expansion. So the way we've done the budgeting here, we, we budgeted the entire two million as a, a capital cost. If you flip kinda to page nineteen, you will see there is a, an other revenue for that. So the total project's two million. We're also expecting a million in revenue from, from the USDA if we're awarded that grant. So, just wanted to, to clarify on that. As of this week, last week, Jason, help me out if I'm wrong here, we think we have all of our ducks in a row and everything submitted to the USDA, so we're just waiting on word from them. We've got, the last hurdle was Heritage Council. We think we, we've got everything to them. They seem satisfied with everything we provided, so. Fingers crossed, a million dollars of that at least will be paid for from external funds, and, again, that'll be the expansion, will be kinda down, down and to the right on, on Flynn Avenue from us here.
Yeah, and then additionally, there'd be another eight hundred thousand of the reimbursement from the I T C, I think, did you guys?
Right, yeah, there's, it's still kinda confusing, something like the domestic content, whether, does that apply, does it not apply? That's a tricky one. Low income, we think we're in an area, we, we'll get that bonus. And it's, you know, obviously, the thirty is, feels like a slam dunk, we think. So, at least a million of that two million will be from others, probably much more than that when you, you stack on the, the tax credits on top of it.
Yeah, and I just wanted to say Travis has done a wonderful job leading that whole grant process, especially when we got into environmental. Just repeated kind of answering questions and working with the Heritage Council and stuff. It was great.
Thank you, appreciate it. Those were the ones we, we thought to call specifically on capital. If there aren't any other questions on that, I'll, I'll kinda move on to some of the expense items.
Travis, where are we on community solar subscriptions?
Still a long way to go. We have not had, you know, we give one or two, sign us, signs up here, there. You know, we did the, the Earth Day downtown a few weeks ago. We had some interest after that, so it's
It's slow-going, huh?
It's still pretty slow-going, yeah.
So have we looked, I know, when we first started, if we talked about possibly getting people to donate solar to maybe like the salmon house, like that's an example. Is that, is it possible, is there a vehicle to do that now? If I wanted to?
Yes, you can get, within a, within the tariff that's there now, yes, you can. K U with theirs, they kinda specify, they kinda direct people to one specific organization. I think they do Habitat for Humanity, it's kinda, everything is right there, easy. We've not done that, maybe that's something we can explore to
That would be a tax deduction for the person, for the contributor?
That, that's kinda what we think. Of course, that's, you know, that's a tough one to answer. We've kinda punted, you need to ask your tax professional, just to be on the safe side, but.
Yeah, if you're taking the standard deduction, it takes a lot, it takes a lot to get past that standard deduction to where charitable even counts, on federal.
No, I can't get to that level, for sure. But seriously, though, there, there might be corporations, companies that, that might, if we can encourage it to, you know, to buy up this, you know, the plan and donate it goodwill, you know, good publicity?
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I think we're, we're all open to, there, there's plenty out there to be had, so, ideas for getting people to sign up. You know, it, it's, it's a great program, it's, you know, as low as four bucks a month, you can start going solar, or you can go all the way up to offsetting your entire electric bill. That's something, you know, Jason and I, and Catherine, I think, had some ideas about that.
But the one-time, the one-time purchase is about a thousand, what's a thousand?
Yeah, ten nine, ten forty-seven, a thousand, yeah, so.
I mean, I'm thinking of that, that more so than the four dollars, that somebody might want to do.
Agreed, for like a corporate donation, yeah. Matter of fact, the tariff we set up, you have to do the one-time, you have to do the full purchase, yeah, the one-time.
Currently, in the, currently in tariff, you already set up, not, you can't have your one-time transfer. So it's, that's the one we're already putting in that place. If anyone wanted to donate in that way, we don't have to change anything, we just can make that happen.
Would it be inappropriate for F P B to go to its business customers with the thought that they might wanna do a contribution to some charity of their interest?
I have one corporation reach out to me, we might, but they are not really ready to purchase twenty-five year. They, one of them ready, say, put a thousand dollar, but to do annually, months to months, then the contribution can benefit whichever nonprofit organization we want, we can choose to. I do have one company reach.
We could work through the Frankfurt Chamber to do something jointly, to reach out to their business list and do some type of joint mailing or workshop, or something to send out to let their members know this is available.
I mean, I, you know, I wouldn't be opposed personally, if somebody had a volume wise, that you might do some discount off that volume.
Yeah, we had, uh, there, there was some concern when we were setting up the, the gifting rules about, at, at some point, does it become a commodity that is being traded? And that was the concern, that's how we wound up at the one-time, that's one gift. You buy it, you buy the whole twenty-five years, you can get to one time, and then it's not, you know, you have a better case that this is not a security you're selling. I think that was kinda part of the concern.
The only problem about the discount is that we priced it, it's as good as we could to, to cover it and not to impact any ratepayer.
Well, I was talking about twenty-five thirty shares as, as a volume, not down four, you know. Four thousand dollars, I think, forty to fifty thousand dollars. And not that much discount, you know, just.
Well, I think there's other ways it can benefit companies. I mean, a sticker on their window, uh, some, something to show what they've done.
Yeah, the way K U L G does it, they have like gold-level sponsors, silver sponsors, I don't know, I don't remember the exact naming, but if you go to their solar share website, they list the manufacturers, the, the large commercial customers that.
Yeah, advertising.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, and I, I, I think if we get this grant and we're able to build a larger rate, we're gonna be in an interesting position to really have some serious conversations, 'cause we'll have so much power coming from there. I think right now, there's really not an incentive for people, there's not a time sense. But if we had a backup, like the city, or K S U, or someone else wanted to purchase it, Polhog, at a certain municipal rate, then I think we could tell people in six months, sign up or it'll go somewhere else. Right now, I think people see it and they go, oh, well, one day I'll think about it, but if we had an incentive like that, that we're gonna, this is here now, but it's someone else who's gonna acquire it all, sign up, that would help.
And they haven't obviously said anything, but I mean, there's some opportunities that the city might be interested in. If they move forward, there's money in the budget for them to build a convention center.
Yeah.
There's, there, there, we know they're exploring actively with Frank County Schools on a community pool. I mean, there's some projects coming up that they're might be interested in putting some solar for usage and for obviously naming, to say this, this facility is partially, you know, powered by.
Yeah, it's sometimes easy to roll that in capital budget, and it's a thirty-million-dollar capital budget, so, yeah. So I think there's some good opportunities, but those are a lot of great ideas, I think. I think right now, we just don't have a stick where we go, you have this long. And in my experience, if people don't have a sense of a timing, then there's no rush to do anything, you know.
And Catherine made a good point, I mean, you know, our price on it is lower than K U, but the thing I still hear occasionally is people say, well, how come it's not free? And, I mean, and that's just, I mean, there's assumption that would be free. And all we're trying to do is just recover the cost of, of, you know, building it and providing the service, I mean.
I, I think in any conversation, especially if we look at the municipal rates, or we start thinking about that, we have to just figure out the value of the green.
Yeah.
There is a value to it, and we just have to make sure that that's being represented in, in when people buy it, so.
Travis, you got?
Yeah, that was it, I, that's all I had on, on capital. I can move on to expense if we're good there. So the, the big item, of course, on electric expense is wholesale power. I know David covered quite a bit of that earlier, so, short-term, we, we are projecting, at least for next year, for sure, the rates to be steady, or, or flat for wholesale power next year. Again, that, that's forty-seven million of, of the electric budget, that's the, the big chunk of it. Another one that we didn't specifically call out in our supplemental budget report, because it's, it's kind of a, an every-year thing, but another big one is, is tree trimming. Nine hundred and, nine hundred fifty-five thousand, so that's the other big one alongside, you know, of course, payroll, wholesale power. Tree trimming is a big one. It's hugely, hugely beneficial to keep the lights on, to have a, a aggressive tree trimming program. This will be our last year on our tree trimming contract, so we're gonna have to rebid it for next year. It'll be interesting to see, you know, kinda where prices are. Hopefully, we can, we can keep it competitive with, with where we've been, but, so those, those are the big ones kinda marching down the list. The pole inspection program, we are underway with that. We've got two hundred and ten thousand budgeted for next year to continue the pole inspection program. We will hit about twenty percent of our system end of this current fiscal year. Wanna get another, hopefully forty-ish percent next year, forty percent year after that, so three years hit our whole system. We have found a lot of issues. We're running at about five percent reject rate, which is, you know, we were concerned it could've been as high as ten percent, so really, we're, we've been kinda happy with, with the five percent reject rate, but it is important to get out there and find those. The contractors are very thorough. Any pole they can dig all the way around, they're digging all the way around and going down and finding that rod, expecting all the way up to pole. So it, it, it's been a great benefit to us, and I think it's gonna help keep the lights on and keep our customers safe.
So what's the timeframe? Once you go out and you find a bad pole?
Yep.
Then what's the timeframe to replace it?
We have been trying to prioritize, they have two levels of, of a rejected pole. There's a restorable reject, which means you can kinda put a, a secondary solution on it and keep that pole going a little longer, and then there's a non-restorable reject, which means it has decayed to the point, there's no restoring it, it's, it's long gone. So we've been trying to get to those immediately. We don't have like a regulatory deadline, per se. We've just been trying to, as soon as we find them, get them scheduled, get them replaced, and just kinda keep, keep that priority list going. The ones, like I said, that are non-restorable, they, they go to the top of the list, and we're trying to hit those right away. So that will be, we'll come back at the eighteenth meeting to talk about renewing of that contract, that's.
Travis, how does this play into our, you know, is, is this an increase? Are we going through this process? Are we replacing more poles than we ordinarily would? And at what order of magnitude is this, is this occurring, if that's the case?
Yes, we are. It, it, it has picked up the pace on our, our pole replacements. Like I said, right now, we're, we're running about a five percent reject rate, so about five percent of the two thousand poles, we think, at the end of this current fiscal year, will need to be replaced. So it's not, it hasn't upended our operations or anything. We're not delaying other customer projects to, to get them taken care of. It, it, there's been, definitely been an uptick in pole replacements, but it's been manageable within kinda existing operations, so. Good on that one. AMI updates is a new line item, so I mentioned them a few minutes ago. We are coming near the end of the capital deployment of AMI, so we'll start to transition this upcoming fiscal year into kind of a maintenance mode. That seventy thousand will cover some of the ongoing maintenance of AMI, software licenses, those, those types of things. Next one is one, you know, we usually have a bit of discussion about weatherization. We have kinda earmarked our, our standard forty thousand, that's kinda always been the normal number for forty thousand. Last year, the decision was made to roll over some funds from the year prior. So, maybe that's something the board
How, how'd we do this year in terms of spending the forty thousand plus the rollover?
I think we're gonna come in right about forty thousand. I've, I've got seven customers outstanding that are yet to be paid. So depending on if they get done and invoiced by the end of this fiscal year, I think we'll be, we should be right around that, that forty thousand mark, so a little bit. We didn't end up using the rollover, basically, in, in short, to answer your question.
So in theory, you would've spent the rollover first, plus the new money, so then, out of the forty thousand, we'll have a new rollover.
Right, yeah, so that, that was my first question. I don't think the intent was, we're gonna snowball these rollovers, right? Every year, that, that rollover number could potentially get bigger and bigger and bigger. My thought was, forty thousand is the baseline number, and you just look back one year, so.
And you think forty thousand is the number, is the right number?
That seems to be right around where we land every year, yeah.
What do y'all think in terms of?
How, how much, how much rollover do we have coming into this year, do you know?
So we have fifty-three thousand budgeted this current fiscal year. I think we're gonna hit right around that forty thousand.
About thirteen rollover?
So probably around another ten, thirteen thousand-ish, yeah.
Why don't we just keep, why don't we make it fifty, and then if they can't hit it, just like, like, then that, well, we can, we can go back and put fifty in and we spend what we spend, 'cause that, that seems to be kinda where we're gonna end up being.
Okay.
That's him.
Rather than trying to do a rollover and
Just put fifty in a year, and don't keep doing the rollover, just budget fifty going forward. 'Cause that's more than we're, but that gives us, and you don't know what prices are gonna be, and
Right. Right, yeah, we upped the, the amount last year per customer, and I think that was, that was a big help, because it had been two thousand every year, and I think they were struggling at two thousand to really do much.
Make any changes?
Yeah, so we went up to twenty-five hundred, and they seem to be, that seems to be working, yeah.
Stay at twenty-five hundred, but go with fifty, is that?
Yeah, okay. Twenty-five hundred and fifty, okay. Uh, next one, kinda right in line with that, the winter care match, fifty thousand, I think is kinda pretty standard. Every year, we do fifty thousand. David Katrina may be able to correct me on that one. Um, I think that's kind of, you know, board's discretion, but that number seems to be pretty standard.
Is that okay?
Very good, fifty thousand, okay. Uh, general consulting, um, this one is primarily, uh, the- the work we've been doing with G D S. Um, obviously, we've got some- some really big power supply decisions, uh, that are gonna be here before we know it. Um, so got a part of, bit of work with them, that was, um, you know, that's what we're thinking for the power supply consulting is- is two hundred thousand next fiscal year.
And we will need, how about, um, we, do we have anything that we think we're gonna need eighteen ninety-eight for, or?
Um, not specifically that I know of, um. No- nothing right offhand that I know of right away. Um, you know, we've got the time of use discussion that- that will still be coming up. We did not budget for them to come back in.
Okay.
Um, I think maybe if we are spinning our wheels on that and need some help, maybe we call them back in, but that- that wasn't the plan.
Gary, you think, can you think, we think we need eighteen ninety-eight for, or?
I think we probably do need a budget some.
Some amount? The reason is, for example, right, I'm just throwing out something. Even cities, and they really need to build, try to apply a large grant of solar.
Mm-hmm.
And then they want us to jump in, help them for.
Or we have to turn around and build a substation, or?
You know, yeah, do we need a some assistant for the larger project? I'm just, for example, you know, you never know how those things may come. But you always can do the budget amendment when you have time. So one way or another, it's all right.
Uh, I do have, I do have one question about another, underneath, another item later, uh, Travis, is- is a legal, is legal expense.
Right.
Is that number, have we increased that number based on potential's, uh, need with chemia? I- I don't wanna get too far out ahead, but is that number s- more than it has been in past years?
It is, yes, it's significantly increased. Um, and Hans kind of helped us make an estimate on this one, so I think he's kind of in line with this.
Sorry to make sure that was covered in there.
Okay.
Indeed, um, another consulting item, um, this is a new one, hazard and risk mitigation planning. Uh, this is an item Gary and I discussed a few months ago. I think it's something that's been on his mind, is just having somebody take a thirty thousand foot look at our system and say, are there risks to the electric system we're not thinking about? Um, environmental, otherwise wildfire, those types of things. So getting somebody to help us take a look at any kind of, again, a big one would be environmental risk, but just do an assessment and help us get pointed in the right direction if- if needed. And I think that was all I had specifically itemized to discuss. Um, any questions on expense or other items in the electric budget?
Cause I know y'all worked on, looking at this, y'all done pulled everything?
I've, I worked on telecom.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jason and I met a- a couple of weeks ago, and.
It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Steve, John, yep, we're good. Travis, we'll try to keep you busy this next year.
Yeah, we're gonna be busy.
Cause I know you had some slack time this year.
Yeah, it was a little too much downtime, yeah. Thank you.
All right, moving on to our water divisions, includes water treatment and water distribution. Kind of covered the- the big points during that initial, initial budget discussion this morning. We will have, continue, uh, the four-year rate adjustment schedule for July of twenty-four and July of twenty-five, with no future rate changes budgeted at this time. Um, and we do have a slight decrease in the budget due to booking some of our payroll over into capital assets versus expense, but, uh, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Charminsta thirteen.
David, I'm Mr. Beginning, we do have the ra- rate increase on the meter fee, did you say, mention that already?
Um, I have it, gave them detail on it, on how it's structured.
So, good afternoon, so we'll try to keep ours a little bit quick. Um, as far as the water budget, um, it's pretty straightforward, um, if you look over through the capital budget, it consists prim- primarily of replacement and ma- maintenance type projects. I'll hit on a few of our major items that we've talked about in previous board meetings, like, uh, Midway Waterline Extension. There's been a lot of moving parts as far as getting easements, there's been a lot of property ownership changes since we started this project, and we've been working regularly with Kentucky Utilities. And on top of that, in the meantime, uh, Midway has also asked us to possibly relocate their pump station and meter vault. So we're in the process of, um, looking for a new location for their meter vault, depending on where we put the pump station. We did price it for an eight-inch line, they have recently requested to up to it to a twelve-inch line, and they also wanna maybe look at changing the pipe material to P V C. So right now, we're in the process of updating cost estimates, once we determine exactly where the pump station's gonna be located, so. Lots of, but we're making progress, but, um, so as far as that, we've, I know we have one point sixty-two million in the budget now. Um, as soon as we get these numbers updated, we'll see if that's gonna greatly affect it. If we do end up switching to a P V C pipe, maybe it won't make, hopefully it won't be more than what it is in the budget now. But we're hoping to get some numbers here within the next two weeks. K U called me this morning, actually before the, but before the budget meeting, they're finalizing some numbers on their end. So I think we're gonna have some numbers here real soon, so we can work on this number a little bit. But then, as you know, it's gonna be prepaid to us through a surcharge over the next twenty years, once we start service, um, eight ma- uh, April of next year. So that was, um, line fifty-five. Uh, another one that you've heard a lot about during the board meetings, pa- on page twenty-nine, the line seventy-five Broadway Bridge. That is the estimate to relocate the existing eight-inch line, we have active eight-inch line on the current bridge. We're gonna relocate it, upsize it to a twelve-inch, and attach it to the U S one twenty-seven Clinton Street Bridge. So that is a reimbursable project from K Y T C. However, we will be working with Palmer Engineering, we're gonna do all the construction and design for the, any of the water line that's actually in the ground, but any portion that's actually on the bridge, Palmer Engineering's gonna design that, the hangers, do the weight load for the bridge and so forth. So we're finalizing the numbers for that, and I- I have all the numbers together, I'll have that agreement to you at this month's board meeting.
Will we do the work ourselves on hooking on the bridge, or will?
We're gonna let all that contract, all that part out, cause we just don't have the equipment. They're gonna probably be on the bridge, have like a snoop or type of equipment to do all that and attach the- the structural part of it. So we're just gonna let them, any bridge, any part that's bridge related, a contractor will do, and Palmer Engineering will decide. But we'll be the ones managing the project with Palmer. So we'll, we'll technically, we'll still be the owner, so. So we've got that, uh, the only thing I will be, um, I do want to do is because right now, we have the existing eight-inch line going down Taylor Avenue, Taylor Avenue, and then we've got the eight-inch line on the bridge. Instead of upsizing it to, um, just replacing in kind with eight-inch, I do wanna upsize it to a twelve-inch. So that's why, if you see there, it kind of show that we'll, um, twenty percent of the cost will be eighty per, I say eighty percent reimbursable by K Y T C, cause that, I just wanna have that, I wanna cover the up sizing from eight-inch to a twelve-inch, so that would be, we would just use our funds on that, yeah. So, and just, we just did a pipe, a bid opening the other day, and just say, the difference between an eight-inch pipe, eight-inch pipe is thirty-two fifty-five a foot, twelve-inch is forty-nine eighty-seven a foot. So we're just basically paying that difference between this pipe size and valve fittings, fittings and so forth. Um, the, these guys are gonna go over the rest of the other capital projects, I'm gonna just jump down to expenses real quick, and these are all items you've seen, um, page thirty-one, line three ninety-five, is that lead service line inventory. Um, we are starting to go door to door, and people have been pretty receptive if they're home. They're typically letting the guys come in and take a look at the line, so, uh, we went ahead and put thirty thousand dollars in there, and that's gonna cover basically the site visits, uh, we have to update the map, um, we have to develop a replacement plan. If we have to start buying pitcher filters for customers, if there's any type of disturbances on a unknown service line, things like that. So that's why we have that thirty thousand in there, um, let's see. And then, uh, page thirty-two, line eight oh five, we have an item, we call it school water fountains, and we typically budget seventy-five hundred dollars, and, you know, we just recently installed a water fountain at Second Street School this year. And what we've been typically doing is we donate all the labor and half the materials, and then the school or the receiving entity will pay for half the materials as well. And it's so far, it's typically our part will be about seventy-five hundred dollars, their part's about thirty-five hundred dollars. So I know we've been starting to get requests from other entities besides schools, you know, the parks, so I'm just probably, right at this point, I'm just gonna recommend just calling it water fountains, instead of saying specifying schools.
Yeah, and I'd ask, uh, Charminsta, I know we had one request from a private nonprofit, and we've really never ventured into, you know, so far, it's always been like at Juniper Hills, downtown, the farmer's market. We've really never gotten into had anything past that. I know one of the goals we had for the schools and everything was, we wanna promote people drinking water, I mean. So the question is, if we start getting requests, and there's other potential projects in town that could lead to requests, what's our policy gonna be? So I'd ask Charminsta at some future meeting to bring to the board, what would our policy be for private nonprofits? For private period, if they want a water fountain, and they're willing to pay for the water, are we gonna say you pay a hundred percent of the cost, is it gonna be a cost sharing? Do we wanna have a policy? Do we want, I mean, it's, I've always found it's easier to have some type of policy than try to figure out one real quick when you get a request. But I don't know what the policy ought to be, but Charminsta graciously has indicated she's more than happy to bring a policy, right?
I did put one together, did, I don't know if you've seen it yet, you haven't seen it yet, okay. Austin, it's very, very short and sweet.
Okay.
Basically, it's, the board will need to decide if you wanna donate towards private entities, and if they're a nonprofit or profit, that'll be a decision we need to make, like, who's allowed to apply for a donate F P donation? Do we wanna keep it public entities and schools only? Do we wanna do like, you know, this particular agency is a private, but it is nonprofit, it is a community service what they do, so. I've got something written up, I'll get it forwarded to the board if you guys review, and then you guys can just kind of decide how you wanna proceed from there, so. Um, as far as, uh, revenue, basically, I just typically look at average sales over the last four to five years, and projected gallons for the current year to come up with the revenue projections. Um, as you know, I stated before, we are gonna have a slight increase in our meter usage fee, and then the industrial rate will go up just a little bit as well, starting July first. And, and I know you've been asking about vacancies, we still have a water engineering vacancy, so. I've, I've hit everybody else that I can think of, just haven't had any luck yet. I've reached out to professors at the universities, I think it's posted at all the universities. I've reached out to all the consultants, you know, they see a lot of interns come through their doors, you know, asking them to mention it to them. I've reached out to the state, um.
What do you think, what's our, is it salary, or is it?
That's what I've heard, salary.
I mean, is it, I mean, have you, have we gotten to the point of offering to somebody, and somebody giving us a number, and we just couldn't get there, or?
Not yet, not yet, we did have, um, we've had some salary, uh, requests that are over the pay grade, so. We have, but now we haven't actually offered the job to anybody, and.
Okay.
John, Charminsta and I talked, and Brandon, we all, we all talked. Um, this is one of those in- instances where an adjustment here of maybe what we might need to do based on, is gonna have some- some domino effects later on, so it's gonna have to be, we kind of need to figure out where we are in terms of i- is, if we're the, are we gonna have to cross this bridge and bump this salary up, which is gonna cause compression above that. So we're, we're really concerned about that, and, you know, the discussion we had was, you know, we're, we're, we're exhausting all our avenues right now, and if, if it comes to that point, we might have to come back and, and see what we can do, so.
Uh, are you looking at entry level people, or are you just, if this is, this job is open to any? Any- anyone, you know, anyone with experience, you know?
Well, my hope was, and for some, I was overconfident and thought I'd get someone with qualif- qualified to do the job, but this hasn't happened, so now we've backed up to, I'll take a fresh graduate as well. So that's why I said, even, we've all, said all the universities, I've reached out to my previous professors, hydraulics professors, and, no- nothing yet.
So anybody, anybody that's coming to this job, let's say they were qualified as you, the first, they weren't coming in at the entry level of a position?
Um, I would probably have to request for a higher, you know, I doubt that anybody, the bottom, water engineer two is what I originally posted as. Now we've opened up to water engineer one or two, and I believe the entry today is about seventy-four thousand for water engineer two, and that wouldn't bring anybody in with experience. So I would probably have to have a request to Gary and the board, if we had somebody come in and ask for that, ask for more.
To me, I, that's what I would do, because I don't, I don't think it's realistic to think that it's somebody specialized job, you're gonna bring someone in, you know, at, at the entry level salary, for whatever the job. Particularly if you're looking for people that have experience, or have been doing the job.
Say our friends at either end of I sixty-four, we're out looking for the same position, what would they be paying?
Friends.
Yes, our, what would they be paying?
Uh, I think we're seeing six figures for most of these positions now, so. And before I turn over there, I do wanna say, Mr. Snyder was our liaison for the budget, and we did appreciate meeting with you. It's always nice having that kind of talk about our everyday stuff, and we're excited about our project, so it's nice to share. So we do appreciate your time that day, and I will turn it over to Brian next to go over distribution.
Just, John, what, things that we've spent time on, I mean, we know Midway's underway, uh, we know Peaks Mill's ongoing issues, I mean, it's all that.
Uh, till you get Georgetown to make the decision on something, I think it'll be fine. So, no, no, I mean, eh, you know, like Charminsta said at the very beginning of, of, of her presentation, um, you know, Midway's in a little bit of flux based on where we can put things, where we have to put the pump station. You know, I- I'm, I'm encouraged by the, the idea of going to a twelve-inch line, cause I think that may have some positive repercussions if we wanna, you know, expand in other places in that area. That's probably a good thing for us. Um, you know, I- I think the other guys are gonna talk a little bit about some of the other things, I don't wanna step on their toes, but we did talk about some other things as well. Um, of course, you know, the, the big item we've, we've already approved that's in this budget is, and I don't think we're talking about is valve replacement and the water treatment plant, but I'll let them, I'll let them talk about that, and I'll fill in.
Yeah, I'll go ahead, I'm, I'm gonna go over the distribution. Uh, we, we've been talking about A M I throughout the meeting. In the water department, next year on line five, we've got two hundred thousand dollars budgeted. Um, currently, we're at twelve thousand four hundred and eighty-one meters that are A M I meters. So we're looking about four thousand more meters, so we'll get that knocked out this year, we're excited about getting the, getting that done. Um, April's talking about some of the things we can do with it, I mean, finding leaks and customer issues, and. And it's not just like one flag a day, I mean, we'll get, we could get five hundred.
Yeah.
Flags that pop up on the A M I system, so it's gonna be a lot to look at, but there's a way that we can go through there and kind of categorize the ones that are, that are not, that we know they're gonna be using a lot of water every day, so. So that, that's our A M I, so we're hoping to get that done this year. Uh, line fifteen and thirty-five, uh, those are water replacement, those are our two lines, the five hundred thousand for the budget, budget year. Um, we've replaced a lot of problem areas the last several years, so. Um, we don't always have jobs picked out yet, but every year, like, we may get two or three spots that become a, a problem area pretty quick. And we may be spending two or three nights of overtime there trying to fix stuff, and it just comes down to, hey, let's get this fixed, and let's, let's be done with it.
Like the city of Atlanta?
Yeah, well, that, that was bad, yeah, that was bad. When I saw that on the news, I was like, surely they got a line stop contractor down there that they can call, that could get over there and help them get that water isolated.
Yeah.
Because most of their city lost water.
Yeah.
That was a big deal, so, that's stuff that we try to avoid, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Line forty on the capital, that's, uh, that's tank cleaning, now, we've talked about this before, uh, Sullivan and Han Tank. And Sullivan's the tank coming in town, uh, we've got a hundred thousand dollars budgeted there. Um, Han, we can do a lot of the work ourselves, we can rent equipment where we can pressure wash and do that. Sullivan's is another bear, and we've had a lot of customers say, hey, we can't see Frankfurt, and I, but we've kind of looked at, you know, coming into town, that's one of the first things you see on Versailles Road is our water tank.
Well, we had that, what, two years ago?
Yeah.
And you were interested, Steve, remember the, the price tag was?
It's not gonna, I mean, it's, it's not cheap, but, but I think it's one of those things that, you know, you.
Wasn't it like thirty or four, wasn't it?
It was, it was forty or fifty thousand dollars, yeah. But, you know, you're, it's, it's something you do every, I mean, this would be twenty, twenty-plus years.
It's, it's, it's too decades since we.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't cleaned the outside of it, so, ever, so, so.
It looks bad.
Yeah, it, it does, it looks, it looks bad, it does, so. Um, line eighty on the capital budget is a dump truck, it's a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, we've been putting this off, trying to put it, put the dump trucks off, but my construction foreman said, Brian, I think it's time, cause we, we have one in the garage most of the time, so, uh, that, that's line eighty. Uh, other than that, on capital, I think Charminsta went over the expense stuff, uh, do y'all have any questions for, for me?
John, anything else you wanted to?
Uh, no, no, I think, I think, I think you covered it pretty well.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Brandon now, he's gonna talk about all the treatment plant projects.
Good afternoon, everybody.
We have to do anything with screens this year, do we?
Well, we are gonna, we wanna replace some, uh, piping for it.
Okay.
Uh, it's P V C, we're gonna go with a ductile, so. Um, so the first one is, is, the big one is the valve replacement project. So shop drawings have been completed, the valve and actuator contractor and the engineer will be out next Thursday just to check orientation of all the valves, actuator placement before they order the valve, so. You know, we're still looking at twenty-eight to thirty-two weeks on, on delivery for that equipment, so it'll be this winter sometime, so. So it'll be this winter sometime, so. Uh, the next one, page twenty-nine, uh, line twenty, uh, selling basin equipment. That equipment is fourteen years old, the lifespan is fifteen years, so. We had somebody come in a couple of weeks ago to assess all that, I haven't got the report back, but I'm, we've had some failures out there, so I'm pretty sure that they'll tell us that. You know, it just needs to be replaced, so. Um, page twenty-nine, line one thirty, those are, uh, five twenty-five controllers. Those replace an old controller that is no longer made anymore. It allows our skater to communicate with the, uh, flop mixer drives, and there's several of them that, they don't work. So, uh, you have to manually go out there and turn them on and reset them every day. Page twenty-nine, line one thirty-five, trailing screen piping, um, that's PVC down there now, it's been in there for twenty-five years. Um, and there's a lot of pressure down there, it's about a hundred and eighty pounds of pressure that come into that building there, so, oh, we wanna replace that to, uh. Make it a little, make it better. Um, let's see, next one's page twenty-nine, line one seventy, uh, this, it's, has forty-seven. It was suggested that we bump it to forty-eight for the vehicle, uh, this is the vehicle for the assistant superintendent. Uh, we've never had a, we've never had a vehicle for the assistant superintendent, and ten of us shared two vehicles out there. So we're always kinda playing, you know, you know, somebody's always looking for a truck to go somewhere. A lot of times we make two trips, going back and forth, doing, doing di- different jobs. Line twenty-nine, one ninety-five is to replace the, uh, we have a crane inside the high service building when we pull our pumps. Uh, that, uh, crane is, is manual, so we all have chain wheels that move the, the crane three different directions, up, down, and we call it east and west. So we wanna take that crane, we're actually gonna downsize it, because we don't need a, a ten ton, we'll do a seven and a half. And then, um, the up, down, and, um, north, south will be electric. So, uh, we can do some of that work in house, we can do the electric, uh, we can do that, uh, but the rest will be contractors. Uh, roof repairs, that's page twenty-nine, um, the roof at the low service building needs a, a complete replacement. Uh, water has gotten underneath that membrane, it has leaked through the flashing, and so there's water underneath that membrane, so that's just a hole. They're gonna gut it, tear it out, replace it. Um, and then the high service and low service, I'm sorry, the high service and the filter building, uh, the flashing needs to be replaced. There's sections of it that are, that are bad, and they, it hasn't gotten underneath the roofing yet, but I wanted to get that fixed. We've had, had some problems where they, they've leaked and, and one spot it's leaked and it's, uh, it messed up a, um, something in the cabinet. And so, I mean, that piece of equipment was eleven thousand dollars, so. There, I do have money for roof, for roofing in there now, we haven't gotten to it yet, so I need to take twenty-five thousand. There's fifty in there, we'll take half of that and roll it into next year, cause it's gonna be a little bit more than a hundred thousand what I had in the budget originally. For twenty-five, so that, that's page twenty-nine, line two fifteen. And, uh, Charmista is finally gonna let us get new conference room chairs, so.
Chairs, chairs are big this year, aren't they?
Well, ours is a blast, it's a little bit longer than seven, they're twenty-four years old, so. Yeah, I mean, the wheels have started falling apart on it and.
You give chairs with wheels?
We, 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 yeah. Yeah, they're, yeah, they're something, so. Yeah, so, so that's seven thousand, there's fourteen chairs in the conference room, so. Um, that's it for capital, um, expense budget, uh, the big one is water treatment chemicals. So we budgeted a million for that, uh, I will have the salt and carbon bid for you at the June meeting to finish that up. Page thirty-one, uh, line three forty, that's our, our lab line. So the way the new PFAS rule works is, um, you have an action level and a trigger level. So if you're above that trigger level, it keeps you, you have to do quarterly testing. So I had five thousand dollars added for PFAS testing for our U C M R in this coming year. So I'll have to add that to twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, add that five thousand, so it'll stay at seventy-five for that. Uh, you, you can test out of that, if your numbers are good enough, you go to yearly. You go to yearly and then tri annual, tri, so, try, yeah, every three years, that's easier to say. Uh, so, so, at hope, hopefully, so hopefully at some point, we can knock that five thousand off. If, depending on how our testing goes, and then, um. Last one, page thirty-two, line seven fifteen, uh, that's hiring an engineering firm to advise us on replacing some equipment out there. Selling basins, uh, that's all based off capacity, so we wanna get what we need and what we may need in the future. Just do it one time, buy that and be done, so it's, it'd be well worth the money to spend that to just do that job once, so.
That, that, that's essentially figuring out what our capacity, who we are, capacity is.
Yeah, if, yeah, if, if we ever have to expand the plant, that could keep us from having to tear out something that's five years old. That has a lifespan of twenty years, so, uh, it'd be well worth it to, to spend that money to. See, yeah, see, cause, cause you, you change the depth of those, and the deeper they are, the more water you can push through them, so. So we'll, we need to hire an engineering firm to do that, so.
Um, I just now thought, but you, you all mentioned a couple of them, and David, maybe you, or maybe Leanne, overall, as a company, where are we at on electric vehicles?
Actually, our first one is scheduled.
Leanne, walk them up to us. Cause I know you talked about a couple, and we've talked about a couple of replacements, and I know the board, what, two years ago maybe, asked that anytime we replace vehicles. We assess them, Mr. Wither, electric, and then we're talking about ants more charging at Myrtle anyway, so.
Yes, and we also talked about doing a slow approach, so, um, tomorrow, we're supposed to receive the Ford Lightning that we ordered. In the current year.
Did we get a good, I mean, cause I know prices have dropped.
It was lower than we had budgeted.
Yeah, because I know the price market is on them is, you know, they've had to really cut the prices, cause they've got them stacked up.
And then, in this proposed budget, there's an E V van for a cable installer.
Okay.
And, and like Travis said, we did get the, um, E V charger installed at the telecom building.
So we got one, what, do we have in terms of pickup truck needs that the Ford Lightning could meet the needs? Do we have more pickup trucks coming up this year, that it might, that more of those might meet the needs?
Uh, possibly.
Okay.
Possibly.
Because I know the prices really come down, cause.
I mean, we can, we can look at each one.
You know, I'm, I'm all for like two vehicles, I think this is an area where we need to be very, very careful.
Right.
You know, cause we've got a lot of, you know, a lot of these things, the use they get, when we need to use them, is we need to use them, and we need to use them.
And I know when you're heavy trucks, that's just not feasible at all, but the light duty.
But even the light duties sometimes, we're still in the position where it's not always easy, easy to get them, you know, charging on, on. When, when we're working, you know, emergencies and stuff, so.
I'd say too, like getting this truck in and using it and seeing how it does will give you a better idea too.
Is it gonna be in your all's area?
No, no.
It's gonna be in telecom.
Okay, telecom, I know the van, what about the?
No, the Lightning is also telecom.
Okay, yeah, okay.
I think that's why we wrote.
Because that's less, you're gonna get less of that kinda use in telecom, so they, they gotta judge how that works, so.
But I mean, the policy wasn't.
Yeah.
Each time.
Right, yeah. And you know, when they first came out, they were just, they were adding huge amounts to the, the price, and now they're selling ten, fifteen thousand more below.
So, you know, you pay for that, so.
Okay, I'm sorry to deviate, but you, you were talking about trucks, I knew a dump truck wouldn't work for.
The other thing about the truck, you know, the one truck that they're asking for, for the assistant superintendent, I believe you all said that. That is the only assistant superintendent, uh, amongst the other branches that does not have an assigned truck to them.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
I think that, in terms of equity, I think, I think that's, I think that's very much needed, so. Um, the other thing, uh, you know, not much, I don't, I don't know how much y'all have left, but David did mention, uh, increases this year. And Ju- July first this year, July first next year, of course, remember when we did that, because of conservation issues and other things. We decided to focus the increases on the, the, the main, the main charge rather than the, rather than the usage charge. So that helps us recoup our costs, and, you know, like I said, water is a very, very thin margin. Uh, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's, it's very capital intensive, it's very, uh, you know, a lot of, a lot of money in pipes, a lot of money in pump stations and stuff, so. You know, we're just trying to provide, and, you know, this is one of the things, you know, you flip the light switch, the light comes on, you open the spigot, potable water comes out. It's something the community has to have, so, uh, and these guys do a great job, so I just wanna thank them for, for sitting down with me and, and talking about it. And like I said, hopefully, we can expand our, some of our wholesale stuff, um, you know, it'll help us, uh, it'll help us. Make it easier on our customers and provide water for, you know, much more of the region, so that's where we are.
And we adopted that rates, our current rates go to what, three years ago, four years?
Yeah, yeah, four years ago, and then, and then, so take this year and next year are the la- are the, are the last two that are scheduled, right, David?
Any other questions for? Okay, one more to go?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all, not? And we're last, telecommunications division, you'll notice we don't use the word cable a whole lot. Telecommunications, we're, we're now an internet company, and, uh, the way we deliver those services is definitely changing. Which is changing the way we have to do business. So this starts on page thirty-four of your budget. Feel like I said enough on all the setup earlier in the day, I'll just let Adam jump right in.
Oh, thanks. So, uh, as David says, the telecom budget starts on twenty-seven? Thirty-six. Uh, basically, our, our capital consists of two major projects, if you take the entire capital budget, thirteen and a half million, twelve and a half million of it is. The county or, or our oval building, and, uh, the remaining capital's about a million dollars. Uh, I got Mike up there today, Mike is the engineering supervisor, uh, for the telecom department. And I'm letting him kinda step through some next band and some county projects to kinda give a little bit of update, where we're going and what we have. Kinda turn it over to you, Mike.
So, uh, on page thirty-six, uh, lines five through thirty-five, uh, shows the grant areas that we're gonna extend to in the county. Uh, right now, we're still in the process of collecting easements, um, I think today we've got ninety-five, ninety-six signed so far. So it's slowly trickling in, um, we've got, as Adam and Ashelle mentioned, we're trying to hire two, uh, easement procurement specialists. So they'll go out, actually go door to door, collect those easements, uh, right now, our in-house engineering is meet with people. They're either scheduling it during the day as they call, um, I've got a couple that go after hours and work overtime doing that, so. Having, uh, some people dedicated that job will speed it up, and that'll speed the project up. We're also working with K U and Bluegrass Energy on, uh, the pole attachments for those. We're, I think we've had one, they call it a virtual write-out with K U, where you go through on, on, uh, you know, like a Zoom meeting. And they have pictures of the poles with the heights and talk about, you know, violations, and make sure we agree with what they're finding, and. Uh, we got another one scheduled next week, um, Bluegrass Energy's moving along, um, I think we had twelve hundred poles in, for those areas, so. It's taking them a little bit longer, but overall, I think they have a good process, and we'll just have to wait to see, you know, how long it takes to get those poles replaced and all the make ready complete. For the, uh, next band overbuild, um, we did pretty good this past year, um, we're about seventy-one percent complete. We're, uh, hoping to get that almost to about ninety-five, ninety-six percent by the end of this fiscal year. We'll pass an additional fifty-six hundred homes and, uh, activate about thirty-one pond groups, so. Each area is kinda broken in, like, one neighborhood may have one pond group or may have four, just depends on the size. But usually averages out between about a hundred and fifty to two hundred homes passed, so. Each contractor, they get a pond, and that's what they work in, is in that area, so. Um, but overall, um, the, we've got contractors working and it's moving, uh, materials coming in, so. I don't expect any trouble getting that moving forward at the same pace we've been doing this past year.
Do you guys have an estimate for community-wide next band?
Yeah, um, hopefully by December of twenty-five, yeah.
And with that, if, if you look at our capital budget, that, um, as we start, in these first two years, we finish up construction. You know, we have, uh, what we got here, uh, five, five point one million budgeted this year, and then next year it's, uh, nine hundred thousand. So that completes the construction, and then if you look at the other lines, uh, like line thirty-six, seventy, one oh five and one ten. You start to see those lines ramp up, and that's where we start moving customers over to the network, which is, you know. When we first started, it was a big entertainment, big undertaking to build the network, but now we're trying to see, it's gonna be a rather large project. You start moving people over, there are some areas where we've, uh, working with landlords, some of them don't want us on their facilities. And so we're going back and forth with them to try to come to some resolution, uh, we had the same thing happen twenty-something years ago with F S N. And eventually, when people stopped renting those places, because they couldn't get access to high-speed data, uh, most of the landlords came around. And we worked with them to get those areas, uh, corrected and turned on. Uh, so then, like I said, that is twelve and a half million dollars, or thirteen and a half million dollars budget, or those two projects, so. Things are going, uh, really well, material-wise, everything's coming in, we're trying to stay ahead of that. But then the next phase that we take over, I mean, we're, we're scheduled to do three thousand installs this year coming up. And then I think it's, uh, four thousand, five thousand, and five thousand, and that'll finish you up. If you do the math, it's like, well, you're doing more installs than you currently have customers, it's because we've already seen that we will go do an install. And the customer will move out, and that address might not be, you know, have somebody move in immediately, and they might not take our service, so. Typically, we would have more installs than we have customers as time goes on, uh, if you look today, I would say ninety-five percent of the homes that we pass with cable. Have a drop out, even though there might not be active customers. So those are those two projects, I can kinda, uh, step through the rest if there's no questions about those two projects at this time. So like I said, that was next band, we have, the rest of the things that we have are really supplemental, you know, we have our cable equipment, uh, item, our head-in equipment. And those are basically, as we, as electronics age out, we have a replacement, that we kinda move in there and update them, and it's. So we usually sit back and we pick, you know, so it's not like every dollar is spoken for, we look, kinda what water's talking about. We gotta figure out where the problem is and the best way to spend the money, because you're talking the head-in, I mean, it's two or three million dollars in equipment. So a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year don't go very far, but that's basically how we do it, we look at the aging equipment, we look at key upgrades. And like one thing, we started next band string over the top, you know, process that we have now, we looked at, we did the upgrades of that. We wanna make sure that the equipment we upgrade to can support those services that we're moving to, so, uh, we've done that. We have cable ten, that's, that's upgraded equipment, we have a, a item, item here, a node division, we've had it for several years. And even though we're moving really fast on next band, there are still some areas that have cable service, that are modem service, that we need to go in and add additional bandwidth. It's twenty-five thousand dollars, but as you look at the five years, we'll start to see it fall off. And then, you know, because we don't need to split team in there to provide more bandwidth, cause hopefully everybody's moving on the next band. We have, you know, uh, our C lock equipment, when we're dealing with the next band service, the phone delivery's a little bit different. So we're changing how we go there, so there will be additional widgets, and we just put them in capital, that will be added to those phone customers as we, uh, migrate people over. I kinda put every line item in here for capital, I probably shouldn't have, since most of them are pretty, you know, they're, year after year, they're the same ones. Uh, Leanne talked about, we do have another electric kind of vehicle coming, the Ford will be here, I guess, this week, and then we'll have the van next week. And we'd really like to see how that's going, as you said, uh, we have the charger in place, um.
Is this the first, is this the first electric you've tried?
Yes.
Okay.
The truck, we just thought the truck might fit, or still, we're trying to figure out where we're gonna assign it. It's, we have, it's supposed to replace the security supervisor, and there were some concerns that, you know, they're on call, so it's like, what do we wanna do? And then, I guess the other thing we need to do as a board is we have. And then, I guess the other thing we need to do as a board is we have to come up with some kind of mechanism where these vehicles more than likely will have to be charged at the employee's home with their own call. Even, you know, so, that stuff we can work out, I guess, down the road, so. But yeah, this will be the first vehicle we have. I'm really interested in the van, more than the pickup truck, just to see if we can do our daily orders.
Is this van one of those that can go from zero to a hundred in four seconds? I see you're very excited, okay.
We're not, we're not going to assign it to you.
Oh, no, I was just curious.
Bye-bye, we'll let you take your first.
I might, I might try to test drive it.
More important, of course, they have it tested, or will be tested, to see if they.
You need to find an open track somewhere.
In terms of charging at home, you might look at Sheriff Quarr's policy. I know he's looked at that same thing, because they bought those Chevy boats for the school resource, and then, rather than build a bunch of charging at the sheriff's office, the deputies are taking home and charging them, and he worked out a reimbursement to cover that, so you might look at what he did.
You know, at first, it's like, yeah, we can get one, then when you start actually putting it through the paces, it's like, you just kind of think of different things, and so kind of to pass with it, so that's something we can revisit later, like I said, we'll hopefully get one vehicle tomorrow.
I had a conversation with Sheriff during up here time, and actually, you know, he's, you are correct, hundred percent, the majority of time actually should be charged at home, because that's what you don't use from six to early morning. So I don't know what he ended up saying, but he did consider, like, have a certain allowance for them, then they will take care of that, and he's not be bothered to calculate every kilo hour of five penny. It sounds like he looking for like thirty dollar or thirty-five dollar, gave to the employee, the sheriff, then they will charge at home, but they're not gonna make any money, but at the same time, that's most likely cover their electricity costs.
Yeah, and like I said, mostly, you know, depending on how far we expand the electric vehicle, if it's installation, you know, if we have, you know, today we have seven installers, and if all seven of them, only one of them's on call, so the other ones can be sitting there charging, you know, if we wanna do that too, so it's just kind of, maybe we build something into the call rotation, or something like that.
What are you seeing pricing on materials, like for the fiber and everything you need? Is everything pretty much, I don't know, I don't know what you call normal, is anything?
I think it's flattened out for the most part, but once, you know, the bead money starts flowing, I think prices will go up.
Which leads to the next question. Have we heard anything new on when the next round of the bead money will come out or be available, or?
I guess the last thing I read would, would be early fall.
Okay.
And then you had a conversation with somebody that, that might, that might even get pushed even further.
Yeah, there was a, I think it was Washington State, they, their challenge process was due the end of March, but I think they were looking at end of November before their map was even gonna be ready, so just depends on how well state moves, and.
I know Stephanie Stubble, she's been, I guess, covering, she's on that committee, or I guess whatever, and has been giving us the information on what, where the rules are, and what's going on, and what she's hearing, so.
I appreciate you forwarding those updates. That's all I really had for capital. Like I said, I kind of broke out every item, if there's any questions, I'd be more happy to answer them. Not as I moved to extent, so it's pretty short. But on the expense side, we have page forty-four, line three fifteen, that is contract labor. And that, basically, that contract labor is for the cable, HFC portion of the business. As we move to next band, today we only have seven installers versus twelve, and then also, we're trying to train them on the fiber, plus we have fiber contractors, so. As you see out, that kind of drops off too, as we start to move everything over to next band, we won't have a major subcontract, but that, that's been in there the last two years, and I just wanted to explain why that's coming out of the budget.
Sorry, what, what page?
What, that's, uh.
Thirty-eight.
Three fifteen?
Three fifteen, yeah.
But yeah, basically, so what we do is, that is supplementing our workforce for keeping up with the cable side, and as we start to move customers over, you'll see that kind of eventually go away. The other item that we have, and then Mike can talk to a little bit, is we're having to do an upgrade to our G I, our GIS platform, and I'll let Mike kind of take it over from there.
Yeah, so that would be, I guess, page thirty-nine, line seven ninety. This is something that, working with our current IT department on. We, the software we use, it's ArcGIS-based, but we use it for our fiber management, I guess, platform. That way we can trace fibers from point to point, things like that, so. The, what we have now, they're looking at end of life, I think in two years, and so we're having to upgrade to ArcGIS Pro, and then, so we looked at a couple other platforms, and honestly, this was the cheapest route to stay with what we have. The only downside is, no matter which way you go, you're gonna have to convert your data to the newest platform. And other, other companies, you know, you still had a, a large, I think it was probably around seventy thousand for the annual license, and the current company's thirty thousand, so saving some money there, but we do have to pay for our conversion. So it's gonna be labor-intensive. I think they'll have to redraw a lot of things, and redo some tables, and things like that, but.
Would there be service disruptions or anything we cut over, or?
No, no.
This is all in the back office side, more record-keeping for the future.
Yep.
So wait, you currently use ArcGIS?
Mm-hmm.
The shape file, I mean, and all in shape files and beta tables? What's the conversion look like?
So we're, in telecom, we use a desktop. I think Water and Electric's moved to Pro. That's because our, we use, it's called Fiber Manager, but they, they haven't moved over to Pro yet. Their Pro option is the ArcGIS eleven, so to get to eleven, we gotta go to Pro. So with the shape files, they become Arc objects. So not only do you have a poly line, inside that poly line, you may have a hundred and twenty strands. So that's what their software does, is it's gonna assign those tables to all the different strands, and even though those, and then the strands just go all different.
So you'll, you'll be able to have a more comprehensive view of everything, and it's probably a one-time conversion versus, yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you click on a two eighty eight, it'll show you every connectivity of that two eighty eight versus just that single line.
Gotcha.
And that's what we do now, but this will move to the next platform.
The single line might have all the attributes of that line, but this allows you to break them all out. That's great, okay, cool.
That's really the bulk of the expense. I just wanna revisit payroll, just, and I talked to Michelle during the break there. Last year when we did, we were doing budget, I had two positions. One was an engineering supervisor, or to be reclassed as engineering manager, and one was adding an engineering one to K was, we don't have a professional engineer. And that was budgeted, but where we got kind of held up on the pay comp, none of those kind of moved forward. They're back in the budget this year, and I just wanted to let you know, because those jobs would be coming in front of the board later on.
You think you'll have any trouble filling those?
I'm hoping they'll be filled in-house.
Okay.
And they're not new positions. They're gonna be, one's gonna be a reclass, and we had an internal, kind of the Charmista, the deal she has, we actually homegrown our engineer. He actually went to school and got his degree, and so we're just trying to mirror our engineering department, kind of like Electric and Waters.
You want, so you just wanna be like Charmista?
Yeah, I'm gonna be like Charmista. But like I said, those were in last year's budget, but then we kind of, with the pay comp and all that stuff, it just kind of got pushed, and so I just wanna remind the board that those were approved, and we're coming back, we're gonna catch you off guard. If you have any questions.
Steve?
What about the telephones? I know that's down, down the road, but what happens to that? I know y'all out at my house, they, they ask about their modem or whatever, that it's phased, it's phased, so.
Yes, so actually, there's a line item in here. It's actually pretty small, but it is line seventy-five, which is, it's capital, it's CLEC phone adapters, or upgrades, and basically what it does is now, it used to be the device that we hung off your, the cable one had the phone line built in. So if you are a single line, the new fiber device will have the phone built in. It's a different mechanism of delivery, a different technology, but to the customer, they don't see no difference. And then for the larger ones, we'll actually have another device that will be able to expand the number of lines off that O N T. Because, you know, we have a couple businesses now that are on fiber, and we've had to put multiple O N Ts to cover the number of phone lines that they have, and so we got a solution, hopefully we'll have it probably next sixty, ninety days, we can go back to a single O N T with multiple phone lines off of. It's just, you know, some of that technology being new, and then some of the development, because there's not a lot of landlines just in the business, so some of these products are new, and a little late coming to, to the game, so. But we've looked at a lot of them, and I think we've kind of sent it all, my product to the workforce.
Any other questions for Adam, or?
I'd like to thank Ms. Dennis Mitchell for joining our budget work session, and she, she was great. I kind of rambled on, I think we ran over a little bit, but I appreciate you.
Man, I think this is the first year we kind of tried this, but I think it was, I think it was good for everybody to get involved in some of the individual stuff and look at it, and I know how much Katrina and David and Michelle enjoyed Steve and I, so. So any other questions for Adam?
Mr. Q, is there anything on the financing that you wanna talk about, or we're all pretty?
We've talked about.
We've talked about enough, and.
And you've got that our, you're getting ready to issue the R S D, and when that comes back, we'll.
We'll bring it up.
Yeah.
At that time.
Katrina, David, Gary, anything else we didn't cover?
I, I appreciate how much you individuals spend time before this budget meeting. That's very important to us, thank you.
Jason, anybody who's got anything else that we didn't talk about that needs to be included somewhere, any questions, or anything else we need to bring up? I mean, we're ahead of time, I don't wanna adjourn early, I mean, heaven forbid.
There's first for everything, John.
We could do, we could do a closed session real quick, if you guys.
No, no, we can't, because it's not, because it's not on the agenda. David, you think you've got everything you need to go back and roll this up, and?
Yes, sir. We've, we've noted all changes that will be made, will be coming to the board. The next step is, any conversation between now and the eighteenth of June that you all wanna have with us on the budget, we'll bring back to you a revised version, ask the board for approval at that time, and then we will get started on all the new years.
I think we care of things, but nothing's locked down at this point in the sense that if you think of something, if something comes up, you're concerned about, wanna bring it up, let David know, he can price it out, do whatever, and we can discuss it, I mean, so. I mean, I think we've had a good process in, in going through everything, but we, we didn't vote on anything today, we've kind of got an agreement on where we wanna head, and on the eighteenth, we'll take the, actually take the vote, so. Again, appreciate everybody, and everybody, the staff, and everybody that's here, and I know we had a full day, but thank everybody, and if nothing else comes up, we'll do it on the eighteen. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion, Catherine, so moved, we have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion second. All those in favor of German, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We're German. Thanks, everybody.